Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Baines, councilmember Brand, councilmember Brandall, councilmember Olivier, councilmember Quintero, councilmember Soria, council president Capriolio.
I'm here, thank you. Next is the invocation.
It's me, Paul.
Oh, thank you Greg. If we're all standing in prayer with Greg and then we'll remain standing for our pledge to the great flag of our country.
Good morning, everyone. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for this opportunity to submit ourselves to you, Lord, as we make these vital decisions that affect the 500,000 residents of this city, Lord. We are humbled and grateful for not only our leaders underneath this building, but all of the workers and staff. Lord, we pause just for a second and ask for prayer and comfort for the Halford family who lost their 20-month-old child yesterday in a tragic shooting, Lord. We ask you to please wrap your arms around them and a hedge of protection around the remaining family members. This has been a tragic, tragic loss for our community, Lord. We love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Greg. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have several changes. Let's see, starting with file ID 16736, which is one I under consent. It's regarding a cooperative agreement with the county of Fresno for Bullard Avenue overlay between Blackstone and Marx Avenue. This item should be listed under general administration, not consent. Also, the 9:00 AM budget item, it's file ID 16756, which is a resolution adopting the 2017 salary resolution. I need to read the following into the record. The salary range for the assistant retirement administrator has been updated to reflect the correct range. The correct salary range is $8,970 at step B and $12,621 at step E. You all have a copy of that on your dials. And finally, there's the dates for the agreement, let me see, which, this is for items 16-755 CXD. The dates for the original agreement are incorrect and the recommended and executive summary sections, it should read December, no, it reads December 7, 15 and not 16.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as modified? Motion by member Baines, seconded by member Brand. Next we'll take a look at our minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of June 14, 15, and 16, 2016?
We need a vote on the agenda. We have the first and the second, but not a vote.
I'm sorry. All those in favor, opposed, passes 6-0 with member Quintero absent. Now we'll move on to the minutes. Any changes to the minutes of June 14, 15, and 2016? No changes, great. Do we have a motion? Motion by member Soria, seconded by member Baines. All those in favor, opposed, passes 6-0 with member Quintero absent. Councilmember reports and comments. Member Brandall?
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to mention, and here comes councilman Quintero. Councilman Quintero and I were at a grand opening of a Chinese seafood restaurant in District 2 this last week. It's called Yangtuan, I'm probably massacring the name, but, what's that? It's at Palm and Bullard and is fantastic. And the grand opening itself was super ceremonial and, they probably lit a thousand firecrackers, would be my guess, yeah. It's fun, a lot of fun, but I just wanted the public to know, and councilman Quintero and I were there, and the food also was delicious, and that's the most important part of the whole deal, so, thank you.
Thank you. Member Baines?
Thank you, council president. I'd like to ask that we adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Rashad Halford, 20-month year old young man that was murdered this past week.
Thank you. I too would like to adjourn in memory of Uligi Ruska, who passed away just recently. His man from Sanger, WWII veteran and a leader of that community and a farmer, so we'll do that together. Okay, let's jump to the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that a member would like to pull from that calendar? Okay. Would any member of the public like to discuss anything on the consent calendar? If so, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to address the consent calendar. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by member Brand, seconded by me. All those in favor, opposed, passes 7-0. Okay, we're gonna go to our timed items now. Okay, our first timed item is actions on the fiscal year 2017 budget and related items. This was continued from June 21st. And we have people that have punched up already?
So, maybe if I could, councilmember, council president Capriolio. As I indicated on Tuesday, when we walked out of here, we had a, we were out balanced up by a little more than $2 million. As I promised, the mayor and I sat down with Jane and her staff, as well as other members of the administration, and tried to come up with a way to bridge that gap. We provided you with a memo yesterday that we believe is a viable alternative in which we've identified at least half of the funding that could be used to address some of the things, at least for right now, that the council was interested in funding. These funds would come from the state enterprise zone program, which is no longer in existence. We are still recommending that $100,000 be allocated to the industrial compatibility study, as well as $100,000 for the EDC, which includes that $50,000 increase that councilmember Brandall was seeking, but we would take that from general city purpose. We provide you in the memo a series of motions that we think would be appropriate for us to achieve a balanced budget. There is one slight little correction that I'm gonna ask Jane to read into the record, if Jane, if you would.
Yes. On the supplemental information that you received yesterday evening, on page 5 of 8 of option 2, the line that indicates the enterprise zone revenue fund for $1,038,200 should be deleted. That line is now gone. That brings the total for the general city purpose adopted total to $44,701,100, and the total budget to $1,899,401,100. That is the correction.
So if I could, I will just quickly try to go through our recommendation would be, or is. First is that council would withdraw the council budget motions number 16 and 18 and replace it with the following motions. A motion to fund $70,000 for the Pine Dale Community Center staffing, $100,000 or half of the money.
City manager? I think that, I think that I'm gonna probably make up, I don't know if you wanna go through the whole thing?
If you're comfortable making it?
I think I've already, we've already chatted about that with the mayor. I just don't wanna have to read the whole thing and then I come back and have to read the whole thing and that whole thing.
Then staff is done with its presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone in the public that wishes to come forward and discuss any item that's timed for 9 o'clock? If you do, please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Council president, is this also the upcoming budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, my name is Preston Prince, I'm the CEO of the Fresno Housing Authority, and I'm here to talk about an idea that we are hearing as being discussed by you, which is about creating some additional funds for affordable housing and maybe accessing or reactivating the housing trust fund. I wanna say I'm here today following a grand opening of 541 at South Tower, Affordable Housing Development, and councilmember Baines is district. The day that we opened up, or did our grand opening, is also the day that we are 100% occupied, which is the experience that we're having throughout Fresno city as we do housing developments. Park Grove was 200 and the first phase was 215 units. We received 4,000 applications for that first development eight, or seven years ago. We sent you recently a report that we did in partnership with the California Housing Partnership Corporation. In Fresno County, there is a need of 35,000 affordable housing units. 75% of the extremely low-income households pay more than 50% of their income rents. Anything that you can do to help address the gap in affordable housing is really warranted and needed. There's been a tremendous drop in federal dollars, state dollars, and as you know, with the dissolution of the redevelopment authority, there's been a precipitous drop in funds to create affordable housing throughout Fresno city. So I just wanted to give my encouragement and support to you as a board, as a group, to really consider figuring out how we can, how you can as a city, create as many dollars available for affordable housing. I know you're gonna say, "Well, I just want those dollars." I do, but I wanna share with the other many talented for-profit and nonprofit developers out there, but whatever you can do to help us leverage your dollars with other dollars would go a long way in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you again.
Nice seeing you.
We have some cards now on this particular agenda item, and first is Ashley Warner. After Ashley will be Kimberly McCoy. And after Kimberly would be Noah Paramore, I believe. So first up is, good morning.
Hi, good morning, councilmembers. We're here to just support the motion that councilmember Soria is going to make to invest in affordable housing. We know we have a huge need in this city and we really have not been taking the leadership that we can to move forward. We have the statistics, 25% of residents in our city pay more than half of their income on housing costs. And most of those residents are residents who earn extremely low incomes and are struggling just to meet, to make ends meet. There's many other cities that take leadership in this area and have created affordable housing trust funds. In fact, 41 cities have done that. So I would say today is a really great opportunity to make a start, to move forward, and to begin to exercise leadership in this area, and to invest in creating funds to address this really critical issue for our residents. So I just encourage you to support investing in affordable housing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly McCoy, and next will be Noah Paramore, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Good morning, Ms. McCoy.
Good morning, council. I'm here today to ask the city to invest at least $1.3 million to bring our parks up to quality maintenance standards, and set aside at least $1 million to build new parks in areas that need them the most as identified in the completed Parks Master Plan. As a community organizer that organizes in southwest Fresno, I see the disparity of the park situation there with the residents. As I was canvassing Saturday, talking to residents about what they would like to see, I actually seen a father at Hyde Park, we all know Hyde Park is a toxic land, and he actually made a swing and put it on a tree for his kids to enjoy it. It was really heartbreaking. As I was leaving the west side of Fresno, I actually rode by Pride Park, which is like a little triangle park. There were bounce houses that were facing major streets for kids to enjoy the park. There are no amenities at that park, that should not even be a park. Me and my team have spoke to over 3,500 residents who stated in southwest Fresno that parks is a top priority for them, and they would like to see the parks in their established neighborhoods brought up to par with new amenities, working bathrooms, working water fountains. So we asked the city to invest in our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, I believe it's Noe, and after that will be Reyna Villalobos. Pardon me if I mispronounced your name.
Noe Paramore, thank you, council president.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, Noe Paramore speaking on behalf of the Building Healthy Communities Health Partners, and I'm with California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, so thank you for this opportunity. So we're here in support of a motion to augment funding for housing, affordable housing in the city of Fresno and its surrounding communities, which is about $1 million, and in the upcoming budget. So we're here, that would help create and maintain these affordable housing, and that would go a long way into promote healthy and thriving communities for all residents in the surrounding community. And we would appreciate your leadership and the dedication and commitment to making this possible. And that goes along with looking at maintaining the parks and looking at other areas where the funding needs to be included. So that would include around the maintenance standards and aside the $1 million for these parks, also $250,000 to implement the active transportation program, and $500,000 to conduct the citywide industrial compatibility assessment? Compatibility assessment, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening.
Renee Villalobos, after that will be Janine Kosy. Good morning.
Good morning, council president and councilmembers. My name is Reyna Villalobos, and I'm here representing Building Healthy Communities Prevention Action Team and also Clinic Acieravista. I'm here in support of councilmember Soria's motion to include $1 million in the city of Fresno's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget for the creation and maintenance of affordable housing. There's a lot of research that shows that housing is clearly connected to health. There's no question about that. When people have affordable housing, they're more likely to live healthier, their kids are healthier, people are more at peace. When people don't have the money to afford housing, it's very, very difficult for them. They often forego very critical things such as medical care, medicine, and even their utilities. We know also that here in this community, we have a lot of people who suffer from food insecurity. We have a high incidence of diabetes, and that's often connected to their inability to know where their next meal will come from. So I'm here in support of adding more money, investing more in affordable housing so that people are able to stay healthy and thrive in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next is Janine Nicosi, and after that would be Asante Nicosi. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Janine Nicosi, and I am here on behalf of all of the students and faculty and people that work at Fresno State, as well as all of the families who are working to get their children to get to Fresno State someday. Because we know that access to higher education and being successful in higher education leads to upward mobility and so many wonderful and positive things for families. So I'm here today to ask each and every one of you, councilmembers, to vote yes, to support councilmember Soria's proposal to invest $1 million in affordable housing. I think that the Fresno Bee article that came out recently that talked about the devastating impact, the housing crisis that we have in Fresno speaks to what happens when we don't have access to safe, decent, healthy, affordable housing. And so I don't, I don't wanna focus on that, but I wanna focus on the link between having access to affordable housing and education. So what happens with families when they don't have access to safe and affordable housing? Children have to move. And when children have to move, repeated moves, they are uprooted from their schools, and there is a link between attendance, students miss more days of school, it affects their reading scores, it affects their overall academic performance. And so if we invest in affordable housing, we're making an investment in children's education. And I've had the opportunity to see our council president interact with students at Fresno State, and I know that you know the importance of, you know, what Fresno State and that college education provides to our students, and so I'm here asking you to support this $1 million investment because it matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm proud to be a Fresno State alumni, as is other members of the council here. Next is Asante. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Asante, and I'm here in support of councilmember Soria's motion to include about $1 million in the city of Fresno's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget for the creation and maintenance of affordable housing. As someone who has benefited from a stable home, I attend UC Santa Cruz, and I would have to say that living in a safe home definitely created a solid foundation for me to go on and pursue higher education. And so, again, I'd just, I'd like to say that I support councilmember Soria's motion, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is, pardon me, next is Brooke, and after Brooke comes Austin Travis Dillon Hall. Good morning.
My name is Brooke, and I'm asking you to support the $1 million investment in affordable housing. As a student athlete here at Fresno State, healthy and safe living conditions in our community is very important to me. No one should have to worry about where they're sleeping at night. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck on the next season. All right, next is Austin. After Austin, we'll have Sandra Celadon. If you're up next, if you wanna come down to the front of the area here and have a seat, that'd be great, too. Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Austin, and I'm here to speak on behalf and in favor of the move to add funding for affordable housing. I'm speaking here as a young person, as a young Fresnoan who cannot afford the housing options that exist by and large in this city. I'm speaking as someone who, speaking on behalf of the many young people, the people of my generation who do not have the disposable income to be able to afford to move out and live on their own. I speak as someone who has the privilege of having a parent who is willing to house me, even though I'm still, I'm a college graduate, someone who lives under the burden of student loans and has to divert my income to other sources. I also know that there are many people of my generation who do not have this advantage of being able to stay with a parent, being able to live with a parent, to reduce their expenses on, their living expenses. And so I would encourage all of you as city councilmembers representing the city of Fresno to support affordable housing. I hope that you all noticed when the Fresno Housing Authority director spoke, speaking that the projects that they're building get booked out immediately. That has been the experience I've had as a young person looking at those projects and unfortunately missing the boat on getting on board with them. So please, support this measure, please make housing available to young people in the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Celadon, after that will be Nyla Zindar, I believe. Good morning.
Good morning, council president and councilmembers. I'm here today on behalf of Fresno Building Healthy Communities to call for a couple of specific things in the budget that we'd like to see reflected based on the feedback of thousands of residents that are part of our coalition. You've heard about the need for affordable housing that really ties into the need for healthy, safe, and affordable housing across our city. You all know, as you've been discussing for the last almost two years now, the fact that folks are living in conditions that are not healthy and are not actually encouraging folks to thrive in our community. And so we need to not only beef up our code enforcement and really bring in dedicated investments to hold slum lords accountable, but we also have to prevent and create opportunities for residents across our city to be able to live in healthy and safe and affordable housing. So we need to make that investment today by allocating enough resources to start to create that fund. So we're definitely in support of that. There's also, we also are calling for investment in parks. You know that we have been championing parks, and you've, council has been very gracious in supporting the update to the Parks Master Plan, but we need to actually put some money in that. We need to bring our Parks Department up to quality standards. Parks in our city, across our city are decaying. We've cut that budget by more than 50% over the last 10 years, so we need to slowly start building that budget up if we're really serious about investing in young people across our city and our park system. So we're calling for at least $1.3 million in general fund investment into our Parks Department to make sure that we're bringing up our parks maintenance standards, and an additional million dollars to create new parks in neighborhoods that need the most. We know that there's a huge disparity across our city where some residents have access to quality parks and others do not, and so we need to make our city whole and ensure that there's parks for everyone across our city. Thirdly, we're also calling for funding for the active transportation program. We're so glad to see that there's a Midtown Trail coming to town, and so we need to make sure that there's other trails in other parts of our city, and so we need to allocate at least $250,000 to make sure that all of the feedback that residents have provided in the active transportation plan process actually comes to, becomes reality. And we need to see trails in southwest Fresno, southeast Fresno, central Fresno, all across our city. And lastly, this council last year dedicated $100,000 for an industrial compatibility assessment so that we can really look at what businesses are compatible, what businesses are good neighbors in our neighborhoods. We know that there's more funding necessary to be able to do a comprehensive study that truly looks at our entire city, and so we're calling for an additional investment, bringing that up to $500,000 for the ICA. So we expect and we call on every single one of you to vote for these important requests that residents have been calling on, and I know that you're gonna demonstrate leadership and do that today. And lastly, I know my time is up, but I do wanna call for specific improvements to Corosa Park. Over the last three years, we've heard from residents who are looking for a sunshade structure out there along with other amenities, so we'd really like to see that included in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nyla? Good morning, it's your opportunity, and next will be Kyle Schmidt, followed by Mendez Francisco.
Good morning. My name is Nyla Zinder, and I am president of the League of Women Voters here in Fresno. I live at 1523 West Robinwood Lane in Fresno, California. I would like to reiterate what many have been saying about affordable housing. The league has long been a strong supporter of affordable housing, and I couldn't beat all the wonderful and passionate pleas that you have heard in such an articulate manner. So we do support assigning about $1 million in the city of Fresno's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget for the creation and maintenance of affordable housing. We need to expand affordable housing opportunities and give residents options other than unsafe and unhealthy housing. Another thing that's very important to us are the parks. Now we have, we're kind of in coalition with the Building Healthy Communities along with Leadership Council, and they have spoken about this over the past, you know, many months, and we want to join with them again to ask that you invest at least $1.3 million to bring our parks up to quality maintenance standards, and set aside at least $1 million to build new parks in areas that need them the most, to make sure that we have equitable distribution of parks, and that parks throughout the city are maintained properly. They're very important for a healthy lifestyle, and we would like to see all citizens to be able to participate in that. We also would like to, another important thing for us is the active transportation program. The allocation of $250,000 to implement that transportation plan is very important to us, and I see that this would allow the city to immediately begin to address the priority infrastructure needs to support walking and biking. Residents have called for sidewalks, streetlights... streetlights, bike lanes in order to get to where they need to go safely. And it's time for us to take action on that. And the funding would make that more possible and more immediate. And finally, we would like to see the ICA fully funded. $500,000 is needed to conduct a citywide industrial compatibility assessment. Residents of west Fresno have long lived in the shadow of polluting industry, far more than other areas of the city. And it is time that we, it's time that we spent the money to really do this assessment and to be able to make healthy environments for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, sir. If you give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Next will be Mendez Francisco.
Good morning, council. My name is Kyle Schmidt. I'm at 1002 North Harrison Avenue in Fresno. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on the important budget for the city of Fresno. I want to echo a lot of the comments on the importance of investing in affordable housing. Like Preston Prince, I was also at the grand opening of the South Tower project yesterday. Been working on that project for over three years on the design side and architecture and carried it through marketing and public art. It's a very important project for me personally because it's two blocks from the home I grew up in, in the Tower District. There hasn't been any affordable housing project of that scale in my neighborhood in my lifetime, so it's very exciting to see that work going. And I'd like to see that investment in affordable housing continue and keep that momentum going of transforming our inner-city neighborhoods and providing, not only the housing, but that project also had mixed-use units, seven along the street frontage of Fulton that offers live-work opportunities coupled with affordable housing. So those are really looking at small businesses that can start up, that are having financial trouble, get a footing, and be able to grow a solid business within the city of Fresno. And those are really important aspects for me personally and the neighborhood I grew up in. The other topic I wanted to really show support for is the industrial compatibility study. I've been working on the southwest Fresno specific plan, and southwest Fresno has struggled with the close proximity of heavy industrial uses with housing. And that is not an issue that is only in southwest Fresno. There's other areas within the city that have those, those kind of close proximities, and we need to look at that carefully. We want to really encourage job growth and encourage large job generators, but we need to be very cautious about the existing ones that are so close to housing as well as when new ones are planned, having really good parameters for how those job creators are located so they don't have negative impacts on communities, but only positive of job creation for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mendez Francisco. Next is Margarita Villasoren.
Yes, I live in 2566 South Habitat Avenue. I am the homeowner of Habitat Humanity, and I like to represent all the people in the fields. You know, people are working in the fields. Only there is the only job, there is no work every day. They are not gaining any other money, and it's difficult for them to pay the rent. So when they told the landlord to fix the apartment, they kicked them out or raised the rent. And how are they going to support their family? How are they going to work? We like to eat vegetables. We like to go to the store. We like to purchase meat. The meat cutters are Hispanics. So in Fresno, Cory, San Joaquin Valley, all over right here, we need to support those poor families that they need us. I hear Esmeralda Soria talking yesterday at the radio station. It's very good, spoken, 10:00 in the morning, 9:00 p.m., 3:00 in the morning. So let's help her and not just send people to Habitat. They have red tape for us. It's difficult to get, to get a house there in Habitat. There is a lot of empty houses that need to be fixed. And a lot of people, Hispanic, African-American, Asians can live there. And so that's all for me to support Esmeralda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Margarita is next, and then Isabella Vargas. Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Soy Margarita Villasenor y vengo del Distrito Cinco. Mi dirección es 3825 East Orleans.
Hi, my name is Margarita Villasenor. I live in District Five, and my address is 3825 East Orleans.
Yo quiero, me estoy contenta y apoyo la noción de hacer casas para los bajos ingresos porque me preocupan mucho las jóvenes que se quieren independizar y están rentando siempre en apartamentos.
I am in support of investing in affordable housing for everybody because I'm concerned about the youth who are, want to be independent, but they're paying a lot for apartments.
Y se desaniman luego porque es un dinero que están tirando y tirando y nunca pueden llegar a tener su propia casa.
They lose hope because they're throwing away money and throwing away money, and they can never arrive at owning their own house.
Y yo quiero que se les tenga más fe a los jóvenes porque por eso hay muchos jóvenes que están tirados en la calle porque nadie pudo poner un poco de fe en ellos y los jóvenes tienen fuerza de trabajar.
I, um, um, sorry, Sandra, can you help me with that? Okay, okay. Puedes repetirlo?
Quiero que pongan fe en los jóvenes porque ellos sí pueden trabajar y por eso hay muchos jóvenes que están tirados en la calle porque nadie puso un poco de fe en ellos.
So I do want the youth to have hope because they do want to, they do want to work. And there's many youth in the streets because nobody has faith in them.
Me interesan mucho los jóvenes que tengan su propia casa porque, bueno, a la vez yo tengo unas jovencitas que también están viviendo en apartamentos y yo quiero mirar en un futuro bien pronto, este, que tengan sus propias casas.
And I'd like to create a feature where young people are able to afford housing. I have young daughters that live in apartments, and so my goal is to see that young people are able to actually afford healthy housing.
En Sacramento, hay muchas oportunidades de trabajo, pero nosotros queremos quedarnos aquí. Entonces queremos que también nos ayuden con más trabajo para nuestros jóvenes y para nosotros que todavía, aunque estemos edad, todavía podemos trabajar.
In Sacramento, there's a lot of job opportunities, but we want to live here. We want to remain here. And so we need to create job opportunities for young people and older people. We need to be able to have those opportunities here in Fresno.
Estoy muy feliz que estén pensando en haciendo casas nuevas. Estoy muy agradecida con la señora Soria que siga luchando por eso. Es una buena causa en Fresno porque están las casas muy maltratadas y necesitamos mirar otro, otra cara de Fresno.
And I'm very glad that you are considering affordable housing, and I'm very, I appreciate councilwoman Soraya who's leading this affordable housing because housing in Fresno is severely decayed, and we need to put a new image in Fresno. We need to create a new image in Fresno.
Este, muchas gracias, y como le digo, quiero mirar muchos cambios pronto en Fresno. Estoy muy contenta con que están moviendo cosas. Muchas gracias.
And thank you. And like I said, I look forward to seeing a lot of good things happen in Fresno, and I'm very happy that you're considering all of these requests.
Thank you very much. Next is Isabel Vargas. After Ms. Vargas will be Leoncio Vázquez Santos.
Mi nombre es Isabel Vargas. Mi domicilio es 1805 Sur Orange.
My name is Isabel Vargas, and I live at 1805 South Orange.
Yo estoy aquí para apoyar la propuesta de la señora Soria. Hay cosas que nosotros queremos que, que es, el ver nuestro distrito más nuevo, más reconstruido.
And I'm here in support of councilwoman Soraya, and I want to see my district revitalized, and I want to see reinvestment.
Hay muchas casas que están muy maltratadas y por lo mismo de que los dueños no quieren construir. Mi casa está muy maltratada, y por eso muchas veces también nuestros niños se enferman mucho.
There's a lot of homes that are neglected. And so, for example, my home, the owner doesn't want to make any improvements. And a lot of the times, children get sick because of where they live.
Y si tuviéramos oportunidad de comprar, en vez de estar rentando, fuera mejor porque así se podrían construir mejor las casas y no estarían tan mal.
And if we had the opportunity to actually purchase, the ability to purchase affordable housing, then we wouldn't have to live in these rental conditions.
Por eso ahorita con la propuesta que tiene la señora Soria, quisiera, quisiera que la apoyaran también ustedes para que así nos pueda ayudar a nosotros también a tener un mejor, una mejor área y una mejor comunidad.
And so I ask that you support affordable housing and support councilwoman Soraya at leading this effort so that we can all have revitalized neighborhoods and a better Fresno.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leoncio Vázquez Santos. Next will be Denise Currie.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, council members. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. And I'm here, my name is Leoncio Vázquez. I'm living on 1019 Santa Clara Street, southwest Fresno. When we're talking about affordable housing, that's the reason that I'm here, to support. I'm here on behalf of Building Healthy Communities and Centro Binacional Oaxaqueño. We are a nonprofit organization working mostly with indigenous farm workers. So when we're talking about housing, affordable housing, this goes directly and affect directly the people that we're working with that are living currently in deplorable housing conditions. Two, three family members of six individuals living in two bedroom apartments because they don't have that wage to be able to afford housing for just one family member. The recent situation that we all witness here in Fresno where slum lords are refusing or do not want to fix the most basic needs of housing makes our families live in these conditions. And they cannot do anything to report them because, for different conditions, for different factors, because they are, they might be undocumented, and they are afraid, or they don't even know the process to do it. Or if they call the city, they have language issue. They just don't know who directly to go to to attend to these conditions. So I'm here to support any money available for affordable housing, for parks, for transportation, for our families here in Fresno. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Currie, and after you are, will be your mother, Mary Currie. Good morning.
Good morning. Denise Currie, 312 West Valencia, Fresno, California, 93706. Good morning, council members. Representing communities for New California Education Fund and also a partner of Building Healthy Communities, it's a pleasure to be here and to be able to speak in support of a healthier Fresno. What we know is from our talks over the last year that residents overwhelmingly have spoken about what is a priority for them. It is healthy housing, it is parks, and it is clean and safe environments where families, children, and adults can thrive. And so the ideas, the list, the ideas and the lists that have been presented to you today and that are being highlighted today really are a reflection of community engagement. It is talking to people one-on-one at their door and over the phone and hearing their stories of hopes and aspirations for living a healthier life in Fresno, not somewhere else, but here in Fresno. And that includes a place where they are safely able to raise their children in a place that is affordable. And so the healthy housing is a big issue that impacts their health, their education, their ability to thrive. So we support wholeheartedly investing in affordable housing across the board. We know that housing costs in Fresno traditionally impact African-Americans and Latinos and Southeast Asians in a different way. We know that these are impacted communities that often are spending nearly 50% of their income in order to have a place to live. That tremendously impacts what they can do on a daily basis and how their children are going to school and what is really impacting their ability to be the best and to reach the potential that they all have. So healthy housing is really where it begins. But that house sits in a neighborhood. And if that neighborhood is impacted by heavy industrial sites, then it presents another health risk. We know that air pollution is a big issue in Fresno, but we also know that air pollution, again, impacts the same communities, African-American, Latino, and Southeast Asian in a different way. The African-American infant mortality rate here in Fresno County is 23 per 1,000. That means that 23 children, 23 infants will die out of 1,000 that are born. That is a rate that rivals Third World countries. That is largely impacted because of the environment in which we live. So it is not a big deal. So it is not a big deal, it is not out of the, out of the norm to say that if we address this issue, by looking at the industrial sites that are in primarily west Fresno, by doing an industrial compatibility assessment, we could change those numbers. And that would be a tremendous impact, that would be a legacy that I think you could be proud of. $500,000 to implement the industrial compatibility assessment is just a start, but it would change the trajectory of our community. And it is the right thing to do, because it is a priority for us to have healthy neighborhoods all across Fresno. So I implore you to please take a listen to what's being said. These are, these budget priorities are really a reflection of what the community needs, and what they want in order to be healthy.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Mary Curry, after Mrs. Curry, we'll have Magdalena Barrios.
Good morning, good to see you again. Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. It's been so eloquently put forth, the need for affordable housing, the need for parks, and the need for clean air. Let me just throw a little light on this in a different way. Most of us who have decent housing, nice places to live, and parks to go to, we don't really stop and think, as human beings, how this is not available to everyone. We kind of take it for granted, because we have it. But just remember, there are a lot of people who don't have it. And when we have decent facilities for our young people, we won't have as much need to have the police in the neighborhood. There's no recreational facilities in west Fresno, there are no parks of note. So there are things that we can do, that would just be common, everyday things to most people. But to those people who live in these situations, it's not every day. They need your support. And one of the reasons we keep coming before you, is because of benign neglect over a long period of time. Not necessarily from you, from council members in the past, from leaders in the past, but we have to find a way to stop it, and make sure that everyone has an opportunity. When our children are brought up in good communities, clean air, good opportunities for education, we don't have as much need to keep getting more police officers. We don't have as much need to round up children who are in trouble, because they're homeless. I served on the school board for five years, and every so often, on every three months, there's a set of children that move, because their parents can't afford the pay rent. And when I read the story about the slumlords, it broke my heart, to think that somebody's children were sleeping and living in a place where cockroaches were going into their ears. It's heartbreaking. So I ask you, please, give consideration to this. All of us are God's children, we want to be treated as such, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. After Magdalena, we'll have Maria Rodriguez.
Buenos dias a todos. Yo vengo del Distrito Cinco.
Good morning, everyone, I come from District Five.
Me gustaria pedir su apoyo para, para la propuesta de usar el millón de dólares en los hogares.
I would like to support the proposal to use a million dollars to support housing.
Yo vengo de una familia de cuatro niños y solo mi esposo trabaja.
I come from a family of four children, and only my husband works.
Ya perdimos nuestro hogar por los altos costos de vivienda.
We lost our home because of the high cost of housing.
Por eso quiero pedir su apoyo a ustedes que tienen el poder.
For this, I want to ask the help of you who have power.
Y que representan a toda la ciudad de Fresno.
And who represents all of the city of Fresno.
Que nos den su apoyo para mejorar las viviendas, para que nuestros hijos puedan tener otra vez un hogar seguro.
That you give us your help to improve our housing, so that our kids have once again a chance to live somewhere safe.
Que sea bajo para nosotros para poder pagar la renta.
That the costs are lower, so that we can, so that we are able to pay the rent.
Porque nuestro problema no solo es los altos costos de vivienda.
Because our problem is not only the high cost of housing.
Sino lo poco que pagan en los trabajos.
But also the little that the jobs pay.
Les pido su apoyo.
I ask for your help.
Y gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much. Next is Maria Rodriguez, and after she speaks, it'll be Socorro Santian, I believe.
Good morning, I'm Maria Rodriguez, I'm from District Five. We ask you to invest in affordable housing, we really need it in this country and city. Many residents struggle to pay the resident each day. And I say, I say this for my future, and for other people, and for other future of people. Thank you.
You did a great job, thank you. Socorro, after Socorro will be Rosalyn Carson.
Good morning, Councilmember Socorro Santian, Fresno Barrios Unidos, and I'm here to urge you to please support Councilmember Soraya's, you know, investment of additional $1 million to be able to bring affordable housing to Fresno. You know, we, as an organization, work with families, and the things that I constantly hear from families is that, you know, most of their income is going to them to be able to pay for roof over their heads. And when it comes to the basic necessities, as cough medicine for their children, they can't afford this. And it comes to the point, because they can't afford something as simple as cough medicine, that their children's illness progresses to the point where their child ends up in the ER. This is a health concern, because, you know, this shouldn't be something that happens. We also continuously hear from families that even though healthcare has become more affordable, it's still not affordable to them, because they have to worry about paying, you know, for rent and other costs, that doesn't allow their budget to be able to have healthcare. So there are still folks who are not able to get the, their regular routine preventative care, and so they end up in ERs. So it's, when you look at affordable housing, it's also a health issue that we need to look at. Another thing that I would like to urge the members is, you have a lot of power. The decisions that you make affect residents across Fresno. And so when you're looking at these decision makings, I would like for you to look at it from the eyes of the individuals that you're serving, across the board, not just the ones in north Fresno. It's too uncommon that we hear, you know, there's the haves and have-nots. And you have the power to level the playing field, and assure that all children, not just children in north Fresno, have quality housing, quality education, parks to play in. So when making these decisions, think about your own children in your lives, and how you would want the quality of life to be improved for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rosalyn Carson, next will be Gracia Ilonas. Good morning.
Good morning. If I may. Hi, my name is Rosalina Carson, and I come from Community Adams. My address, my address is 1941 North Golden State Boulevard. And well, I'm here to support the million dollars that are, is going to put on the housing. And I hope, I've been coming too many times, I, I don't know if some of you guys remember me, but we always been talking about housing, we've been talking about changing communities, because the side where we live is really, really, though, this community is forgetting. Nobody pay attention, our communities, it's a lot of poor people, it's the low income, and it's no way to have a nice home. So with this budget, we hope you guys can put attention on this time. And also with what's going on right now, with all that construction for the fast rail, for the train, it's a lot of people, they live on the street, they moving that way right now. They've been moving, a lot of companies, they've been throughout some motels, and the people's, homeless people, they've been moving that way. So we really worried, but we live in there, and we worried about our kids, they're going to a school, they have to walk, and a lot of them, they, they doing a lot of different things, the homeless, sometimes, some of them, they take a clothes off, and the kids walking to the school, to catch a bus. So I don't think it's fair to, we know what's going on in that side, because we live over there. We know how the days, the days, the same thing. And we've been reporting, one of my friends, she reported, and nobody did nothing, because they say they can't do nothing about it. So I hope with this budget, really, really, put attention and look, where are you gonna invest? We need more housing, we need the apartments, they're already in there, to have a fix, they look like there's nobody living in there. It's amazing, it's embarrassing. The people's living on the apartments, and the complex, the apartments, the ground, they're all throughout the floor, the walls on our side, they look like there's nobody in there, it looks like it's vandalizing. So this is what I had to say.
Thank you very much, thank you. Gracia Ilonas. Point of order, Mr. Chair, City Attorney. A little bit earlier, we were short a quorum, is, well, there's four in here now, but I mean, we were short a little while ago, should, what's it ruling on?
The quorum is technically not required at all times.
Pardon me?
The quorum is only required when you begin, and when you're taking action on an item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Member Quintero. Next will be Nu Veng, good morning.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm here, as many other residents here are, in support of a couple of issues, but primarily creating affordable housing for residents here. First, I was like, a primary cause of homelessness right now is not having options, not having the ability to afford a home, or to afford rent. If we're serious about addressing these issues, and we're trying to create these options for the homeless right now, who are trying to get out, who are trying to get ahead, we need these options to have affordable housing for them. Additionally, we can't address, I can't stress this enough, we can't address slumlord housing without having options throughout the city, not just in southeast Fresno, not just in west Fresno, but throughout the entire city, where residents have options to move out of these hard conditions that they're currently living in. Right now, we currently have a market where, where the landlords have the upper hand, where they can, where they can afford having their apartment complexes, or their houses in these hard conditions, where there's mold on the walls, moldy carpet, pests, cockroaches, rats. I've heard this countless times, from residents we currently work with, and it breaks my heart that I personally can't do anything about this. But fortunately, here we are, where you guys can, can make a motion to approve some sort of funding for affordable housing throughout the entire city of Fresno, again, not just in south Fresno, not just in west side Fresno, but in higher opportunity areas, where, where children can grow and prosper, and really contribute to the workforce later on in the coming years. An unstable household just creates these conditions, where kids can't reach their full potential, where having parents worry about where they're gonna get their next meal, or having to decide between paying gas, paying utilities, paying, paying rent, or providing their kids the next meal. These, this is not an option, this, parents should not have to make these type of decisions for their children. Lastly, I would really like to focus additional funding for parks. Currently, there's millions of dollars of deferred maintenance in the park, in the park sector, where, where we really need it. Parks in south Fresno, parks in west Fresno, there are none. And even the ones that are currently there, they're in these conditions that, that families do not want to come into it, as previous residents have made. It breaks our heart to see, to see them having to play in completely yellow grass, or just playgrounds that aren't, that have not been upgraded in decades. And, sorry, lastly, oh. So the city is currently creating a great act of transportation plan. They're investing a lot of time, and we believe it would be a great use of funding, if we would create some sort of funding for it, to where, once this, this actually, the plan is complete, we can just hit the road running, and start, and start implementing it, and start being able to implement what the residents want, and what the comments that they've heard is needed.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Nu Veng, after Ms. Veng, will be Melissa Veng.
Good morning, my name is Nu Veng. I come representing the Fresno Center for New Americans, and also with Building Healthy Communities, with our Prevention Action Team. I support Councilmember, Councilmember Soria's efforts to include $1 million in affordable housing. As a resident here, I know, growing up, I lived in, in, you know, not the most ideal housing situations, but that, you know, that goes for many residents in Fresno. And also Fresno is the fifth largest city in the state, but we have one of the highest rates of poverty, and extreme poverty in the country. And that should be something that we really need to address within our city, because there's so many people here that need clean and healthy housing. As a community worker, I see residents struggling with their Medi-Cal in copper California, their plans, and I plead with you that you support this effort in providing healthy, affordable housing to our residents, because it's really a need that we need, and people are always, are counting for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melissa Veng is next. After Ms. Veng, will be Simone Coniston Rhodes.
So hello.
Good morning.
Morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name's Melissa Veng, I reside at 3874 North Millbrook Avenue, zip code 93726. And I simply came here as a witness, as a bystander, but I just couldn't just sit here and not say something about what's going on. I actually attend school, Edison High School, not too far from here, and there's a really big issue about industrial pollution. Time and time again, every year, there are students who have health problems, or just, which leads to difficulty with learning in classrooms. And with that being said, you know, the air quality is already pretty bad in Fresno, everyone knows that. So why can't we focus on making sure we maintain the industrial pollution, which all of this leads to creating a better, healthier quality and clean environment for our youth here in Fresno, and for all the residents that reside here. So I just ask that we please focus, and help us create one healthy Fresno. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next is Simone, and as she comes up, after her, will be Booker T. Lewis. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I just want to start off by saying I'm very proud to be represented by Councilman Soria, who is presenting this. I've worked for a number of years with tenants, and a lot of the issues that I've seen can be fixed with affordable housing. That goes along with people who are homeless, who are in poverty, and who are living in uninhabitable housing conditions. All these people would gain a lot from having a habitable, stable place to live. I think that it is very clear, if you guys support this bill, you're supporting, lifting thousands of people in this city out of homelessness, out of poverty, and out of uninhabitable living conditions. So I look forward to seeing your guys' support on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lewis, you're up now, and then after you, sir, there'll be Nikki Singleton, and that'll be all the cards we have thus far. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, my name is Pastor B.T. Lewis, Rising Star Missionary Baptist Church, also a board member at Faith and Community. I'm here because I love my city. The people in this chamber are here because they love their city, they love their neighborhoods. My passion, as some of you may know, is for west Fresno, but my love is for the entire city. And we have neighborhoods in our entire city that need the kind of assistance that Councilmember Soria is proposing, and so I applaud her for this effort. And I am a little bit concerned, I know that you operate under the, under the, under the need for quorums when you're making decisions. I am concerned that at least the absence of our council members is unkind. When people are here to voice public opinion, public comment ought to be one of the most important periods in making, as we prepare to make decisions about the future of our city. And so I'm not mad, but I'm concerned. I'm not angry, but I, but I am concerned. And so let me go to this, that it is, Fresno is one of the cities where it is just so obvious, the discrepancy in housing is just so obvious. If you, if you drive from one corner of south Fresno, whether it be southeast, or just, just ride up and down one of the major streets, major thoroughfares, up our city, if you just take Cedar, from the furthest end south to the furthest end north, and just, and just, just look at the housing, look at the neighborhoods, and you, it's so easy in Fresno to see the discrepancy, the, in housing. And so I'm hopeful that this, that this kind of measure, this kind of motion, will bring a higher quality of life for not only residents in west Fresno, but for residents all over our city, because we have poverty pockets all over our city, and we need this kind of assistance. Our citizens, our neighbors need this kind of assistance all over our city. God bless you, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Next is Nikki Singleton, and then you'll be followed by Jacquelyn Hira-Hara. It's kind of hard to read the writing on some of these cards, so I'm doing my best. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Nikki Singleton, I am residing at 4294 North Hughes Avenue, Fresno, California, District One. I am here on behalf of Fresno Barrios Unidos, and as an African American woman, I do feel definitely it is strong need to be in support of affordable housing here in Fresno, California. Five years ago, I did actually move here from another county, I moved here for opportunities for me and my family. I am a single mother who is raising three young ladies to be successful here in the world that we live in, in this day and age. Definitely very important to take away from this, is that housing, at the end of the day, is a foundation for our children. Our children is our future. Without affordable housing, and we do not have that foundation for our children, we are at a loss here. We have to, as the city of Fresno, come together in unity, to provide those affordable housing options for all individuals, regardless of their background, their ethnic, their racial, their nationalities, et cetera. We must come together, otherwise, we're fighting against each other. Poverty is something that we're, we are definitely on the rise here in the city of Fresno, where we are right up there in the ranks with even LA County. This is something that we can come together as one, to definitely rectify, and become a successful city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Jacquelyn, after her will be Marcelina Lopez, and after Marcelina will be Ruben Zerate.
Hi, my name's Jackie Hira-Hara, I live at 1115 North Yosemite Avenue in the Tower District. I just want to speak briefly on the revitalization of downtown, and the need for affordable housing. In 2013, my husband and I moved into one of the new, beautiful, energy-efficient lofts in downtown. About a year after our lease, we decided to sign a new lease, because we loved it so much, and we were met with an $85 a month rent increase. After our six-month lease was up, we were met with yet another increase, reaching up to $900 a month for a loft. It's not even a one-bedroom, it doesn't have walls. So we were forced to move out, move back to the Tower District, the less energy-efficient, less, you know, great new housing. And I think that, you know, a lot here on the council, and the mayor's office, and the city, support revitalizing downtown, and I think that means adding affordable housing, not just in downtown, but throughout the city. Not only did we have to get a roommate to be able to afford housing, but we had to move into, you know, less than nice housing, that, you know, may include single-pane windows, that aren't as energy-efficient, causing our PG&E bill to be about $70 more a month, than when we lived in these lofts downtown. So I think that I really support this affordable housing for everybody, because I think that we should be revitalizing areas of our city, and not gentrifying them with high rent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marcel- Thank you very much. Marcela is next, and followed by Ruben Zarate. Good morning. Good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you, Councilmember Soria, for bringing this to council today, and everyone speaking on behalf of all the community members that very much are in need of affordable housing. I've been able to work on the Southwest Pacific Plan and work in Southwest Fresno and working with a lot of young people and hearing about how affordable housing can really impact their ability to be successful in school and have safe environment. And so that's definitely a priority for young people. And seeing the two young women that came and spoke today was really powerful, and I wish that all of the council members would have been here to experience that, because they're the ones that are going to be able to tell you exactly how much they would benefit from affordable housing. So again, thank you for bringing this to council, and I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you very much. Next is Ruben Zarate. Good morning, sir. And Marina Magdalena is on deck.
Good morning, council. Thank you. Thank you, Esmeralda, for supporting this. This is a great, I think, a great opportunity for the city of Fresno. I'm Ruben Zarate, and I'm a, a board member of the Central Labor Council and of the Building Trades. And I just, I came here today to show support for this motion. And we have a lot of members that live within the city of Fresno, and they're, they're really in need of having something like this. They, we, labor folks need good, affordable housing in parks. And so I'm here to show support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And support the motion.
Thank you, sir. Marina Magdalena. Good morning. Good to see you again. Welcome.
You're one of my favorite guys.
Thank you. You're going to create jealousy now, so be careful.
It's okay. Marina Magdaleno, forty-six, forty-four West Jaclyn. Okay, one thing I'm going to say you're not going to like, sorry. I felt really bad for many of the people that came to speak before you this morning, and you're not paying attention to them. I was happy that Sal brought up the issue about the quorum. It, it's a lot for folks that aren't used to or accustomed to addressing the leadership of the city, to come before you and, and pour their hearts out, and you don't have the respect to honor them for coming here before you. And I have to say that, because today is the council day, and this is the only day that the, that the public can come before you and plead to you and say what's on their mind. And I think that this is the day that you should be in these seats as leaders of our city to listen to what, your constituents, and I'm one of them, your constituents have to say to all of you. It's incumbent upon you to pay attention to these people. I think it's disrespectful when you are not here. Some of you who, you know, want to go into higher office, it tells about your character. It gives me a lot about your character. And I'm very sorry to say this, but I had to say it because it really, really tugged at me to sit there and see this going on. So I have an hour and tw- I have a minute and twenty-five seconds. I know, I have missed many of the, of the budget hearings, because we've been in negotiations on a class and comp study, but I have had the opportunity to talk to some of the department heads about what they have proposed in their budgets. And, and a lot of it has to do with the ongoing of parks being served, our roads being served, and just, you know, the, the, the issues that our city has, and challenges that we have had over the last few years, because we have had to cut positions, not fill positions. And so I am hoping that out of today's meeting, that we will have a good budget, that we can put people back to work, that we can expand our services that we give, you know, to the residents of the city, that we continue to pay our people the wages that they are, are, you know, so deserve for the hard work. You know, we're, we're approaching a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven heat here coming in the next week or so, and our folks are out there. I have gotten a request from one of the departments to start a half-hour early, so that they can, you know, work under better conditions than, you know, the hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven, you know, heat. So I, I hope, you know, that there weren't too many cuts, that, you know, we can continue to bring our city back to where it needs to be, where we were once the all-American city, and I would love to see Fresno be there again. It's, it's very important. For me, as a resident, a lifelong, I was born in this city, grew up in Calua, and I love Fresno. And if I had energy, I'd run for office, but it's not in my blood to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Brad?
I'm going to address the, the audience. What I'm doing behind the scenes is meeting with the mayor and city officials to better understand what I'm voting on. So I'm trying to understand it and all the details associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the budget? Now is your opportunity to come forward. Good morning, sir. If you give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Lucy Avila, forty-six fifty-four North Chestnut Avenue. Just here to say the same thing everybody's saying, that, you know, we're really hoping for more affordable housing. I mean, that's something that, you hear all the personal stories here, and it's really sad to see that quarter of Fresnoans are paying fifty percent of their, their paychecks on rent. So we're supporting more affordable housing for, for everybody, all over the city. We're really hoping that also, the last time I was here, so that you mentioned that you wanted to put aside one million dollars for the parks. So once the Parks Master Plan is done, we can actually start getting, you guys could start working on it, start getting parks built. So I'm really hoping that maybe you could bring that up, or, or that, I really like that you wanted to do that, you know, that you're thinking ahead. The Parks Master Plan got done. It was, hasn't been updated since I was born. So I'm, I'm glad that you're thinking forward and, and, and trying to get more parks here. And then we're really hoping to fully fund, if you guys could fully fund the industrial compatibility assessment. I'm pretty sure, I mean, I'm pretty sure if there's somebody who's going to put a recycling center right next to your house, you'd want to have some input in it, right? And make sure that that's compatible with your area, right? So we're hoping that you guys could fully fund that, too. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward and address the council? Now is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning, council member, president, and council members. Thank you, Councilmember Soria. Gabriela Maris, twenty-one-eleven South Maple, here on behalf of Cultiva la Salud. Like organizations, Leadership Council and BHC, Cultiva, Cultiva supports affordable housing, active transportation plan, and parks, not just anywhere in Fresno, but to prioritize those areas, those disadvantages, disadvantaged communities like, excuse me, in southeast Fresno and southwest. Okay? Cultiva la Salud's mission is to have individuals live a full course of their life by promoting physical activity and healthy food access. So a way you council members can support this, these motions today, and changing lives in our communities would be by investing more in parks. So for example, with doing so, we create safe places for our children to play. Safe places like this in our communities are definitely assets. Creating, creating safe, as well as creating safe places to walk and bike. For example, the Midtown Trail was amazing. So I think a little, a way we can take it a little further is creating, or thinking about connectivity, how individuals that use bikes on a daily basis to get to work can use those bike trails from southeast Fresno, southwest, central, to get to usually the north end and back and forth. Again, with Cultiva la Salud, we have worked closely with residents, in addition with our partners, and also have heard, you know, issues in regards to ATP and infrastructure. The areas that have been brought up to our attention, and community has been here today to highlight on those, have been lack of lighting, lack of sidewalks. It's definitely evident in southeast Fresno, southwest, central, that there has been lack of maintenance in infrastructure, as well as lack of investment. Other issues that have been brought up to our attention have been not enough fundings allocated in animal control. Also, for example, living in southeast Fresno, on a daily basis on my route to work, I see individuals at these bus stops without shelters, being, being that it's a hundred degrees plus in the summer, and also in the winters when it's pouring raining, and there is no shelters. This is an area where we definitely need to invest and prioritize in disadvantaged communities. So finally, in collaboration with residents, we have, we have some identified infrastructure needs that have been compiled. So I'm not sure if this would be a moment where we can share this, and we will also be sharing a final report through the ATP online process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to come forward? Good morning, Ms. Korea. We have you down at ten fifteen as well, so.
Yeah, but I want to address this also. Being a lifelong Fresno citizen, born and raised here, went to Edison High, Roosevelt High, Fresno City and Fresno State. So this is my, this is, this is my roots. I, that's why I come here from Hawaii every year, because my whole family, my friends, everybody lives here. And I like Fresno. But lately, the past three years, it's been a nightmare. I want to advocate one more time, but my turn is late, but I know I have time. Two minutes. Caesar Chavez Project should not be tabled. We need affordable housing. Caesar Chavez worked here very diligently. He was a peaceful and a non-violent person, leader. And we have Soria and, and Al, Seal Quintero, only ones advocating for us. We need to step up and we need to, this is an election year, and even though I don't vote, because I'm, I'm, I live, you know where I live, in Aloha State, but this is, this is my, my home, my second home, my root, and I come every year. But every year for the past three years, I have two units. Now, well, we need to work, focus on affordable housing, and the Caesar Chavez Project will help that. And if I have to come back and, and help you with, to help our, our barrio and, and our people, we, we can help, you know. You can compare affordable housing at Caesar Chavez with parks that have gone under. I looked into it already. We need to have affordable housing. The Caesar Project must go on. If need be, Sal, you call me, or señora, señorita, no sé, pero, Soriano, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. But I will be back here, and I will help have a fundraiser to, to get it, to this he done. It can be done. And you can compare with other things. We need affordable housing, especially for the south. I live at thirty-four-zero-seventy East Iowa. That's my home, my second home. And I will be willing to come back and help. This is my city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward? This is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at this time. City Attorney, we have a ten fifteen schedule. Can I call that at this time?
That's within the council president's discretion.
I'll exercise my discretion. We have a ten fifteen item. Ms. Korea, would you like to come back up? We have you scheduled for ten fifteen. A little bit late, but we're trying to stay on task.
That's okay. Things happen. Move forward. Okay, you know, I've been coming here. I own two, two, a duplex, two units that are going to be available for rent. And, and the past three or five years, it's been a nightmare, because one of them is boarded up, and I come and live in it. But now I can't do that, because you passed a law that, well, it's already passed, that we cannot leave a home empty and boarded. So now people squat it in, and they have no place to go. They know it's boarded, so they break in and they steal my stuff. But we have a lot of good people, all kinds of nationalities. And now I have to fix it up and not leave it vacant. But, well, that's what it is. So I need to repair it. And water person, what's his name, Brian Reams, I've been paying to fifty to two hundred dollars a month for the water. And, and I don't know what happened, but they're escalating and escalating to two, I paid over two thousand and eleven, and I still owe over two thousand. This is outrageous, because all, everybody in my barrio, they pay sixty to seventy-eight dollars a month, and my unit is empty. And then I rent one, but the minute I leave, they don't pay the rent, they don't pay nothing, they trash my place. Well, it's going to change. Now I have a good handyman. My long-life friend, who used to work for the city, has a handyman. And by the way, I, I advocate for the ranchers, because they're struggling. My friend's husband and her own eighty acres of grapes. And I remember, I came, I was born here. My mama used to say, you want school clothes, go pick grapes. And we did. I did. We did. My whole family did. So now the ranchers are struggling themselves because of the water. But you, the, Brian Reams did not have the, the authority to scam senior citizens. The ranchers can't, can't afford to pay taxes and this and that. Our taxes are going higher and higher. And we know, we know we have a drastic water, water problem here. But don't take it out on senior citizens. And because the ranchers can't pay, the small businesses are going out of business, there's a lot of welfare, people, people are out of work. And you have to be complacent. You just can't go on, on, and, and live in a bubble and forget about the large Hispanic contingents that are here, including yours truly. Excuse me, the smog gets me, takes me out of breath from my asthma. Okay, so I, I signed an agreement. Brian Reams told me that if I give two hundred dollars, I have patience, I got here three months ago, over five hundred dollars for the water bill. And it wasn't included in my bill. Five hundred dollars I paid. And he, and, and he has the audacity, the nerve and the audacity to tell me, you have to pay two hundred dollars on your back payment, which I haven't been. I've been paying and paying. And you have to pay two hundred dollars, plus we're going to put you on the plan. And, and furthermore, if, if you pay for two years, we will reverse an amount of seven hundred and some dollars, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Reverse it. Reverse it now. Don't wait until the end of the session. You know, that's wrong. That's wrong. They're scamming us.
Mary, you need to wrap it up. Your, your time is expiring.
Court enforcement. Just let me say one thing about the court enforcement.
Make it quick, please.
They are, they are, they are fining me and for no reason, because I'm a very responsible citizen. And, and they, the tenants said, well, we have good people. I used to, I owned this place for over fifteen years. And I've had good Hispanic people there. And now there's, there's, there's problems.
Mary, thank you. Appreciate it.
Wait, the court enforcement is, is fining people, sitting, senior citizens. My friend, Tomas, I'm not going to mention his last name, but Sal knows him. He's, he's a senior citizen. He's, he's dying with this big C word.
Mary, Mary.
They fined him five hundred dollars, because Thomas people left a car behind.
Mary, Mary, listen, please. We're trying to be courteous to everybody here, so we expect it back. Thank you.
I'll be back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, before we get to motions, I just want to let you know that, mostly you probably know, that, that these hearings are televised on CMAC, and as well as throughout this building on computers and speakers. So when, when my colleagues are not at the dais, they're in the back, they can hear everything that's being said. So we try to keep that whole thing going, so everybody can stay abreast of what's transpiring on this particular day. So with that, public hearing has been closed, so now we'll go to motions. First up is Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. And so I'm going to go straight to my motion. I think a lot of comments were made in terms of the issue of affordable housing. I want to thank folks for showing up, taking time out of their busy schedules to come out and continue to, to tell us, leaders, the leaders here of the city of Fresno, that this is a very important issue. I do want to thank the mayor and the mayor staff for meeting with me and talking about finding opportunities within our existing budget to find fundies to invest in affordable housing. So the motion that I want to make today is to redirect any unallocated or returned CDBG funds to affordable, to the affordable housing category, and begin the substantial amendment to, the substantial amendment process, including public comment and advertising. In addition, I move that any funds set aside to match the EDA grant for public works improvements in the industrial area that are above and beyond the EDA grant match require, requirement, once the grant is awarded, which we know will happen hopefully soon, they also be redirected to affordable housing. And also, as part of the affordable housing, we're talking about rehab projects. We, so that's going to be my motion. And so I include both affordable housing for new construction and rehab projects. We've known that the city of Fresno has struggled. We've known that the City of Fresno has struggled with substandard housing issues. We had the Somerset incident that happened not too long ago, and we know that there's still a number of projects or units out in our community that face the same challenges. And so we're hoping that these dollars are kind of the beginning of having augmentation of monies available through the city to address not only the building of new units, but also existing units, that we can bring them up to par. And so that would be my motion.
Thank you very much. I'll second that motion. City Attorney, do we vote on that now, or call for discussion from the council?
Well, you would ask for a discussion from the council first, and then you can vote on that before moving on to any more motions, if you'd like.
Thank you. All right, we'll go into the discussion mode, if you will. Member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank everybody that spoke, and also those of you that came in support of the speakers and the proposals. I wanted to clarify a few things. The three parts that I heard being mentioned was the housing, parks, and clean air. Wanted to talk a little bit about each, about the housing and the parks situation. Ms. Castro, you had made mention about some of the needs of Corozza Park, and I agree with you, but you may want to contact the Flood Control District. That does not belong to the City of Fresno, okay? And it's, they were, that was the first park that was built by Flood Control in the City of Fresno. So that's a park that you may want to contact them on. Secondly, last year, everybody, there was a lot of folks that were here last year when we made the motion to set aside monies to do a study of green space in the City of Fresno, and a process was explained. So that is, that's ongoing, and it's gotten started already. And so Parks is not being ignored, because that process is going on. And then I believe, George Ann, in this year's budget, there was three to four million set aside for deferred maintenance on the parks in the City of Fresno. So that's being addressed, and you may want to get a list of what that maintenance is going to include, and which parks it's going to include, what parts of the city those parks are in. With regards to the housing, I keep hearing about affordable housing. I totally agree with you. And the question that I have is that we talk about affordable housing and the need for it, and I couldn't agree with you more in parts of our neighborhoods. One of the things, though, that I wanted to ask, if in these CDBG monies, I believe some of the monies are going to come from CDBG?
So there are some that haven't been reallocated, so if those go back and we put it back to the public and they agree that it should go to affordable housing, then it would come back.
Okay, those are some of the monies that we had used in the past to hire code enforcement, so that isn't being affected, the number of code enforcement officers that we're getting?
No, these are all unallocated.
All right. Okay, that's great. Then another part is for the affordable housing aspect of it, you know, the part of one of the big American dreams for people is to own your own house. And I heard the lady's story about her husband and her four children losing their home because they couldn't afford it. The, and there's nothing that gives you more pride than having homeownership. Are some of those monies, will some of those monies be eligible for organizations like Habitat for Humanity, where a person can move out of renting to own their own home? The way that that program works is that a family signs up, if they're selected, they commit to 40 hours of work on building their own home with the help of Habitat. And so, you know, that would even be more helpful in neighborhoods than the affordable housing aspect of apartments, condos, and that type of thing. All housing is important, but to me, the pride of homeownership is one of the best things that a family can have, and it stabilizes the neighborhood as well. So I, what I'd like to see maybe in your motion, if some of those monies could be set aside for organizations like Habitat to work with families, make them eligible, and they continue to work with those families over the years to ensure that they're able to keep their home. Habitat for Humanity in southeast Fresno in the past years has built approximately 30 homes in southeast Fresno, and none of those houses have been lost by the family that built those, and it's stabilized the neighborhoods. And it's, it keeps them clean, I mean, it's just, and it helps the overall neighborhood. And I think that's something that we need to also look, if you're going to set aside monies for affordable housing, that to me also encompasses affordable housing, but it also gives that family that starts out in renting a property to the next step of homeownership. So I'd like to maybe see if part of your motion might include that, where that help can come in.
I'd be happy to make sure that we can do that with these funds that we would be allocating for.
Even if it's a certain percentage that, and right now Habitat is the only organization, I believe, in Fresno that does that. Not to say that Housing Authority can, or other organizations, or partnerships as well, but I think we need to really consider that, if that's the goal you want to achieve.
Yeah, no, and I am happy to include some type of creation of the, like a homebuyer program as part of the funding.
And my last question, Ms. Castro, are you still on the board at Calwa? Can I get a list of all the improvements that you've done at Calwa?
Love to. Thank you.
Member Baines.
Thank you, Council President. So first off, I'm going to say I'm certainly supportive of Councilmember Soraya's motion for a whole host of reasons. Not all of them need to be repeated, but I can certainly say that affordable housing, quality affordable housing, I should say, I'm going to put an asterisk there, is an important part of our community, and we certainly need to have it. And so I certainly appreciate the discussion today. But what I don't want to be lost, I believe this motion is going to pass. I believe that we have support for this, mainly because of the work that Councilmember Soraya did. So thank you, Councilmember Soraya, for making sure that we had a motion that I believe makes a lot of sense and is something that can be supported. But what I don't want to be lost in the discussion is, we're talking about affordable housing, and we're spending a considerable amount of time on poverty. Rightfully so, because we live in a very, we live in an extremely impoverished city. But I don't want that to be lost, that we live in a very impoverished city. In our discussion, at some point, while we certainly want to make sure that we are advocating for affordable housing today, and we want to be supportive of that, because we wholeheartedly believe that people deserve quality affordable housing, especially when they are going through transitional periods in their lives. But we do need to be focused on the transitional period in their life to make sure to move people out of poverty. So I don't want this conversation to, I don't want the larger conversation to be lost, that our goal ultimately should not end at building affordable housing. Our goal should be to where we never have to have affordable housing, because we have a society in which people are not poor. That should be our goal. It's a laudable one, to be sure, but we should never, ever stop working for that. But until that time, until that time, as we get there, we must ensure that people have an affordable place to live. But I hope to see all of you here, in other places, when we are talking about developing our workforce, when we are talking about moving the needle on education, when we are talking about ensuring that we have citizens here that are not poor, I hope that message comes through loud and clear from your comments as well, that we have to make sure that people aren't poor. Poverty is the problem, and we need to work ever diligently to move people out of poverty as we have this discussion of important, quality affordable housing. So thank you, Councilmember Soraya, for being a woman of the time, recognizing our very urgent needs right now, because they are pressing and they are important. I just want to make sure that we are also looking beyond this issue right now, making sure that we are moving towards people, taking people out of poverty, and the ever-pressing challenges we have facing us in that arena as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Member Baines. We had a 10 o'clock scheduled hearing for DPU, a public utility sponsorship on Urban Water Management Plan. We'll set that over to 1:45. Sorry for the delay, folks from Public Utilities. Apologize for that. Okay, next up is Member Brand.
Thank you, Council President. And this item was new to us, or at least to me, this morning, so before I vote on anything, I'm always going to make sure I've had time to review and understand exactly what's before us. This is public dollars, so that I can make an informed decision in the end. And I'm going to thank the mayor and her staff for spending the time to educate me. And I would agree that, you know, we've had this discussion for seven and a half years since I've been here on affordable housing. There is an issue, and it's also an issue of low wages. It's a combination of housing cost and wages, because Fresno is still one of the lowest-priced housing markets in the state of California, but it's also one of the lowest wage areas in the state of California, and the combination has always had a devastating effect on the And I, again, heard throughout this entire budget process, the needs of affordable housing, parks, code enforcement, public safety, public works, infrastructure. We have a long list of items that we need to address, and we are going to have to be careful and judicious in how we allocate money. We can't fund everything the way we'd like to fund it. We can also try to prioritize it and make sure we make a dent, and we're on a plan to eventually meet all the goals that we've brought out. And being here seven and a half years and reviewing many, many affordable housing projects, and the oxymoron of affordable housing is, affordable housing is one of the most expensive ways to build housing, and it's designed for the tax credit program, that when you have, the more bills and whistles you put on it, the more competitive. So those projects that ultimately are selected are those projects that sometimes don't even meet anything remotely close to market levels, but I've learned to live with it and learned to find standards that we all can live with, and over the time, have approved several affordable housing projects. So I think we could find a way in the future, I don't know, City Attorney, if we're doing a fund that we could, you know, make it more economical and stretch to dollars, because literally on affordable housing, it's almost two to one, you can almost, if you had a market-level way to do it, you could build double the amount of units, but is there any way?
We can look into it, but much of this is controlled by state and federal law, too.
Right, but on this fund itself, that we're trying to set money that will be used for this, so I know most is subject to prevailing wage, but I'm just trying to find a way creatively to really stretch our dollars.
We can check and see what the options might be. I can't think of anything right now.
Okay. And...
And I think this is obviously setting the money aside now, and we can have a further discussion as to how we can go about in making sure that we're stretching our dollars to really maximize and build as many, not only in terms of projects, but also individual homes that then the residents in our community can actually buy, or also projects where we can rehab. So I think it's a combination of things that we could do.
And this money can be used for both new construction and rehabilitation, correct? Which is good. The old RDA set-aside money would put money throughout the districts and the areas where they'd allocate $5,000 or $10,000 for a new roof, a paint job. This is actually more substantial, and I think it moves in that direction. And I don't know, but we're just making a dent in a major problem. So my understanding is that these are from the unallocated, unused monies of CDBG, correct? Okay. And also from the EDA Economic Development Grant? That's not, if the match is less?
Yeah, so whatever is remaining that we don't use would be used for affordable housing.
Now, did you mention $1 million? That's what you're expecting? You think is, what is potentially there?
Yes. I didn't say a dollar amount. I'm saying, you know, because it could be a little bit less.
Right. If I asked for an amendment that, using these same funding sources, that would be allocated in an amount not to exceed $1 million, would you accept that?
I'd like to keep my motion as is and take a vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let me offer another potential amendment, and that would be that these funds be put into a restricted fund. That way, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, the money is restricted, it can't be used accidentally for any other purpose?
You could place those limitations on it, yes.
All right, is that okay with you?
I would be fine with that.
Okay. So I'm willing to support this, because I think after almost eight years in this council, I've seen the need, I've seen the community and the crying need for affordable housing. At the same time, I agree with Councilmember Quintero, we have to find ways to not only accommodate people, but lift people by creating job opportunities, making people homeowners. Ultimately, homeownership is a way to really rebuild and restructure neighborhoods. And we had the Neighborhood Stabilization Program about seven years ago that was very successful, but with limited funds. Unfortunately, there's nothing around right now, but whatever we can do to encourage that and to get people to lift themselves from poverty and get more people invested in our community, I think we have a better community. But I thank Member Soraya for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Soraya for bringing this forward. I think it's a very creative attempt at solving problems, and we definitely have a number of these problems related to housing and neighborhood decay in our city. So if I understand it correctly, we won't know until the end of the year if we have to pay HUD back. And that's correct?
I don't exactly the timeframe.
I think what we're hoping is that we'll know by the, no later than the end of the year. Hopefully, we might be in the next 60 to 90 days, but HUD has its process that it needs to go through, so we're hoping by the end of the year, at the latest, we'll have a defined answer.
Okay. And I mean, I absolutely get it. The 7th District, of course, is home to Park Grove Commons, which is one of the largest, if not the biggest, affordable housing developments, definitely the newest, or one of the newest in the city. And that's a source of pride for us. I live a few steps away from that at the corner of Clinton and Blackstone, and so I've seen the value that it's brought to our neighborhood. I also agree with Councilmember Quintero. Rehab is important. I've seen senior paint work in the neighborhoods, and I do applaud that and look for opportunities to exploit senior paint, absolutely. The only concern that I have is that this, your motion, it binds this money. So if we have to pay HUD back, if they make the recommendation we have to pay them back, it's over? And this body doesn't have the money to commit to whatever?
That's just one of the sources of funding.
It's just one of the sources of funding?
Yeah, so there's other funds there that we could tap into. So if they're unallocated, so after we get the decision, if we don't have to pay it, then it goes to this restricted fund as added by Lee.
I'm sorry. And what is the total of the total motion? It would encompass the total amount of unallocated funds?
We won't know.
Okay, and we won't know? Okay, good.
So there are some CDBG unallocated funds that there, it's less than $600,000 that haven't been allocated.
Okay.
And then there's the EDA grant, we don't know how much match grant, so it just depends after. So we will know in a few months, so maybe that's something that they can come and report back once it's all final.
Okay. The other question I have is, okay, so by voting yes on this motion, by approving this motion today, it's binding this organization to spending that money on the things specified in the motion. Could we...
If we get the monies.
If we, right.
Yeah, if we get the money.
Correct. But if this body were to wait, and let's say you were to bring your motion around Christmas time, could we say, because I mean, I heard a lot of people talking about parks and the need for parks, and how, you know, the motion I made was for $5,000 to fix bathroom doors at Manchester Park, because that's a great need, because we have vagrants kicking down those doors and, you know, using intravenous drugs in our bathrooms. So finding $5,000 to replace parks... So, so, so finding $5,000 to replace park bathroom doors is, is a big deal for the city still.
And I may have another solution for you on that, so.
So you know where I'm going, that, so if we vote for this today, I mean, I like affordable housing. I like parks maintenance, I like, you know what I mean? I like investing in, in, in the inner city. And so I'm, I'm concerned that if we vote for this today, that we will be binding ourselves when, come Christmas. I mean, I do believe we've got community groups that exist for the sole purpose of lifting up the parks, and, and we heard a few times, they're asking for millions of dollars to be put in the parks. So what I'm saying is that if we've, if we vote for this motion today, we've, we've, and the money comes in, then we've bound this organization to spend it on affordable housing, when what if, what if we could use it to, to put into parks, or what if we could use it to hire code enforcement officers? Do you see what I'm saying? So my concern is that it's not the right time.
And I think that's, and I think it's a policy call on your behalf. I think that I'd like to take a vote today. I think that there's an opportunity and that there's flexibility with potential funds that are unallocated, and so we can agree to disagree about the timing, but I think that today, since we're approving a budget and we are appropriating these different funds, it makes sense to do it today.
I think I interrupted you. You said, I think you're going to start to say you, you have perhaps a solution or compromise.
I'm going to make a sec, I'm going to make a second motion, so I'll bring up my second motion after this is final and discussed.
You wouldn't be open to including or to, if this money ever even comes into, allocating some of it to, to parks maintenance right now?
Not, not this money in particular. I, I will be making a second motion, and then we can have a discussion. I, I agree that there's a need in terms of deferred maintenance with, with, within our parks and even within our, just our infrastructure.
Sure.
And so I'm happy to continue having that debate in terms of if there's additional dollars, which I do believe that there may be some additional dollars that we can allocate, but for the purpose of this motion, I'd like to focus on affordable housing, projects, rehab, rehab projects, and also homeownership. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and, and again, I, I just wanted to thank you. I do believe it's a creative motion. Whether or not I support it or not, it remains to be seen, but I think it's a creative way to, to attempt to solve a problem. Thank you.
Member Brandow.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Olivier, Park Grove Commons is in District Seven?
Yes.
And how old is it?
Three, four years.
How's it doing?
In phase, in three, four years.
Is it doing pretty good? Thumbs up. Everything's great. Okay, all right, perfect. Good to know.
Source of pride.
Source of pride. Councilman Brand, you talked about a war on poverty in the city of Fresno. And the, I'm going to quote real quickly from an article, from a two-year-old article from Heritage Foundation, on the 50-year anniversary of Lyndon Johnson's War on Poverty in America, where he declared in 1964, "The administration today, here and now, declares unconditional war on poverty in America. Since that time, U.S. taxpayers have spent over $22 trillion on anti-poverty programs in $2,012, adjusted for inflation, $22 trillion. This spending, which does not include Social Security or Medicare, is three times the cost of all military wars in U.S. history since the American Revolution. Despite this mountain of spending, progress against poverty, at least as measured by the government, has been minimal." So a lot of the, a lot of this stuff's very futile, but we can engage in, I, I love the philosophical debate when it comes to affordable housing here in Fresno at, at the last minute of this budget hearing. I think maybe we probably, I'm, I'm not prepared to vote on that, so I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support this today. Councilmember Soria, I certainly applaud you for bringing it up, and it's a fantastic conversation that needs to be had, but I, and I think, and I think we should have it, but having it right now, I'm not prepared to vote, I'm not prepared to support this part of it. And I would like to hear from the administration. George Ann, do you give, are we giving a strong thumbs up from the, from Mayor Swearengen on this?
Mayor Swearengen pro, uh, supports Councilmember Soria's proposal. She did come meet with the mayor yesterday, and the mayor did indicate from these funding sources that she would support them being used for affordable housing and housing rehab projects.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I didn't know that. Count, I guess you had met with Councilman Brand, but I didn't know that the administration, this is a ver, I think this is one of the bigger stories of this budget cycle, so, so thank you very much. I'm definitely not going to be supporting all of the advocates that came up and asked today for free stuff. It's not my thing, so I'm going to not be supporting that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Brandow. Screen is clear. And from my perspective, joining the comments that have been made by my colleagues, the appealing part to me is rehabilitation. In District Four, we have a great need for rehabilitation. That's evidenced by the work that's been done at Eldorado Park, very successful there, but it continues, and it continues throughout other districts, but in my district, rehabilitation is critical for me as part of this motion and my second. So, the screen is clear. We have a motion. Let's do electronic voting, please. Those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those? This is, uh, Councilmember Soria only on the affordable housing slash rehabilitation The item passes 5-2 with Members Brandow and Olivier voting no. What we're going to do, folks, is take one motion at a time and vote on each before moving on, so, uh, Member Soria, you have the floor. Do you have any other motions?
Yes, I had one other motion, and that motion is related to, you know, the issue in terms of that you brought up, Clint, regarding deferred maintenance. I know that we've made some investments during this budget cycle on some of the deferred maintenance that exists, but I think that there's other opportunities that we should be looking at for dollars within the budget. I know that we've also had a substantive discussion in terms of the infrastructure needs, roads, and, and so forth. And I just want to say a couple things before I go into the motion. So the city of Fresno is beginning to experience the, the slow economic recovery. While we have, have had the opportunity in this budget to begin to directly address the needs of deferred maintenance in parks, in the Parks Department and neighborhood infrastructure, we still need to remain smart and look at ways to advance our move forward in providing safe and clean neighborhoods and parks. We know that our parks need our attention. We've received the really long list of deferred maintenance. You can drive through our neighborhoods and walk through our neighborhoods and see this need. I know that I see it in my district. I know that in my district alone, I've received over 360 requests for repairs of neighborhood streets and sidewalks alone, and this is, you know, through the Fresno application. And so this is really a reflection of what is happening throughout the city. While our Public Works does a really stellar job and stretches a dollar as much as possible, the fact, the fact is that there's not enough money allocated to the, to the, these needs to keep up with the annual wear and tear. These are our city's assets that this body and administration hold the responsibility to ke, keep in the repair and safe for our residents. Annually, we budget over $350 million in employee services and benefits. That budget includes over 180 positions that have been vacant for extended periods of time and will remain vacant this fiscal year. The number of days vacant on many of these positions exceed one year, with many of those already vacant and budgeted for the last three years. In the last two budget, in the last two budgets, measures to begin redirecting attrition savings of approximately 1% of the employee services and benefits have been made. Historically, the attrition rate is higher, and it's the additional funds left in vacancies that remain unbudgeted and are not redirected that would, would better serve our residents to place where their most, where, where they most benefit our residents. And what I believe, these are, to some degree, one-time monies and would be well-served to continue to address the deferred maintenance that exists within our community. And so, which is why I want to make the motion to, and encourage my council to support this motion. So the motion would be to approve the budget resolution and such related items with the amendments we, we approved and will approve if there are additional amendments to the budget, along with the council's amendments as provided in the memo from the mayor's office we received yesterday, and with the following language inserted in the bottom section of, of Section Three of the budget resolution, and it reads as follows. "If an employee position in any of the below-listed department is funded but remains unfilled for a fiscal quarter, the unspent appropriation for that quarter for the position shall be automatically transferred as follows. One, 50% of those funds shall be transferred and divided equally amongst the seven council districts for their infrastructure budgets. And two, 50% shall be transferred to the parks budget for the sole purpose of funding deferred maintenance repair costs. At the end of each fiscal ye, um, fiscal quarter, the city manager shall provide a report to council on applicable salary savings, and then the transfer shall be placed within 30 days of the end of the quarter. And this would apply to the funded positions in the following departments, finance, fire, information services, park, personnel, police, DARM, public works, general purpose, city managers, mayor's office, city attorney's office, city clerk's office." And so that's my motion.
Okay, we have.
So our, our, well.
Thank you. Member Baines?
Councilmember Soria, I noticed you included the language from the mayor's memo in your motion. I'm going to ask that you move that language out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be making that motion and have some, have some changes to that.
Perfect.
So you'll delete that portion of your motion regarding the mayor's amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'll second the motion. Okay, on the screen, we have Member Brand.
I, again, appreciate all the concerns within the districts. We all know we could use a lot more money, we could always use more money in parks. This is a city with a lot of needs and a big pot, and I think it, this would be, take away a lot of our control to respond to different situations that may arise during the year. So I, I can't support it because I believe it's, if we, at this point in time, nobody knows what's going to happen over the next 12 months. We've already made a lot of decisions, I think fairly allocating funds in different directions, including council seats in the parks, and I think it's, I can't support it because it just takes away control of those kind of situations that may arise during the next 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. And I, again, want to thank my colleague for what is definitely a, a creative attempt at, at solving some, some problems that I think everyone up here agrees that there's a, a very serious need for it. I was, I'm writing feverishly to, to, to copy down your motion, and I feel like I have a, a good understanding of it. I, it's, it's, it's similar to your first motion that we just voted on with the affordable housing in that it, it, I think that it, it binds our vote today will bind us down in terms of what we can do in the future. And, and I, and I understand that we can always come back. I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, that's what we're doing with, with the budget. We're binding ourselves to spend the money in the way that we are allocating it today with the entire budget. That is our vote, when we're voting for the budget. So what I'm asking in terms of my motion is that those unspent dollars on a quarterly basis come back and be used for one-time deferred maintenance. They're one-time salary savings. It's not going to cost any ongoing future costs of...
Does this expire, or it's, it's only for this budget year?
It's for this budget.
Oh, it's for this budget year only? Okay.
This budget.
And what's the, what's the value of, of, of this motion that you're making right now?
The value of this motion is that any of the...
No, the dollar value? Like, do you have a?
We, it depends on the, on the, on the vacancies that exist during that, that three-month period.
Okay.
So if all the, if there are no vacancies, then there will be no money coming back to the council. If there are some salary savings, because there's...
And you're telling only general fund positions, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, if I could, I appreciate the fact that for the first time, I think in my career at this organization, we're actually talking about deferred maintenance. And, and it has an organization, as the council member pointed out, the need to invest and maintain the assets that we already own. So on one hand, I appreciate the, the discussion. On the other hand, there's some budget and some fiscal realities that we have to deal with. Our budget already assumes that we're going to have $2.2 million of attrition. There's no way on a quarterly basis, at least in the first six months, to even project what that is, because you can look at a line item and say, I've got a vacancy over here in this, in this department, therefore there's salary savings, but not, but in, at the same time, you have to recognize the shift replacement and overtime and things like that, that, that salary savings may be being used for. There's also assumption on the revenue side that all the revenue is going to come in as projected or anticipated. So from a, from a budgetary standpoint, we don't even know and even begin to project what our salary saving is until probably January and February. So having reports coming back or, or providing reports on a quarterly basis as to the vacancies and the projected salary savings is dangerous, because you are betting that everything else that's in the budget is going to come to fruition. Now, again, I appreciate Councilmember Soria's efforts in recognizing that we have a very long list of deferred capital, which is why our recommendation is that we try to deal with some of it now, and we identified about $1 million. We come back in October sometime and sh, and look at what the carryover is for the fiscal year we're in now, and if it's greater than what we had anticipated, we'll deal with the residential streets, we'll deal with what's left or what's associated with the Tier One. Then there is a whole nother list in Tier Two, and then if there's even more funding after that, there's another probably 8 million of, of other deferred capital projects that we can certainly have that discussion around at that time. But I would encourage council to recognize that the budget process is a point in time, and it's the best estimate, and until we get at least halfway through the fiscal year, it would be very risky to start assuming that we could spend dollars the first quarter or second quarter without knowing what's going to happen in the third and fourth quarter. We have seen a significant jump in overtime costs, for example, in the fire department. I actually had to use salary savings from the police department to ca, to cover overtime costs in the, in the fire department this year. So I, I respect and appreciate the, the dialogue, but I would caution that it would be very premature to be spending any money other than what we come back from this year as part of the ongoing discussions with deferred capital, at least at this point.
Well, thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Councilmember Soria. I'm, I want you to know that I'm very interested in, in, in finding money. I mean, it's been a treat. I've, I've been here since 10, December of 10, and it's just been occasions so few and far between when we have found money. And vacancies are, can cut both ways. Vacancies have, have probably saved the, the city's budget and saved us from bankruptcy, and vacancies have hurt people in neighborhoods because we haven't been able to, to get police and CSOs and cadets where we need them to be as quick as we want them to be. So the vacancies are a double-edged sword. Again, I'm on this city council. I love it when we find money. I, I love to allocate money back to the taxpayer, into the neighborhoods, into our parks, and I will do so when it is found, but I'm unable to, at this moment, cast that vote to, to bind us. I mean, this isn't a thing, oh, you know, big bad Clint hates the neighborhoods. No, that, that's not the case at all. The, the thing is, is that Clint is going to, and there I go, I'm talking about myself in the third person, but I, I'm mostly interested in, in preserving the flexibility of this body and this organization as we move into the, the next stage, which isn't, which is, which is still economic recovery, but not blowing our budget. So if we get the, this money back, if these positions are empty and, and, and we as a body decide that we're, hey, we're going to use this money for, for something, I'm going to fight with you over where the money goes, and we're going to, we're going to fight over priorities, and, and we're going to actually do it from here in a number of months, but at this time, at today, I can't vote for it. But I, again, I thank you for bringing it.
And just to be clear, there, we're not suggesting any cutting of positions. That's not the motion.
Are you done, Member Olivier? Yes, thank you. Uh, Member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's my last and final 20-second budget since I've been here. George Ann or Bruce, can you explain that again? George Anna Bruce, uh, can you explain that again, or Bruce, about, uh, October, that you would see where the, the monies are in October?
So what we will do, for, we're in this current fiscal year, and as part of the budget, we're assuming a four-point-two million dollar carryover. So we're carrying those dollars into this budget to help balance this budget.
To help balance the budget.
To, to balance this budget. And so, as part of the budget you're dealing with, we're already assuming well north of two million dollars, two-point-two million in attrition savings. So we will have to get to at least the first six months, and sometime around January when we get the first estimates on real estate, and we're actually start being able to see some other numbers on sales tax. So on the revenue side, we won't know really where we are from a revenue side until around January and, uh, beginning of February. That is when we start then looking at the departments and saying, where are you at as far as filling vacancies? Do you have operating expenses that have gone up for some reason? Where we are in totality as far as revenues and expenses. To try to make assumptions related to where we would be in the first two quarters of, of the fiscal year without seeing where we are, um, first of all, we'd have to have, oh, we'd have to have already achieved two million dollars in, in salary savings. That has to come first. So my point is, is that the budget is one thing, the actual operation and the cost of operation is very fluid. Uh, I got a police chief over here who, if I looked at his salary savings four or five weeks ago, I could've gone, well, I think this is what his salary savings is, but then all of a sudden, we had a presidential candidate show up, and his overtime budget took a significant imp- hit. My point is, is that you can't get through the first six months and make assumptions, or in the first quarter, and make assumptions, uh, that early on. You need to first see sometime in January where you are in revenues and expenses, and at that point in time, which is why we do mid-years, we can either make a choice that we can spend it now, or there may be a decision to say that, well, potentially there may be an ability to fund something else, but if we spend it now, that takes that opportunity away from us. I just, you know, I don't want to take that opportunity away from us, uh, and/or the next administration, who may have a decision to be making as far as, uh, what those priorities are.
And didn't, didn't we as a council last year, I think it was councilmember Brand that put together the Reserve Act? Is this where we set monies aside too for that reserve?
Well, we, we, we can, under the Reserve Act, we have a thing called a, um, um, a depreciation reserve for deferred capital. We haven't even funded that. I also will remind everybody-
But we voted to fund it.
No, we, yeah, I know we voted to approve a lot of reserves that we haven't funded yet, that's another issue. But I'll point out, and give you a good example, uh, the public safety communication system, and I have yet to see the number yet, that's probably a multi-million dollar investment. And we have yet to identify a funding source. I could see it, uh, a conversation around January, February, or part of next year's budget if we anticipate the carryover being greater than we have, and I think we've had about a one-point-two million dollar projected carryover next year. If carryover for next year is greater, I've got a police chief and a fire chief are, are gonna probably be wanting to know how we're gonna replace that communication system, which is probably gonna be a multi-million dollar expense. So if you start spending it now on deferred maintenance, which again, I've got a ten-million-dollar list of deferred capital, you may lose or squander the opportunity to invest in another asset that needs to be replaced, and that's the public safety communication system.
Okay.
Those are just examples of, of those choices that you need to make further down the road than today.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, the screen is clear, whoop, uh, member Baines?
Thank you, council president. And I, I wanna, uh, acknowledge, uh, member Soria for being creative again. I have a couple, couple of questions and maybe an idea, uh, that could, that may, uh, could I see where you're, certainly see where you're trying to go, but with making sure that we make some, uh, commitments to ramp up our investment in our deferred ma- maintenance, especially in our parks and our, and our tier-one categories that we have throughout the city. And I also want to, uh, agree with the city manager that I think that January could potentially be a better time to look at, look at that, at that issue financially, um, for us, 'cause we may, we may have some, some firmer, some firmer ground. And it's my understanding that the administration's been pretty committed to funding deferred maintenance in both the parks and, and the rest of the city, and I'm just wondering if, in your motion, if we can have that, um, uh, that report begin in January.
That's fine.
Yeah, because I, I think, I think that, as the city manager said, uh, would be better, and I would, I would also, uh, recommend that if we can clarify where we're going to spend the funds, I would make a suggestion that we, uh, we spend the funds, uh, with deferred maintenance in our parks, as you have highlighted, uh, in your, um, your resolution, but also, uh, that we do fifty percent in parks, uh, deferred maintenance, as you have here. Uh, but the other fifty percent I would recommend goes to our tier-one deferred maintenance for, for the rest of the city. And I, I'm just wondering, I, I think that may, and, and here's why I say that. While I'm, I am a big advocate for having more money in our council budgets, I actually think that, um, splitting that money seven ways dilutes it so much that it may, we may not get the bang for our buck. But if we take the, that whole fifty percent and allocate it toward tier-one deferred maintenance that our city manager talks so much about, uh, along with the tier, the deferred maintenance in our parks, we have a pretty big pot. So I would, uh, offer those, uh, offer those amendments to you if, if you're-
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Is the second fine with tho- with those amendments?
Yes.
Do you, I, I apologize. Um, is there a copy of this motion somewhere? I, I, we don't have one over here, and so, and Jane, I'm trying to keep Jane from going too far out on a limb, 'cause I wanna bring her, I want her, I want her here in January.
It's highlight, it's highlighted and underlined, Bruce.
Okay. So as you could appreciate, this is the first time I've seen this, so we're kinda struggling.
Yeah, after a quick rea- and I, I'll just reiterate, I mean, this is, this is on top of being an administrative nightmare or challenge, um, I, I, I could not recommend this to the council. This is, this is just, again, I would recommend that we wait until January, maybe February, 'cause again, unless it's the end of January. I'm looking at Jane, because she's the one who has to compile all these numbers, um, but we'll, we'll bring, we'll do a mid-year sometime in January and bring the information back to council. It's just that some of the information, we gotta get from ACIS, we gotta get from the county, and some other agencies before we, uh, call the ball, and, and, but we will commit to bringing back something in January as to where we're at, at from a mid-year, and some recommendations.
Member Brandell?
Thank you, council president. Chief Dyer, while I've got you, while I've got you captive in the audience, I wanna ask you about the impact of, of this motion and to the budget.
Well, thank you, uh, as a, as a department head and, and having, uh, done fifteen budgets here as a chief, um, you know, I've seen the various budgets and how budgets are funded over the, the course of that time. And I think there's two things that, uh, need to be considered, is the fact that, number one, uh, budgets aren't always fully funded to the degree that they need to be in order to cover the cost of those things that you know you need to cover during the course of the year. For example, we know that within our budget today, uh, there is not funding set aside for the mandatory twelve-year maintenance of one of our helicopters, uh, which is a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we also know that there's not a funding for a, a main rotor gearbox that comes up in July, that is a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we utilize salary savings during the course of the year, generally after the mid-year, when we look at what our salary savings is to fund some of those unmet needs, uh, within our budget. There are also unanticipated things that come up during the course of the year, uh, that we're not aware of, like I found out this week, as we were preparing to transition our communications center over to the corporation yard, as we do about every seven years, when we redo our systems in the communications center, but based on funding from the state, where we have to then take our, um, operations and move them to the corporation yard. I found out this week from facilities that that corporation yard does not have the electrical capacity to house our operators that take the complaint calls, as well as dispatchers. Therefore, there is going to be about an additional hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost we have to come up with within our budget to make that, that happen. So when you look at some of the anticipated and then the unanticipated needs that come up during the course of the year, I think this would be overly restrictive on our budgets. It would take away the discretion the city manager has to compile all the department needs after the mid-year, and then look to see how those needs can be met. And I, I just think it would be overly restrictive, uh, to do this, uh, today. And as you know, in our budget, there is staggered hiring, so our budget is built upon staggered hiring. That means we're not funded, if we are adding twenty-five officers, they're not funded for the, twenty-five of them for twelve months. They're staggered hiring. We have fifteen coming in July, five two months later, so that's how our budget is built. So our budgets are very tight, we have unmet needs, both anticipated and unanticipated, that those salary savings are used to cover.
So chief, you really, um, you kind of already count on using salary savings for your own department? Basically is what I'm hearing you tell me.
We, we, we always anticipate that there will be some salary savings that we can meet the unmet needs and any unanticipated things that come up, but we also understand that is a decision above our level. The city manager makes that based on the needs of the whole city with council concurrence. And I think that process has worked very well over the years, a- and I would hate to see us deviate from that. Uh, there are unexpected things that come up. We had, uh, a mutual aid to go to, uh, Butte for the fires. Well, fifty thousand dollars in overtime. Um, we had the presidential nominees come in, fifty-seven thousand dollars in overtime. So we didn't anticipate those things coming in, so I, I, I don't think we wanna tie the hands of the city manager and the department heads.
Okay, and chief, on this one yard where you didn't have the electrical capac- what, was that, that's probably related to the state of California shutting down Diablo Canyon, but-
I, I think it's the, the, uh, expansion of automation throughout our city.
Okay, thanks a lot, chief.
You bet.
Thank you, council president. Council president, this, a lot to digest. I'd love to take a couple of minute break to, to go back and read it a couple times, talk with my staff a little bit, maybe fif- ten or fifteen minutes, if that's possible.
I think so, I've- Yeah. Okay. And there's also an invitation, uh, to assist in, uh, turning on the fountains at front. So perhaps we should, uh-
That's a lot to do on a budget day, right?
Yeah, it's tremendous amount. Uh, let's do, uh, member Quintero, and then we'll take a break.
I'm done.
Okay, then we'll take a ten-minute break, be back at eleven forty.
Thank you, Sal.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah, that's right, I didn't realize this was new already. All right, that's a good, that's, that's, you're right. Always a boost, yeah. We, we, we break a lot of minutes.
Thank you, former president, Brand. Okay, we'll, uh, resume the meeting. Uh, did anyone else wanna discuss, uh, this issue with the members that are here? No? All right, then it's, uh, be it my opportunity, uh, I had a couple of questions, that, member Olivier was talking about long-term, I think, versus short-term with this proposal. Member Soria, is this a one-year deal or longer?
Um, this would be, um, just for this budget.
Okay. And you, you mentioned vacancies. Um, have you had a chance to look at those or determine what's applicable or maybe applicable to your motion?
Um, yes, and so I believe, um, the administration and the budget department, the finance department gave us, um, a copy of the general fund vacant positions, which were, um, requested by, um, councilmember Baines earlier on during the budget hearings, and so, um, which is why we had identified that there were some positions that, um, have been funded for a number of years that, um, have gone unfilled, and so we wanted to address this issue by, um, ensuring that these actual, um, monies are used for the deferred maintenance that we've all been talking about.
Okay. And, uh, chief, is there a reason why you didn't, uh, I just had one question for you. With the helicopter needs, that wasn't included in your budget as a line item?
Let me, let me answer that. That's right, and there are a number of things that departments requested. Uh, the helicopter overhaul, the rotor overhaul that the chief alluded to, you'll notice that was in your tier-one list of projects. And so our recommendation that, um, we presented to the council yesterday, uh, would be if, um, in discussions, I will tell you, with discussions with the chief, that would be one of the first projects we would deliver, um, a- along with a couple of others, but, and then when we come back in October, hopefully we'll get to rest of tier one, tier two, and potentially some of the other deferred, uh, capital projects that I, I've provided council. So yes, it is, it's not in his budget, but it is in my list of tier one.
Thank you. Uh, it seems to me, uh, you, you mentioned deferred maintenance, the city manager, and it, it seems like that's the theme of member Soria's, uh, efforts here, that this is, uh, deferred maintenance dollars that you're seeking through your motion. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. And by the deferred maintenance, you're talking about parks and district maintenance, and this is, uh, potentially one-time money because it comes, what's funded now and hasn't been spent would be the funding for the two proposals that you have, the deferred maintenance-
Yeah, it would be a one-time, one-time funding.
And then if it wasn't used the next cycle, it would continue to be utilized in the deferred maintenance aspect that city manager's taught us to be very aware of and take care of as best we can?
Yes, that could potentially be the case.
Okay. Did you have any numbers or digits on vacancies, uh, that are current?
Well, we were, we were given the list, excuse me, we were given a list earlier during the budget hearings, um, with all the vacant positions that we've had, and so I know that if, we all have a copy of it, um, there's at minimum twenty vacancies that have been, um, that have been budgeted, that have been vacant for, um, over a year. And so I think in attempts to look at where there's potential salary savings to address some of the deferred maintenance, I, you know, we, I thought that that would be a good, um, source of one-time funding.
Very good. Okay. Uh, screen is clear. If you support the motion, it would be a yes vote electronically.
So can, can I just make a couple comments?
Yes, of course.
In terms of, just from some of the discussions that we had, um, with the city manager regarding, um, and I know that he made some valid points in terms of the budgeting, um, I do wanna say, obviously, I feel, um, strongly in terms of, you know, some of these unused dollars, and so what I would like to do in terms of the motion, um, as suggested by city manager, come back at mid-year, which is in January, right? But what I would suggest, rather than, um, looking at, um, quarterly and, um, and coming back to us, that at the mid-year, um, you come back to us, but that those salaries are actually frozen, so that the council has actual input as to, um, how we allocate in terms of the deferred maintenance that we are talking about. So I would amend my motion to, to include that.
Would it be wiser to withdraw the first motion and make this the, uh, your original motion?
Yeah, so the, the motion would be to, um, come back in January, um, and those salary savings- Yeah, so the motion would be to come back in January, and those salary savings that you will bring to us in terms of a report of the unfilled positions, that we have the ability to give input as to what deferred maintenance projects we want to...
So, if I understand you correctly, you're withdrawing that first motion. And there was, was there a second on that motion?
Yes.
So, is that...
So, withdrawing my first, withdrawing the first, replacing it with this next motion. So, we're still going to be dealing with the salary savings, so that in January, when you come back to us, we have input as to how we spend the dollars. So, rather than you saying, this is how we're going to spend it, that you freeze those savings and that you come back to us and get our input for the deferred maintenance.
That's fine.
I'll second that. Okay. Is there any new discussion on the new motion?
Counsel, just to be clear, there is no main motion pending now to approve the budget items, but only the standalone motion that Councilmember Soria just brought up, right?
Correct, that's my understanding. Okay, screen is clear. That seems to be a nice compromise in the middle that would placate the forces that are in effect at the moment and would level the playing field. All right, those that are in favor of the motion that was just recited, we'll do it electronically, and that would be a yes vote if you support it and a no vote if you do The motion fails with three yes votes by Baines, Soria, and Capriolio. Okay. Member Brand? I want to introduce the motion to set aside the RDA money for the reserves, which is, I'm sorry, I have a punch-up from Member Baines. I thought you wanted to say something on the item.
Yeah, I want to move us along and hopefully, so I want to make a motion that we adopt the budget with a couple of amendments, adopt the mayor's proposed budget with a couple of amendments. I want to replace council budget motions number 16 and 18 with the following amendments. So, many of you remember that a couple, couple days back, we brought what was called an omnibus motion to include, include many, many items. I want to, after talking with the mayor and the administration, I think we came to a place where we bring our budget in balance, but also are able to get all of those things that this council and the administration have said are important to them for the way to run the city. And before I make the final amendments, I wanted to just make a comment to my colleagues in the administration. I want to thank the administration for all of the work that went into preparing this budget. This is a very long, arduous exercise, and I appreciate the staff, Jane, Renee, Mayor, Jan, Bruce, and everyone that had a hand in this. And I know I forgot some folks, but forgive me. All the department heads that came and presented to us, I want to thank them. Certainly appreciate that. And listen, this was a good budget, in my opinion. We have a good budget, and it's one that I'm going to be glad to support. And I also want to thank the mayor a couple of days ago for working with us to find that common ground, and I'll describe these amendments shortly. And I want to thank my colleagues, and most importantly, the council president, for running a great budget session.
Thank you.
It's not easy to keep us all in line, but you figured out a way to do it. I want to thank all of my colleagues that worked really hard to, on behalf of the citizens of Fresno. So, as I said, I'm making a motion to adopt this year's budget, the mayor's recommended budget. I'm going to replace council budget motions 16 and 18 with the following amendments. I want to fund $70,000 for Pinedale Community Center staffing, $100,000 for the BMX Park, $50,000 for Mariella Brown Center, $55,000 for Melody Park, $25,000 for the Tower District Satellite Station, $25,000 for the Stone Soup Report Writing Station, $48,000 for the Fresno Historical Society, $25,000 for Fresno Fair Museum, $47,000 for Quigley Park, $41,000 for Lafayette Park, $5,000 for Manchester Park, and $507,000 for neighborhood street projects, for a total of $998,000.
I'll second that motion.
And then I want to direct staff to return, it's almost done, Council President, I want to direct staff to return in October with the updated budget carryover amount and budget resolutions to support the following spending plan. For carryover in excess of the 4.2 million, the following funding priority shall be established. $100,000 for BMX Park, $450,000 for additional Tier One deferred maintenance, it's issued in the June 2016 memo from the city manager's office, and $548,000 for neighborhood street projects, which is the remainder of Councilmember Brandal's motion. For carryover in excess of 5.2 million, the following funding priority shall be established. Remaining Tier One deferred maintenance items and remaining Tier Two deferred maintenance items, which I believe encompasses the will of this council as expressed throughout this budget hearing process, to not only make sure we are funding, we are making sure that we are funding and placing priority on our deferred maintenance throughout our parks and our streets and roads. Council President, that's my motion.
I'll second that. Member Brandal?
All right, a couple of questions. So, to be clear, that, so that everybody hears it probably more than once, if I was going to simplify your motion, it's what we've been talking about all week, with the exception that half of the, half of the, half of your motion from the other day is being funded immediately, half of my neighborhood street program from the other day is being funded immediately, both of those components have another half that's going to be looked at in October, and if there is an overage of money in the city funds, those will be fully funded. When we vote today, those things will for sure get the first funding of any overage when we look at it about October.
Yes, Councilmember Brandal, you have summarized it correctly.
Yeah, thank you. And then Councilman Brand, did this include the stuff that you were about to make motion?
Does this include the reserve resolution?
What is the reserve resolution?
It's the one where we ask the money from the RDA payment.
Yes, this does include that. I believe that's recommended in the mayor's proposed budget, correct? It's one of the enabling documents, Councilmember Brand.
Counsel, if I could ask, there are seven budgetary action items before you write now. Is your motion to approve all seven?
Yes.
Okay. If that's the case, I understand staff needs to make a couple of corrections before you vote on it?
City Attorney, is that what you punched up?
Yes, that was it.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Councilmember Brand, what was your... So, then, is your motion to, a sweeping motion to include these other motions?
Councilmember Brand, thank you for clarifying that, and Councilmember Soria, which were in my ear. There is one motion, there is one enabling document that I do not agree with, so it will be probably the motion to codify the RDA payments for five years. So, if you wanted to, if you wanted to make that motion separately...
Yes.
I will, I will make a motion that we accept all of the budget enabling documents, but ask for a separate vote, Council, City Manager, on that one item. City, I'm sorry, City Attorney?
Yes, you can do it. So, the motion is to approve the first six items, and then the seventh one would be the RDA loan item, is that correct?
Yes. So, do I make that now or later?
You can do it either, they're separate.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we approve the RDA reserve funding next, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take the first. Are you finished with your motion, Member Baines?
There's one other thing I need to do, Council President, is I need to withdraw, actually, hold on one second. All right, I need to withdraw motion 25 from the budget, and that is the, that was the direction to put the paratransit out to, to bid. I need to withdraw that in my motion.
Okay, second would remain with that withdrawal. Member Brand?
It just, everything bounced around, it had necessarily come back to Councilman Baines. So, Doug, I need to ask you a question. What have we rolled into this vote? That's what I need to be clear on.
My understanding is it's a motion to approve the first six budget items, with the seventh being the RDA loan proceeds going into reserve, so all but that, and it includes the items as outlined in the mayor's summary provided yesterday?
Yes.
That I believe Councilmember Baines summarized?
Yes.
And were there any other council motions that were approved outside of what was set forth in the mayor's memo? I don't believe so. I think it was all rolled into that. So, it's approved, the motion is to approve the first six budget items with the changes as outlined in the mayor's memo, that Councilmember Baines summarized.
So, there'll be one vote?
Yes.
Or two?
All the previously approved motions will be included, except for those that were withdrawn.
No, I get that, but is the RDA vote a second vote?
That's going to be a separate vote.
Okay. And then, walk me through what, the results of that, say that vote is a yes vote, does that, will then it have to be voted in to become part of the budget, or with the yes vote, does it become part of the budget?
The Councilmember Brands' motion?
Yes.
That's a separate budgetary resolution. It will stand alone.
Okay. All right, I'm clear. Thank you, Council President.
But before you vote, there are some corrections that need to go on the record on some other items.
So, I have a couple of corrections on some of the resolutions, the salary resolution specifically, has two errors in it that I'd like to read into the record to have changed. The first is on page 13 dash 2.1, and it's a footnote, footnote number four, has been stricken, but it needs to be retained. So, disregard the strike on footnote four. And then the next change is on page 2.2, the range number for the Retirement Benefits Manager is E11, not E9. So, those are the two changes I had.
Okay, any other additions, deletions, corrections to the motion? Member Brand? Just want to make one comment on the salary resolution, going back to last year. I'd still like to see the city manager go back and narrow some of the ranges we had. Remember, last year, when you approve a range of 100 to 1,000, say to 120,000, anything within that range is considered approved. But a lot of these, particularly on the exempt positions, have a spread of 38 to 40 percent, and most city, particularly the MOU negotiated ones, have a spread of 20 percent. So, just come back as a footnote, that we come back and review those to make them, because I think in some cases, they're too broad. That's all. Thank you. Okay, on Member Baines' motion, we'll take electronic vote on that. In favor of the motion is a yes vote, opposed is a no. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. The budget has been passed. Now, we have the RDA motion by Member Brand. Is there any discussion on that from the dials? No one's punched up?
Well, can we, can someone just present what the resolution is for the public to know?
Member Brand? I can find the resolution, wherever I put it at. It basically allocates the portion of the RDA, I think it's called the ropes is the acronym, the repayment of city loans, about 3.9 billion dollars this year. Correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, I mean, City Manager, for the next, well, was it five years or till the fund is depleted?
What was the question again?
What, on the motion to use the RDA, dedicate to fund the reserve until the reserve gets to 10 percent of the general fund?
That's correct. We are committing future RDA repayments to ensure that we have built an adequate reserve, which I think is projected to occur by 20...
20.
2020.
2020. So, we will go from 2009, of 40 million dollars in the hole, to 2000, by 2000, by this year will be a 20 million dollars in our reserve, which is a major accomplishment for this council and the administration, and by 2020, to be fully realized at 10 percent or roughly 30 million dollars, which put the city in a much better position financially and will contribute to the credit rating increase by the city of Fresno. That's what we're doing. Thank you. Okay, Member Baines, you have an opportunity.
Thanks, Council President. And I won't be supportive of this resolution as they, and while I am very supportive of restoring our reserve, as most of you know, I think the idea of binding, you know, future councils for five years and the future mayoral administration is really not, not wise on our part. So, I'm not exactly sure, you know, Councilmember Olivier spent a lot of time today, which I think you made valid points on binding us even for six months from now. This vote would bind, you know, future councils, after you and I are gone, for monies that are flexible dollars, that can, that have discretion. And I think that councils every year should have to make the decision of how much of that resource they want to put to the, to the, to the reserve. So, while I'm supportive of building the reserve, as you know I'm going to support, I have the last couple of years supported putting the RDA allocation in there, I'm not exactly sure this is a wise choice of binding future legislative bodies for five years along this line. Thank you. So, I won't be supportive of the day.
Member Olivier?
Yeah, I just had a question from anyone from the administration who'd know, what's the industry standard in terms of municipal government and reserves they carry?
Well, I think the minimum, bare minimum, is 10 percent. Other cities such as Clovis...
12, 15.
12, 15.
GFPA is 10 percent.
What's that?
GFPA.
Yeah, well, I was about to point out that it's interesting, our enterprise departments, and this is a direction that came from, from me, via the mayor, in discussion with the mayor, our general fund departments, and I've said this before, our enterprise departments all now carry a minimum of a 25 percent operating reserve. Our city employees' health and welfare trust maintains a 30 percent reserve. So, while the goal may seem, and I know that I've had this discussion with your consultant as well, 10 percent, three years from now, is still, in my humble opinion, woefully underfunded, but I understand the bare minimum is 10 percent. And the resolution that you have before you codifies the commitment that this administration and this council has made to this organization and the community, so that when there is another economic downturn, and there will be, that we don't go through what we went through over the last four years.
So, this, with this resolution, we go up to about 10 percent, just under, right?
In three or four years.
Three or four years, okay. I mean, that's, I appreciate your comments, Member Baines, but I mean, to me, the reserves, the fiscal health of this organization is the most critical thing that we do. This council, working with this administration, saved this city from bankruptcy, because when we came, you remember how bad it was, and it was our votes and the tough choices we made and our mayor that, that saved us from bankruptcy. You can argue that there are other things more important than the fiscal health of the organization, parks or law enforcement or affordable housing, but there's nothing without fiscal health. We can't deliver on anything without fiscal health. And so, that's why it's the most important thing to me that we do here, and that's why I appreciate your commitment to building reserves and everyone's commitment to building reserves, because it's so very critical and allows us to do things like borrow money at a good interest rate, and then that money goes back into the neighborhoods. So, it's so important, and I'm very happy to second it and urge a yes vote. So, thank you all.
Member Baines?
Councilmember Olivier, and I just want to thank you, Council President, for allowing me just to respond really briefly. I want to really clarify, I don't want there to be any misunderstandings about what the discussion is. Just because I'm not supportive of this does not mean I'm not supportive of fiscal health. This is a policy. Well, I want to make clear that your statements weren't interpreted that way then. I know you didn't say that.
No, I said that you've always been supportive of fiscal health.
Right, and I want to make clear that I am very much support fiscal health and very much remember the situation we came in. I just cannot commit future councils to flexible, to the expenditure of flexible dollars when we have no idea what's going to occur and face this city in the next five years, or three years, or actually, for that matter, next year. I actually believe that the decision to fund the reserve and the level at which we fund the reserve... the reserve with discretionary dollars, this body should have the opportunity to review that on an annual basis. And certainly, members that are going to come after me should have that discretion. So I want to be really clear that this in no way means, means not supporting this, means that I don't support the fiscal health. This means that I am, I believe that the decision should have flexibility in it year after year, quite like you and I have had. So we've enjoyed that flexibility year after year funding enough, and we're voting actually to take that flexibility away from future councils. I don't believe that's a wise decision. But I, I do, and I, I really do am committed to, to the fiscal health of the city.
It's very clear.
It's very clear. Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, Member Sawyer?
I too. I echo some of the same comments that were made by just my colleague, Oliver. I think that it is important, policy, it's not the best policy decision to bind other councils or even future administrations. Yes, while we all agree that it's very important to build our reserve, and I'm a strong supporter of ensuring that we have a strong reserve and that we're building that, but I do also believe that since we have annual budgets, that should be an annual decision that each body and the new administration gets the opportunity to decide what dollars go into those reserves. So I would be, I won't be supportive of this resolution today.
Thank you, Member Quintero. City Attorney? Next year's budget, which will not be my twenty-third, can the, can the council change this with four votes next year?
This policy could be changed at any time with four votes, subject to veto at that time.
Thank you. Member Brand?
I'll comment. You know, when I did this reserve policy back a few years ago, did a lot of research, looked at a lot of cities, almost every city had a minimum of ten percent, some had fifteen, they have contingency reserves, they had the facility reserves. Historically, this city, historically, for a long, many years, had no reserve at all. I think it was during the Otter administration that they first passed the, the emergency reserve. So, and historically, if you don't make a commitment, there's always something else that comes forward, you'll never have that. And going through the Great Recession when we were literally one payroll period away from bankruptcy, that's what we have to do to make that commitment, to make that statement. And it also, again, has an impact on our credit rating. What bound the council was not reserves. It was many years of thirty-year bonds that we, that we made and maybe shouldn't have made that bind us for twenty to thirty years, depending on the bond. So this is a statement that the city of Fresno, with all due respect to my colleagues, is confirming and affirming its commitment to fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Member Sawyer?
So I just have a question then, why can't the policy be general and then have the, every council annually and the administration figure out what dollars they're going to use? Why does it have to be flexible dollars? And so I think that's, that's the call, because it's so prescriptive. And those are the reasons that I can't support specifically, because I think that we can be a little bit more flexible, not necessarily pointing out what dollars. We can create a policy where there is a commitment to build that, that reserve to ten percent in the next five years, but I don't necessarily agree that we need to pinpoint to those dollars just yet.
Can I call for the question on this one?
The, okay, the screen is clear, and I'll call for the question when it's appropriate. Yeah, right now I have a couple of questions. On the, we just mentioned that it takes four votes. If there's a change of circumstances and we can vote to modify it. I've been told before there was five votes, City Attorney. Is it four or five on an issue of this magnitude?
Well, this, this action takes four votes to approve it. It would be subject to veto. If vetoed, it would take five votes to override the veto. The same would apply if you want to get rid of this resolution at some later date.
Very good. Okay, screen is clear. And we'll do electronic voting. Those who favor the motion, it's a yes, and opposed is a no. The motion passes five-two with Members Baines and Sawyer voting no. Okay, folks, it's twelve twenty-two. High-speed rail update will be after lunch, as well as items that are currently pending. We'll see you at one-thirty. Okay, folks, good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for being here this afternoon for our session. And traditionally, we do ceremonials at this time. So former council president, Oliver Baines, will, OB three, would you like to go first?
Yes.
Since you have your people there and everything's ready to go and. So the first ceremonial presentation is a special recognition and presentation of the Freedom School, its attendees, Mr. Burton, Mr. White, Mr. White, Mr. Samuel, Mr. Harris, Mr. Daye Vaughn, and Mr. Standifer, Mr. Rogers, and Elijah McFall. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Council President. And Reverend Harris, can you, can you come up here for a minute, please? And, and, and I, and I just really, I don't get a chance to do this enough, because this is a, you know, you got to turn around so everybody can see. I don't get a chance to do this enough, but this young man does great work in our community and has been doing so much work in our community for the last three decades. I'll, I'll tell you, you are a treasure to our community. We appreciate the effort that you give, making sure that you are always advocating for stuff to be right in our, in, in our city here. So Reverend Harris, dear friend of mine, and he started a school, the Freedom School. And, and I'll tell you that, you know, you guys, some of you guys may remember back in nineteen fifty-four, fifty-five, they had the, I'm sorry, nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five, they had the Freedom Schools down in Alabama. And we knew at that time in American history, you absolutely had to have them, right? I mean, you know, African-Americans at the time were being denied education of, of any substance. Well, so I, I love the fact that my brother has brought back the Freedom Schools to Fresno. You know, different time, different era, but still very much needed and very much relevant. So I wanted to give, yes, definitely. I, I, I wanted, I wanted to give my friend an opportunity to brag a little bit about his vision and how he's educating our young people in the community.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's an honor and a blessing to be here today at our city council, chambers here with you all. My name is Reverend, Reverend Dr. Floyd Harris, Jr. I'm assistant pastor of New Life and Light Church of God here in West Fresno, and also international civil rights leader. And, you know, I, I am an advocate, I, I love my people, I love my community. But before I do further do, I have to give honor to my elder, Kainde. Can we give him a round of applause for? Had not been for him, I would not be standing here. And had not been for me standing here, these young men would not be here today. And so we're just replacing one another here. And we just, we just had an opportunity to, we know that the, the San Joaquin Valley is agriculture, and so, you know, we, I'm the second vice president of the California African-American Farms Association, and so we farm on twenty-two acres behind Kearney Park. And this is where this Saturday is where we're going to be training these young men and women. There's more Freedom School students, but some of them are on vacation with their parents and they could not make it. But this Saturday, we will be out at the farm, teaching them how to drive tractor, teaching them how to grow plants, teaching them how to cultivate, teaching them how to do maintenance, and also teaching them how to harvest and teaching them how to sell, to make money. And this is what it's all about. Last year, our Freedom School students, we, they harvest tomatoes. Dr. Saxton, we collaborate with different many people across Fresno and the universities and across the country. And it was a blessing to see that our Freedom School students learned how to can. They can relish. They then turned around, we entered into the Fresno Fair, and guess what? They took first place. And that was just a good feeling to see how the, the reaction on their face when they received their, their seven-dollar check and their little ribbon, that they, they just had the most pride of themselves. And this is what it's all about in Fresno, is to empower our children, empower our community, that they can do it, no matter what the obstacles are, no matter what you're facing, you can do it. But you have to apply yourself. Many people don't understand the amount of time that I put into organizing, the amount of time that I put into these babies. Sometimes I don't even sleep because I want to, because Professor Dr. Kainde told me, it's about being excellent, not second, but excellent. And so this is what we're bringing to our community. And real quick, if I may have one of these folders here, I was telling the council member earlier that the different programs that we have this year is automotive mechanics. We want to thank our staff also, and a new staff that came on board this year, to help build this Freedom School to the next level. We have automotive mechanics, we have a book club that we're doing, we have cultural science, cultural arts. We also have farming and landscaping and janitorial. We also have journalism classes, we also have personal development classes, we also have sewing and knitting classes, we also have video production classes. And also, we are going to have our history class by our own Dr. Kainde, who's going to come in and teach the history piece of our community. And we just thank God for him. And then the other day, I got a call, councilman, that we have a brother who wants to teach karate and Kwan Do. So we're on the move here. We're on the move here. And as Brother Kain, Dr. Kainde told me, with a budget or no budget, we're going to do it.
All right. All right. Thank you so much. And, and I, and I wanted, Reverend Dr. Harris, just to take just a moment to explain all the great things that are happening at our Freedom School right here in Fresno. Like I said, different time, different place in history, but the topics are as relevant right now today. So I want to ask our young, our, our students to come up here, because we want to give them some certificates. Well, let, let me have our young students come up here. And I understand Floyd Harris III has a, has a speech that he wants to give. Now, I will say, I know your daddy, so I, I, I know, I, I know, I know that you could probably give a good speech, so here you go, young man.
My name is Floyd D. Harris III. I will be a sophomore at Central West High School next year. I'm the son of Reverend Dr. Floyd D. Harris, Jr., the founder of the Freedom School. I'm a member of the Freedom School, and it has helped me in many ways. How to farm land, harvest vegetables, sell vegetables, drive tractors, how to give public presentations, how to introduce myself properly, how to shake hands properly, how to do landscaping and janitorial, how to show respect to adults and my friends, how to properly tie a necktie, and many other things. I am proud to be a member of the Freedom School because of the training I received. At my school, I had to give a presentation in my history class, and I received an A. This year, I ran for Central West High School Student Body Government. It was elected by my school to become student treasurer for next year. What I liked about the Freedom School is that we have lots of fun and we go on trips. We went to Big Tree State Park, Blackbeards, Island Water Park, and so much more. I want to thank the Freedom School for teaching me how to be a positive young man and teaching me the skills I need to be in, successful in life. I want to thank Fresno City Councilmember Oliver Baines at his office for their support. Thank you.
All right. Well, listen, it, it, it starts early. So Reverend Dr. Harris, I'm, I'm gonna let you present the, introduce your, your, your young men to the audience here, and then we will give them their certificates and celebrate appropriately.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go ahead and allow them to speak and give their names, the high school that they go to.
Hello, everyone. My name is Devon Standifer, and I go to Edison High School, and I'm a part of the Freedom School.
Hi, I'm Jeremiah Avatar. I go to Central East, and I'm part of the Freedom School.
My name, my name is Freddie Deshawn Standifer, and I'm part, and I go to Edison High School, and I'm part of the Freedom School.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, and.
And so, listen, Dr. Harris, I'm gonna give you these certificates for all your students here. So I know a few of them couldn't make it because they're on vacation, but when you get back to the Freedom School, we would like to award them all certificates on behalf of Council District Three in the city of Fresno, and thank you for all your continued efforts. We appreciate you all very much, and you all keep succeeding and achieving. We appreciate you all very much, and you all keep succeeding and achieving.
That'd be great, or the chief at least. I know he takes the stage, but you guys can share a little bit if you like. So once I heard about Detective Hance, and I thought, what a story to bring to the City Council, and what an opportunity to show the community, this community here at City Hall, the community of Fresno, how great our officers are and what positive things they do in our community. So in a bit, we'll hear from Detective Hance. But right now, a little bit of background, he's married to Amy. She's seated, taking pictures, and hopefully focusing on him, and I'll step aside. And he has two children, he was married in 1995. How many years is that, Brian?
Twenty-one.
Twenty, good answer. I knew you could do it. Quickly, good job. Yeah, he has two children, Alyssa, who's with us this afternoon, and she attends Cal State University of Fresno, as my daughter does. Brayden, who, like his father, chose a life of public service. He's currently serving in the 82nd Airborne Division, United States Army, in Germany. And let's give him a round of applause for his public service, for your son. And all the fine work that Detective Hance has done, one comes to mind to me as a true tragedy, but it reflects on the character of this man. And we're familiar with the collision where the 23-year-old brilliant nursing student was killed, passed by one of the worst offenders in our community, and that's a drunk driver. So this DUI individual struck the vehicle and unfortunately took her life. The grieving father, in the course of the investigation, through his communications with Brian, if I may call you Brian, created a relationship and wrote a letter to the chief. That was a very moving piece that struck everybody's heart. Not only that, but Detective Hance brought this individual to justice and helped their family through their worst hour ever. So I wanted to make sure I got this right. He was honored several weeks ago by Mothers Against Drunk Drivers as the mad hero for 2016. What an honor. Let's have a round of applause. Thank you. And you know, when he does his work, he's so thorough, and being a former prosecutor, I appreciate that. He's very thorough and puts that case together so the maximum term can be imposed on these violators that take the life of the innocent in our community. So this proclamation is a fitting tribute to you. You work quietly every day with your colleagues, and it's our opportunity to bring you to the forefront and give you that recognition. I hear a chuckle back here, so Captain Hall have a word to say, I'm sure. So let's let Chief have a moment.
Thank you, Councilmember. It is an honor to be recognized or to have Brian recognized on behalf of the Fresno Police Department. It is a prestigious award to recognize somebody by Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Brian is the individual that handles our fatal collisions in the department. So he's like a homicide investigator, gets called out in the middle of the night, does all the physical evidence, he processes that scene, and spends countless hours putting that case together, a case that's going to be highly scrutinized in the civil arena, in the criminal arena. And he gets called away from night many times at 1:00 in the morning, so often that his wife doesn't even know when he leaves the house in the morning. I guess it happens so frequently. But truly, an individual that is absolutely dedicated, professional, and it is a credit to have him to the Fresno Police Department. Thank you, Brian.
All right. And the man of the hour, we'll give you an opportunity to say a few words, and if you'd like to bring your family down here, we could do that as well.
Come on down. Come on down. We'll get some photo ops.
Well, I'm very honored to be here and somewhat humbled to be here. I'm a guy who just likes to do my job and go home. But thank you, Chief, for letting me do the job I do, and thank you, Captain Hall and Lieutenant Tucker and my partner there, Sergeant Jabo. Thanks for everything you guys have done for me, and I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you like to read the proclamation, Madam Clerk? Well, rather than, in the interest of time, if we read this, I'm just showing you, there's so many accomplishments by this individual. He's an amazing person, as we know, and I think we'd probably be here half a day if we wanted to go into all your details. But just so you know, we appreciate you, we appreciate your family. And what's that quote, Chief, you always say about the men and their families?
Although it's the officer that wears the badge, it's the family that carries the weight of that badge. So thank you.
We appreciate all you do for our community, especially for we as council members. Okay, next is Public Utilities. Thank you, guys, for being so patient. This is a 10 o'clock item. It's a hearing to discuss and consider adoption of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. When we finish that, we'll do our workshop. I know you guys have talked to all of us individually, and if you have a Reader's Digest version of the presentation, that'd be great, or just answer questions, or both.
Good morning, afternoon.
Thank you, Council President, City Council, Mike Carbo Hall, Department of Public Utilities. And today, we are going to conduct a public hearing and ask you to consider adopting the City of Fresno 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Before we get into the public hearing, we have a brief presentation to give you an overview of the Urban Water Management Planning Act requirements, a little bit about the components in the city's urban water management plan, what are the actions that were completed to date, and what are the next steps. All right, so the Urban Water Management Plan is a long-range water planning document. It's a planning tool for the city to communicate to the state that we have adequate availability and reliability of water supplies to meet current and future demands, and serves as a foundational water planning document for future water supply assessments. It's required by urban water suppliers serving more than 3,000 customers or supplying over 3,000 acre feet in a year. Must be updated every five years, and is required to remain eligible for state grants and loans, such as the State Revolving Fund, low-interest loans that are financing the recharge Fresno on recycled water projects. So the City of Fresno currently serves approximately 133,000 connections and provides, provided 111,000 acre feet of municipal water in 2015, and that's with the state mandated emergency conservation regulation. So the new requirements are to show that the city met prior adopted 2015 water use targets. It gives us a chance to update and revise the 2020 water use targets. We must qualify and report on distribution system losses, as well as submit the report by 2015, the 2015 plan by July 1st. So with your support today, we will stay on schedule to meet that deadline. Key components include the water demand projections for per capita water use targets. We've got a slide on that in just a minute. It talks about our supply and availability with our surface water, groundwater, and recycled water supplies. Compare our supply and demand, just to look for potential shortfalls going forward. Update our water shortage contingency plan, and continue to focus on demand management and water conservation measures to ensure that we meet our per capita use targets. So the 2010 plan established a baseline period of 1999 to 2008. The baseline per capita water use was calculated at 309 gallons per minute, I mean gallons per capita per day. The 2015 target was set at 278 gallons per capita per day. If you look to the right side of the chart, you'll see that we met that target, the 2015 target back in 2010, and we stayed below that target for the five-year period. Looking to 2020, we've set the target at 247 gallons per capita per day. In 2014, the demand was 223 gallons per capita per day. Last year, it dropped to 190. We've got a note at the bottom of there that indicates that there were substantial conservation due to the regulation that was required by the state last year. So the 2014 number is probably the most accurate when projecting forward. 2014 water demand was about 130,000 acre feet, did drop to 111 last year with the emergency conservation. But projecting water demands forward with conservation goals for each customer class, and being conservative with our approach, we are looking at 158,000 acre feet demand in 2020 with rising population. That's estimated to grow to 195,000 by year 2040. Projected water supplies to meet those demands include expansion of treatment capacity. The southeast surface water treatment facility is under construction, and the plan does consider future expansion of the northeast surface water treatment facility. That will decrease our reliance on groundwater, make us more sustainable with our groundwater operations, and enable us to be in full compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act that was enacted with the sustained drought conditions. And of course, we are moving forward with recycled water and expect to be delivering that to some of our customers by the end of the year. So projected supply versus demand, you can see that historically, we've been a groundwater-based system with surface water meeting about 15% of our demand going forward. In 2020, the plan anticipates that the southeast surface water facility will be brought online at 54 million gallons a day. We will re-rate that facility to 80 million gallons a day by 2025, and the plan considers expansion of the northeast surface water treatment facility by 2035. Altogether, that will continue to decrease our reliance on groundwater supplies going forward. In terms of water shortage, the city does have a water shortage contingency plan that was updated in the 2015 plan. That's the city's response to sustained droughts and emergency events. It's a four-stage water use reduction plan, triggers based upon supply availability and reliability. We are currently in stage two of the water shortage contingency plan, as that has allowed the city to be successful in meeting the state's mandated water conservation last Residential watering metering program, this was a change from the 2010 plan where residential customers were not yet metered. In the 2015 plan, it recognizes that about 112,000 meters were installed for residential customers, and they are all being built on a volumetric rate. We will continue our conservation BMPs, including residential water surveys and public outreach and education programs, and our rebate programs have been enhanced with the Water Conservation Act. Actions completed to date, we have prepared the draft in May of 2016. We're in a 30-day comment period. Copies were made available at various city offices, the county library, as well as on the website, and we did two rounds of public noticing in the Fresno Bee and in the Business Journal. We will conduct a hearing today, ask you for your consideration and adopting of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, and we will submit the final draft to DWR. We will provide copies to other local agencies, as well as make the final draft available on the city website and the local library. I'll be available for any questions you have, as well as Brock Bookie with Provo and Pritchard, and I'll ask you to start the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaking of public hearing, is anyone from the public that wish to address this issue? Please come forward. Tommy, I thought I saw you coming forward. You did a great job. Seeing none, we will bring up here, Steve Van Dow, you're up, Member Van Dow.
Council President, motion to approve.
Motion by Member Van Dow, seconded by Member Baines, Member Van. So we're approving the 2015 plan, right? Okay, all right, and that's okay, say, good job. Okay, the proverbial screen is clear, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next is our 11:00 AM workshop regarding an update on high-speed rail. And I see we have quite a few people here today to make that presentation. Welcome. Look forward to your workshop. As you set up, Member Baines would like a few moments.
Yeah, really, really brief, and thanks, Council President. I just wanted to set the stage for the reason we're having the workshop. It's, I asked Council President if he would indulge me in putting this on the calendar, and he agreed, so thank you, Council President. I want to certainly thank Dan Richard for coming all the way from Sacramento?
Bay Area.
Bay Area. I know Jeff Morales came from Sacramento. We appreciate it. I know Diana Gomez travels up and down the state, but she tries to reside here in Fresno. So I want to thank you guys for your time and being patient with us today. But the reason I wanted to make a couple opening comments is, the idea of this is really to give the authority, and Dan Richard being the Chair, Chairman of the Board, Jeff Morales being the CEO, to give Fresno's an opportunity to hear directly from the leadership of the High-Speed Rail Authority what's true and what's not true. I think that sometimes there are a lot of myths that are put forth. I can't remember any time, Council President, when we, as a collective body, have had the opportunity to talk to you all about them directly. So we appreciate your time coming to answer our questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. That was an excellent introduction. The floor is yours.
Council President Capriolio, honorable members of the Fresno City Council, I am Dan Richard. I'm the Chair of the Board of the California High-Speed Rail Authority. With me is our Chief Executive Officer, Jeff Morales. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come for you today. Appreciate Council Member Baines' introductory remarks. What we'd like to do today is to give you an update on the program, both as it relates to the broader program objectives for the state of California, and then my colleague, Mr. Morales, is going to talk about specifically what's going on here in Fresno and what the import is for your community, both in the short term and the long term. I am pleased to be back in Fresno today. I had the opportunity this morning to stand at the Twalome Street Bridge, where the last girder was being put in place for the overcrossing to replace the existing bridge, and with a higher bridge that will allow... I can't remember any time, Council President, when we, as a collective body, have had the opportunity to talk to you all about them directly, so we appreciate your time coming to answer our questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. That was an excellent introduction. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Council President Capriolio, Honorable Members of the Fresno City Council, I am Dan Richard. I'm the Chair of the Board of the California High-Speed Rail Authority. With me is our Chief Executive Officer, Jeff Morales. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come for you today. Appreciate Councilmember Baines' introductory remarks. What we'd like to do today is to give you an update on the program, both as it relates to the broader program objectives for the State of California, and then my colleague, Mr. Morales, is going to talk about specifically what's going on here in Fresno and what the import is for your community, both in the short term and the long term. I am pleased to be back in Fresno today. I had the opportunity this morning to stand at the Twalomee Street Bridge, where the last girder was being put in place for the overcrossing to replace the existing bridge and with a higher bridge that will allow the high-speed rail trains to go underneath of it. We do see this as transforming downtown Fresno in very, very positive ways in the short term and the long term. But let me start by giving you a quick update about the program in general, and as we look at this for the State of California. And by the way, we're going to try to move through this quickly because we'd really like to afford you the opportunity to ask us as many questions as possible. We'd like to have this engagement, and as Councilmember Baines said, there are certain things that are myths that are out there, but we'd really like to get all of your questions, no matter how skeptical or tough they may be. I think that's an important part of the dialogue with this community, and I know that this is a controversial program in some quarters, and some people have doubts, and we're happy to engage with you on those as well. It's just part of our democracy to understand and try to find common ground among various points of view. We do have a high-speed rail program because the legislature in this state created the High-Speed Rail Authority in 1996, and the voters of California approved a bond measure in 2008 that would provide up to $9 billion as partial payment -- no, thank you. Up to $9 billion as partial payment for the initial part of the system construction. And in 2012, the California Legislature voted to appropriate some of those bond funds, as well as other funds, not just for California High-Speed Rail, but for a much broader statewide rail modernization program. And that's one of the points that we like to keep reminding people, is that this is part of a rail renaissance in California. You may have just seen that Amtrak's increasing their San Joaquin service because of the high ridership here in the Central Valley. Even though we're a car culture in California, trains are enormously popular and growing more so. So, we are sort of the backbone of a new rail system across the state, including regional rail, Amtrak, ACE Train, improvements to BART, improvements to the systems in Southern California. Recently, we enacted, adopted, I should say, our 2016 business plan, and there were really three driving forces in that business plan. The first was to realize that part of our biggest problem here is, even though we're building, even though we have billions of dollars of construction going right now in the Central Valley, high-speed rail still seems like something that is beyond the imagination of most people to actually think that it's going to happen. For a number of reasons, our business plan is predicated on finding a way to initiate that first part of high-speed rail service as soon as possible. And what we did, which caused some consternation south of the Tachys, was to say that with the available dollars that we could see, the way to get the first link going from the Central Valley was to connect it to the Silicon Valley, that with the dollars that we see available to us, we can actually do that, and we can have that in place within nine years. We can have trains going between Fresno, south of Fresno, as far down as Kern County, through Fresno, through the Central Valley, to connect through San Jose and all the way into San Francisco. And a trip from Fresno to San Jose on that kind of high-speed rail service would be about 45 minutes, and we can get you basically in a little over an hour to downtown San Francisco.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are we -- is that you're going to permit us to ask questions as they come up, or wait until the end?
I'm happy to accommodate however you'd like to do it. I wanted to get through things quickly, but I'm happy to take your question now.
But they're just, I mean...
Remember, if you would just punch up, Member Brandau's already punched up, so I don't know if you would defer to...
Do you want to do this more as a parliamentary procedure thing with Robert's rules, or do you want to just be able to interact with the presenter?
We can do Q and A. I just wanted to give Member Brandau his first opportunity.
But if he has a spontaneous question, that's not a big deal to me.
The question is, it was Central Valley to San Jose in 45 minutes? Just, it's moving at what speed?
Yeah. First of all, let me just ask Jeff, did I get that right, or is it 50 minutes? What do we want to say?
Approximately 45.
Yeah, approximately 45. So, basically, the trains will be moving up to speeds of, in excess of 200 miles an hour.
And is that just right off the bat, or that's going to take a decade or so until they're up to that speed?
No, no, no. This is when we open. We would be opening with fully capable high-speed train service.
And what is a ticket from Fresno to San Jose estimated to be, as we stand here right now?
I'll give you my best guess on that. In our business models, we've looked at revenue pricing, and we've assumed that for, say, a San Francisco to LA trip, we have to beat the discounted airfare. So, for that trip, we would look at about $83 if it were up and running in today's dollars. So, I would say probably about half of that. But the real answer, Councilmember, is that we're not going to operate these trains. We're going to give a concession to a private sector operator. That operator is going to basically set the fares, so there will be things, discounted fares for multiple-ticket purchases, for seniors, all the things that people do in kind of the airline fare model for short-term, long-term, et cetera. And the market will set that when the private sector operator comes in. But I would say it's got to be competitive. Of course, Fresno to San Francisco is pretty expensive airfare, but I think that what you'll see is something that's probably on the order of, you know, 40 bucks as a average-type number.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did Councilmember Brandau want to jump in now?
No, I'm just going to wait till the end. Yeah.
Okay. So, there are three main drivers to our business plan. The first is to get actual, real, high-speed rail service, as Councilmember Olivia just suggested, up and running as soon as possible, and we do see that connection between the Central Valley and the Silicon Valley, not just critical for what we're doing, but also critical for the economic well-being of both regions. And there's been a lot of excitement in Silicon Valley about that connection to the Central Valley. Secondly, we are making strategic concurrent investments around the state, so even though our emphasis and our sequence will be to connect north first, we're making parallel investments in Southern California that pave the way for high-speed rail, that are very important between Burbank and Anaheim to improve that corridor. There'll be immediate benefits there, and we'll be able to build on that as we build out full high-speed rail. And the third is to clear the -- to gain environmental clearance, finish the environmental clearance process across the entire system, basically within the next year and a half, so that as opportunistic funds flow in, whether they're from public dollars or private dollars, we're ready to go because we've got the environmental clearance in place. So, those are the three drivers behind what we're trying to do right now. This map shows you the system, 520 miles in the first phase from Anaheim through LA, up through the Central Valley, and into San Francisco. And one of the nice things about our recent business plan, because we are really building an enterprise here, not just a physical train set, is that we've found ways, looking at the initial construction estimates, to show that the cost is actually going to be lower. One of the things that we do is we state our costs, not just in current-year dollars, which is how most capital programs express their cost, but in fully inflated cost to complete. So, what we're saying here is, over the next 15 years, what looked like fully inflated $68 billion is now basically dropped to about $62 billion plus a $2 billion increased investment we're making in Southern California. So, the cost of the system has come down in our estimates, and fortunately, our first construction contracts are all coming in significantly below our engineers' estimates. So, we're making progress on holding the cost down, which is very, very important for all Californians. I mentioned the Silicon Valley to Central Valley line. We can have that completed in 2024, operational in 2025. $20 billion to do that. With the available sources of money we have, federal stimulus money, state money, state cap and trade money, et cetera, we believe the dollars are there to complete that. I mentioned the parallel investments that we're making from Burbank down to Anaheim. That'll be about $4 billion in the near term of work in Southern California. And we also are going to be seeking, and some of this is from our federal government, for an additional $2.9 billion. We can connect from south of Hanford all the way down into Bakersfield and enhance the connection between San Jose and San Francisco. Now, why should they help us with that investment? Because that would generate $4.7 billion of additional revenue, which ultimately means an additional $4.7 billion of private sector money that can be generated from that. So, it's a true public-private partnership opportunity, and I'll get into that more in one second. This is Phase 1. We can have the full Phase 1, so that you can connect either to San Francisco in 2025 or hopefully to LA by 2029. I know those dates may seem like a long way away, but when you look back to what you were doing seven or eight years ago and think about that, it may not be quite as far in the future as it would first appear. Before I turn it over to Mr. Morales to talk about the construction in the Central Valley and what's important here, I'd like to just say one thing about -- is that my slide or yours? Oh, that's mine. Okay. I think I jumped too far. I -- oh, yeah. So, just in the near term, what does this mean for Fresno? Well, Jeff's going to talk about the construction jobs and the work that's going on. There's some very impressive numbers. There are even more impressive anecdotal stories about people who were on the Cal Works Program, who were leaning against the social safety net, drawing funds from our community to support them, who are now working, paying payroll taxes, buying things, paying sales taxes, buying homes, people who were previously homeless. We've got very targeted programs for local employment, because our view is these dollars need to be recycled back into the communities where this work is beginning, and we think there's some very good stories about that. And Jeff will talk about our commitment to small business, our commitment to local hires, our commitment to training, to putting veterans to work, and so forth. In the long term, I fully believe, having traveled up and down this state, that we will see long-term benefits for having started here in the Central Valley. I'm a Northern California guy. I never spent much time in the Central Valley before the governor put me in the position that I'm in now. But it's my impression that we, as a state, have under-invested and been willing to leave behind certain areas of the state. A big part of this program is to tie our whole state together, to tie economic regions together, to tie people together. And the opportunity to have that connectivity is very important. Studies have shown that where high-speed rail has been built around the world, that that connectivity has led to huge economic uplift at both ends of the system. And so, we see long-term economic possibilities here. And I was just making the point to somebody the other day, Intel, which is based in Silicon Valley, has a major production facility in Folsom. It's hard as the dickens to get up to Folsom now. There's been an 800% increase in traffic on Highway 80. Why is Intel not putting production facilities here in Fresno, or in Merced, or in Madera? And there may be multiple reasons for that, but I think this kind of connectivity can help make a second look possible for those types of things. We see the opportunity for transit-oriented development that has occurred everywhere in the world around high-speed rail, has tremendous long-term benefits for communities. And when the system is up and running, the need for maintenance facilities, for parts production, for testing, for ongoing support is going to be enormous, and there'll be a spin-off of all kinds of businesses to support high-speed rail with that. We are very pleased to see recently, University of Pacific did a report, and they pointed specifically to high-speed rail as one of the reasons that, for the first time in this region in anybody's memory, unemployment has fallen into single digits. We're having a hard time getting welders and truck drivers. When's the last time you heard of labor shortages here? So, we see those benefits. And finally, I just want to say this before I hand it over to Mr. Morales. There's always a question about the private sector on this. Our belief is that 1/3 of that $64 billion will come from private sector investment. We have had extensive conversations with both domestic infrastructure investors, as well as from sovereign companies from around the world. Japan, Spain, China, South Korea, Taiwan, France, Germany, all want to be part of this. Now, people often say, "Well, why aren't they now? Where is that money now?" And the answer is that the right time for private sector investment is after we commit public dollars to build that first piece, because if you ask them to come in today, they will have to put a price on that risk. This is the first high-speed rail system in America. No one knows for sure whether we'll hit the ridership targets that we project. We believe them, but the proof will be in the pudding, once we're up and running. And once that happens, though, they're ready. They're eager. They want to do it. We're not allowed to give them a subsidy, so we can't give them any safety net. Their only safety net is to look at some experience. Once that's there, the private sector dollars, we're very confident, and they've told us that they will be there. And I'll just end with this. Some of you on this council are free-market conservatives. I did happen to look in your direction, Mr. Brandau, but -- and what I want to say to you is that we are not building a public railroad. Our view is that the way that this will be successful is that we will auction the rights to the private sector to come in and run this. They will buy the trains, they will set the fares, they will collect the fares, they will do the O and M. They will look to make a profit off of that. Everywhere around the world where high-speed rail has been built, once the capital costs have been put in the ground, they're all self-sustaining on an operating basis. Our numbers show that there's up to $20 billion of net present value for the private sector to be able to harvest from running this system. We will ask them to write us that check to help us build the second leg down to LA, and it will be run, not as a public enterprise, not by public employees, but by private sector people who will bring their genius, their efficiency, their innovation. And this is a true example of what I believe is the right way to build infrastructure in our country. The public sector steps in when the risk is highest at the front end, brings in the private sector to bring that innovation and efficiency as we move forward. And so, I hope that even though there have been doubts expressed by some, that we can at least find a way to look at this. This is under construction. We are building it. We think it's going to be transformative for your community, and we think it's going to be a great opportunity to bring investment in innovation, not just to Fresno, but to the Central Valley in general. I apologize for taking so long on that. Mr. Morales has some very important things to add, and then we're here to answer any and all of your questions, and I thank you so much for the privilege of being able to present to you today. Thank you for the chance to be here. As Dan said, I'm going to talk specifically about what we have underway and what that means for Fresno. And the exciting thing is, we are underway. Things are happening out there. You can see I'm just a few blocks away here. We actually have, you know, close to 120 miles worth of work underway. $3 billion of investment. This is part of the largest infrastructure program in the country, some say in the world. And building on some of the points that Chairman Richard just made, in terms of the private sector engagement, we are engaging the creativity and the ingenuity of the private sector from the get-go on this. All of our work is being let, to date, through design-build contracts, meaning that we bring in the team, they bring innovation to the project. Some of the reason that the cost has come down is that innovation. They've come in and found better ways to do things than our engineers had planned, and we're incorporating that now into our plans. We have three major design-build packages. The first one, that's right here in Fresno, is underway 29 miles, or well, 32 now, because we've added some to it, and then we continue down the valley. We've been very pleased with the level of interest and competition we've received on those. World-class teams coming together to build the first high-speed rail system, and in fact, two of the teams have -- are led by Spanish firms, combined with American firms. The first contract is California-based companies actually building it. But again, it underscores the level of interest in helping deliver this program from people who have done this around the world. I've had the opportunity over my career to work on big infrastructure programs, not just here in California, but around the country and around the world, and I have to say, it's a unique circumstance when you have $3 billion worth of work underway and people don't believe it's really happening. And it's a challenge we face, so we're working hard to get the information out to people so that they see what's happening. One of the biggest challenges I think we've faced and will continue to face in this program is the length of time it takes to go from concept out to reality. When you're talking about a 500-mile initial operating system between LA and San Francisco, that doesn't happen overnight, and it's hard to keep people engaged.
that doesn't happen overnight, and it's hard to keep people engaged over the long term. And so, it's important to get the information out, so we're using a variety of means, and this is one of them, just quickly. How are they supposed to be set? One of the exciting things about those workers you saw, they're local workers, and most of them are from local companies, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. But here you see some of the sites. We have seven active sites underway, and more coming online this summer. All of that representing major projects, major progress, major investment in this community, and major involvement by local firms. Over the next few months, you'll see additional work underway, and these are examples of some of them. And we're working constantly with our contractor to identify new work, be able to move things along, and see progress underway. So, you will see by this summer, you won't be able to go much of anywhere around the city, around the county, and heading down into the valley without seeing visible signs of high-speed rail being built here in the Central Valley. I want to talk about a benefit to Fresno specifically, because one of the advantages, frankly, for Fresno being right here at the heart of this, is that the city of Fresno is going to benefit tremendously, not just from the long-term advantages of the connectivity and the improved travel, but through this program, we're making investments, over half a billion dollars into the city's infrastructure. Things that are happening because they have to be done as part of our project. And we've worked—I'll talk about it more later, but I really want to commend the city, Bruce Rudd and his team, for the cooperation. There are a lot of impacts when you're building something this big, but there are also a lot of benefits that can come out of it, and we've worked very hard to see that. And throughout the city, what you'll see happening are things like grade crossings being eliminated. Every major grade crossing in the city is going to be eliminated as part of this program. That has huge implications beyond high-speed rail, in terms of traffic, in terms of air quality, quality of life, fire, life, and safety, all of those things. One example is the Shaw Avenue Crossing, and I'll give you a quick sense of what it's like today and then what it's going to look like. What you'll see over time is completely grade-separated, meaning not just passenger rail, but the freight rail will be separated from traffic. Traffic won't be backing up, won't have to wait. And that's also then brand-new infrastructure for the city. And when we look at something like that, when we look at the Tuolumne Avenue Bridge—Bruce, I don't know if you can tell me how old the Tuolumne Avenue Bridge was, but it's going to be brand-new, which means, from a maintenance perspective also, you're getting a brand-new piece of major infrastructure for the city, which has real positive benefits in terms of the city's maintenance budget and efforts. So, we're really proud of what that means for Fresno, and it's part of the point we wanted to make sure we made here today with you, is the benefits that are accruing to the city through the investment. You can't build anything of any size without having some impacts, whether it's a road, a building, and certainly a rail line, and we recognize that. And so, one of the things that we have worked very hard with the city, with the county, and I really want to note the partnership of the Fresno Economic Development Corporation and Leanne Eager, to make sure that as we impact businesses, residences, that we do everything we possibly can to not only minimize those impacts, but wherever possible, to actually make things better. And we've had great success in this. Early on, the mayor identified, you know, and prioritized, wanted to make sure that the city did not lose businesses because of this, if they were going to be impacted. We've worked very hard to make that happen, and we've retained, in fact, of all the businesses, 90% have stayed in the city. The remaining ones—of the ones that have left, I think two have retired just altogether, and one moved out of state. So, I mean, we're not seeing a business dislocation, which is very important to the city, very important to us. And we've got some great success stories. You know, everyone's familiar with Cosmos, which I understand—I believe tomorrow is its last day in its current location. They're going to open up in the new location in two weeks. They're going from—it's a great old location, a lot of history, and, you know, early on, the owner was very upset about the prospect of being impacted. I think a lot of people were. We worked with him diligently through the EDC with the city. And their being—the new location now, which again will be opening, is now downtown. They'll have foot traffic, you know, the federal building, the courthouse, others, that people have never had access on a pedestrian basis. They're very excited about what it's going to bring. That's just one example of what we've been able to do by working in partnership. We're seeing other examples. OK Produce, hugely important company that was high on the priority list. They've expanded their staff by a few dozen because, through our efforts with them, we've relocated to a larger facility that can handle growth, and they're growing. And those are jobs now—they don't count against our ledger, but those are jobs and income that are coming into the city of Fresno, and we have many other examples of that happening. Small business, one of the things that we're doing also is that our board has adopted an aggressive goal of 30% small business participation in all of our contracts. And we've hit that on every contract, including these big ones. And when you talk about, you know, 30% of $3 billion, that's a big number. And one of the reasons that small business is so important is that, almost by definition, small business means local business. And so—and that's what we're seeing happen on this program. We've got tremendous local participation. In the video, you saw, for instance, some of the demolition work being done. That's by Croker, a woman-owned Fresno business who's doing that demolition work, biggest contracts they've ever had. The hazardous waste abatement contract for those structures that we're acquiring is being done by a local disabled veteran business, Catch Environmental. Dan referred—that's one of the companies. They've hired—I think it's 21 people off of the Cal Works program, and they're now working, earning a salary, earning a living, you know, contributing to the economy instead of being on public assistance. We've got many, many stories of that local benefit happening here in Fresno, and we're really proud of that and doing everything we can to make sure that we're investing in the communities that we are working in as we're going through the program. And that extends to jobs, individual jobs, too. We've worked very closely with the Fresno Workforce Investment Board. We've worked with Councilman Baines and others to also make sure that we're developing a pipeline of workers through pre-apprenticeship programs and early-training programs so that local people can take the jobs as they come on. I say all the time that, when you think about the magnitude of this program, and ultimately, we're talking about $6 billion of investment in the Central Valley, everybody in the valley is going to know someone working on this project, one way or another, whether it's for construction, supply services, whatever it may be. That's the sort of impact that this—an investment like this has, that infrastructure investment has. Finally, I want to—I do want to talk about the partnership with the city because it's been absolutely critical. This could have gotten off very badly, frankly, with, again, this kind of level of investment, but we've worked very hard in partnership, and we've been committed to it, and the city has been committed to working with us as a partner, both to protect the city's interests, but also then to gain advantages and make sure the city benefits. And that's come, again, in the form of dealing with relocations and impacts of businesses, of residences, working to make sure that the infrastructure fits in with the city's look and the feel and the design standards of the city. Some of the local improvements that I've spoken to, we've made modifications in some cases to reflect what the city wanted for local access and other things, and because of our partnership, we've been able to do that. And we're very proud of that and very pleased with it, and again, I want to acknowledge Bruce Rudd, Scott Mosher from Public Works, and Wilma and others for the great work on partnership, because it's genuinely been a two-way street on that, and we're committed to maintaining that. So, with that, happy to take any other questions.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that presentation. Member Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. So, I just—I probably don't have as many questions as everybody's expecting, but I wanted to talk a little bit about—and by the way, I love all of this stuff. I mean, you guys are doing a good job in what you're doing. A lot of people will probably be surprised that I'd say that.
Can I—can we quote that? You love all of this stuff?
Leanne's doing a fantastic job retaining businesses in the city of Fresno. I agree with a lot of stuff like that, and so—but I do want to talk about—you know, so the overall—one of my worries over the years has been, you know, we build up the impact of Fresno, but then the ability of the project to sustain itself to completion might leave Fresno and might leave us in the lurch, right? And we're building around a game plan, and if it doesn't come to fruition—I know Councilman Baines promises me, swears to me, that it's coming to fruition, and I'm sure you agree with him. But I do want to talk a little bit about the bigger picture overall funding for a little—for a little bit. Couple questions. And so, I've tried to examine what your recent funding streams and budget is, since you made the change to go north rather than go south. And it's—just tell me if I've got this right. It's $9.95 billion in Prop 1A bonds, and then a projected $5.3 billion of cap and trade through 2020, another $5.2 billion in long-term cap and trade, and $3.2 billion in federal funding. Something like that?
That's right.
And it comes right up over $20 billion?
It comes to about $20 billion, right.
Comes to about $20 billion. And for that $20 billion, you can build from here to San Jose?
To San Francisco.
To San Francisco.
Yeah. And if I might, I hope I was hearing the question behind—the question that your colleague, Councilmember Olivier, was asking, when he asked, "Does this mean the trains are going to be at full speed?" One of the reasons we run into this question, and I'm going right back to your thing, is that of the 520 miles in the first phase, about 85% to 90% of it will be brand-new, virgin, fully-separated, high-speed-rail, dedicated track. In the urban areas, at the ends, what we have realized is that to build that type of totally separated, dedicated track adds about $20 billion to the project for those last pieces. And so, that's when we said, "Well"—and actually, people encouraged us to look at it—"Could we find a way to use, as we're coming into the urban areas, the existing track structure and blend our service, putting in some passing tracks and doing things like that, sharing the corridor with Caltrain?" People have thought that that meant that we would be limited to like 79 miles an hour. And at first, we may have some speed limitations until we get all the grade separations and so forth done. So, that's, I think, given rise to this question about, "Are you really opening high-speed rail, or is this just a faster Amtrak?"
Right.
And the answer is that from here, all the way into San Jose, will be fully dedicated, completely separated, high-speed-rail-only track. No freight trains, no Amtrak trains, no nothing but high-speed rail. When we get from San Jose into San Francisco, we'll be sharing the corridor. Our speeds will be limited until we build all that up, and ultimately, we will be able to go almost as—exactly as fast as was planned if we had our own track there.
Oh, interesting.
So—because the real issue is, as you come into Paris or something on their high-speed rail, you're not going 200 miles an hour as you get within a few miles of the city. And so, the real interest—the real limitation is track geometry. If you go back and look at the 2008 business plan, before anybody talked about sharing corridors, they'll—it showed 120 miles an hour between San Jose and San Francisco. We'll be running about 115 to 120 miles an hour in that corridor, blended service. But from here to San Jose, you go like a rocket, and these trains, we think, will be among the fastest, if not the fastest, high-speed-rail trains in the world, averaging 200 miles an hour, hitting 220 in some stretches. So, when I say that $20 billion, will build us to San Jose for sure, and more limited service to San Francisco. As we make some additional investments, we'll bring that San Jose-to-San Francisco service up. So, we will build it up there.
Is it San Jose where we intercept Caltrain, and Caltrain takes over?
Yes. In San Jose, it's going to be amazing. You will intercept—Caltrain doesn't take over. You can switch to Caltrain if you want to do a local stop, but our negotiations with Caltrain are that we're paying for half the cost of electrifying that whole line. They'll switch their trains from diesel to electric. They'll run Caltrain service. We will mesh the service. There'll be 10 trains an hour. Some of them will be high-speed rail, some will be Caltrain. You will not need to get off a high-speed rail train and get onto Caltrain to get into San Francisco. We'll share the corridor, but you will have a one-seat ride from Fresno into San Francisco.
And the speeds will be there as you do the grade separations?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, for the part from here to San Jose, on the day we open, we'll be able to hit our maximum speeds. We'd like to think that the investments from San Jose to San Francisco will catch up on that time, but even if they don't, we will be building up to full high-speed rail service as we get to San Francisco.
Okay, cool, cool. So, we just hit a little glitch with the cap-and-trade proceeds, right? It was like 2% of projection. And in last month, Dan Walters—he predicted this cap-and-trade shortfall, and he said that the legislative authority for cap-and-trade dies in 2020. You guys have—you guys have that much money projected for $5.3 billion through 2020, which just hit a snag, they're only getting 2%. And then, you guys are also projecting another $5.2 billion for long-term cap-and-trade, where the legislation stops in twammin'. It looks to me like the Chamber of Commerce is suing as cap-and-trade is an illegal tax. Are you guys at all nervous about this cap-and-trade funding?
Well, Councilmember, if I looked at you and said that there's nothing about this program that makes me nervous, you'd think I was the biggest fool on the planet.
Well, thank you. Can you say that again for Councilman Baines?
Well, what I'd like to do, sir, is give you two answers to your question, both of which I intend to be very specific answers to your question. And if you'll permit me, let me just take the second one first. I've been a small-business owner. I've started a couple of small businesses. One of them didn't get off the ground. We started in September 2008. You may recall that was not a good time to be starting businesses. But the other is still going 30 years later. It's on its fifth-generation of leadership. I've written checks to people. I've laid awake at night wondering how the heck we were going to get through the next—I mean, I've done that. And part of being a small-business owner is you do think a lot about the "what-if" downsides. And so, what I want to say to you is that while we are planning on certain things, yes, we are looking at, "Well, what if this doesn't come through? What if the downside happens?" So, on that, we said to the legislature in 2012, "Look, no, we don't have all the money to build the $64 billion right now. We see the sequence coming." The Bond Act said you can build in segments, but each segment has to have independent utility. So, let me start with the worst thing that could happen to us, that there's nothing more than the $6 billion that we have in the Central Valley right now. And we looked at the legislature and said, "You know, with every piece of this that we build, the risk will go down, but the beginning is going to be the very riskiest piece, because if we can't do any more than that, can we show you that we're still providing some value?" So, yeah, we took a risk, and the legislature took a risk, that there might be a long-term disruption in the funding for this program. So, let's look right into the maw of what happens if all we've got is the $6 billion that Mr. Morales talked about here. You will have 55 grade separations up and down the Central Valley. You will have 130 miles of fresh track that could be used by the existing Amtrak service to cut more than an hour, maybe an hour and 15 minutes, off of the time up and down the valley to go to Sacramento and to Oakland. Now, would we knowingly spend $6 billion just to do that? No, but we—our risk analysis was, even if we get disrupted, and this is all we have for a while, there's something of great value here in terms of transportation networks, in terms of the grade separations, public safety, investment, that will have independent utility until we can come along and put the other pieces together. I just wanted to kind of go to the worst-case, worst-case first, and now come back to your question. On the cap-and-trade, Assembly Bill 32 that was passed by the legislature in 2006 committed California to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It gave the state Air Resources Board two tools. One is probably your least favorite, command and control, specific regulation. One is probably your least favorite, command and control, specific regulation, thou shalt reduce your emissions to this. The other, at the request of many people in industry, was a market-based tool called cap and trade. Some people read the legislation as the cap and trade market-based piece would end in 2020. Other people don't say that, but some, there's a dispute over that.
Okay.
If that goes away, what doesn't go away is the AB 32 requirements to reduce carbon emissions, meaning that all that's left is command and control. Even as a Democrat, I don't like that. I think it's the wrong way to go forward. There is a lawsuit, as you said, from the State Chamber of Commerce, and there is this question, which is why a lot of people would like to see the legislature clarify this issue, and we're hoping they do. And here's one of the reasons why they should. Yes, we get funding from cap and trade program. 75% of the cap and trade funding has nothing to do with us. Right now, Transportation Secretary Brian Kelly has $4 billion of requests on his desk for transportation programs around the state. He's got $800 million sitting in, in the pot. Where's that $4 billion? Cap and trade. We heard Councilmember Soria's proposal for affordable housing this morning. There's money in cap and trade for housing, affordable and otherwise, and all kinds of things that benefit this state. So we think that there's ample reason for the legislature having nothing to do with high-speed rail, because some of the folks who need to vote on this don't want to have to stand up and say they support high-speed rail, but they do support transportation improvements. They support housing, they support other things. So our hope is that that gets clarified. If it doesn't get clarified, it'll be decided by the court. If it goes against us, it will put a hole in our funding plans. I couldn't sit here and pretend otherwise, and we will continue to find additional pots of money. What it'll do is slow us down, we'll build the next segment, the next segment. But I apologize for giving you a very long answer, but I wanted to have a serious answer to your question. We look at the worst case, and we look at the disruptions, and we think we can still go forward.
If I could just add one, one point to that. Our plans assume an average annual amount of cap and trade funding over time. What that means is then we allow for fluctuations within a year and then year to year, and what we assume is the average. The auction that came in low got a lot of attention. What hadn't gotten a lot of attention was the three previous auctions, there are four a year, in the year came in well above expectations. And so the net effect for the year was our number came in at over 90%, even with that one down auction of what our average was over time. So just important to keep that in perspective as well.
Yeah, and that's actually good to understand as well. Did, have you guys talked with the governor about what, or what do you, what do the analysts feel happened with that last cap and trade auction?
We have talked about this. It turns out that one of my colleagues on the board, Mike Rossi, is the former vice-chairman of Bank of America. And when he was at Bank of America, he was very active in that bank's participation in the European carbon markets. Mike has had a very influential role in helping people in California understand how these markets work. And his view is that there was some natural fluctuation, but that a big part of this was the uncertainty until this gets resolved by the courts or the legislature.
Oh, okay.
Because if you think about it, if you're Chevron, having to buy cap and trade credits, you're starting to look beyond 2020. Do you really go out and start spending the money for those now, or do you wait six months or a year to see how this happens? And also, the other good news thing, again, for a person who believes in markets, is there was a vibrant secondary market that was coming up. So right now, what we saw was there were enough credits in the secondary market that it could cover these companies that didn't need to go into the primary market, which is where we get our resources from. So I'm not an expert in this, Councilmember, but, but the feeling is that there's always going to be some natural variability, which goes back to Mr. Morales's point, but also we are seeing some effects of uncertainty.
So if you failed to get the two big, so there's two huge chunks?
From cap and trade.
Of your funding stream that are, that are cap and trade, the one through 2020 and the one, then the long-term cap and trade?
Right.
And if you failed to get that, you, you already have a backup plan for?
We're developing backup plans, and I'll just say to you that, in fact, I was just meeting with the, the head of the Department of Finance yesterday on a couple of ideas that I had, which unfortunately, because we've got to work them through the administration, I'm not quite ready to do, but will be happy to come back and talk about them. But we're looking at some backup plans. And then I'll just say this, and I'll, I'll suffer the brickbats, but I think whoever, I think whatever we have, well, both political parties, both presidential candidates are talking about the need for additional infrastructure. And frankly, I think a lot of the dialogue around the stimulus program that President Obama had and so forth made it hard for people to have those conversations. But what we're actually seeing now are bipartisan transportation bills coming out of the Congress. And even for people who've been skeptical of high-speed rail, as we're now in construction, as we have people standing with us saying that they are ready to see private sector investment, as we are able to show that we can close these gaps, you know, I think we'll have a different conversation back there. So we certainly are going to be aggressive in seeking federal funds, we're going to look for other state funds, we're going to continue to try to see if there are ways to accelerate the private sector funds without paying too much of a risk premium for them. We're going to do what businesses do in an uncertain situation, which is to look at every tool that we can find.
Yeah. Dan, are you suggesting, and Jeff, I heard you on the Matty report this last week, so you guys are thinking that there's more funds at, at the federal level?
I guess, I, I would want to be careful to say that we're thinking that there are more funds. I think in the past, the, the majority in Congress reflecting some skepticism about high-speed rail has said, no, we're not going to have, we're not going to give you anything. I would stand on the words I used with you, I think we can have a different conversation with them now. I think we can have a more focused conversation. And when I say, if you give us 2.7 billion, 2.9 billion, we can generate 4.9 billion ultimately in federal funds, that's a different conversation to have with this majority in the Congress than we would have been able to have two years ago. And I'm not going to predict the outcome. I'd like to think we don't get thrown out the door.
Right.
And let me just clarify, none of our plans?
Right now.
Assume new federal dollars coming in. What we're both saying, and what I've said elsewhere is, right, the same thing that Mr. Richard has said, is, right, we think there will be opportunities in the future, but we're not counting on new federal dollars at this point in making any of our plans.
Okay, all right, thank you. Fair enough. So then finally, the private investment part, so listening to you, it seems like the private, you're not even counting on the private investment part until the train, until it's essentially, we provide the track to the point of operations, and that's where private investment comes in?
We think that's the most intelligent way to do it. Can I give you a very quick example? So this is a drinking game at high-speed rail. Every time I say, when I spent 12 years on the Bart board, we built Bart to San Francisco Airport. We had a lot of the same questions, is there going to be the ridership and so forth? We opened that in 2003. It was in the wake of 9/11, there was an economic downturn, the ridership was disappointing for the first few years. If you go back and Google it, you'll see people saying, where's the ridership on, on this? By 2009, the ridership revenues were covering 95% of the cost of operating that, and today they're 105%. Now, if Bart had followed our model and said, we're going to go out and we're going to auction to the private sector the rights to come in and operate this, pay us a check. Well, if you'd done that in 2003, they would have written you a much smaller check than you could get from them today. And so part of this is, even if the private sector was totally banging down the door today, we would ask ourselves as a matter of business principle, how much of a risk premium do we have to pay? So if we can find a way to have public investment for this first leg, we think that will maximize the value of the private sector auction, and, and we just think that's an intelligent way to go.
Makes sense, makes sense to me as well. There's been like recently some rumors about investment by the Chinese. Is, is there any validation to that?
Well, we're open to anyone who wants to come. Mr. Morales and I have both had meetings with the Chinese. We went out last year for just an expression of interest. China, Japan, I mean, I've been invited to go over to Japan, meet with the ministry there, they're very interested in this. Siemens Company has a plant in Sacramento. They have built a whole new facility in anticipation and hope that they get to build our high-speed trains. The French, Koreans, the Spanish, there's just been huge interest from all of them. And I will tell you this, they all want to be the first ones to provide high-speed trains in America. There's going to be enormous competition for this, and I think that's going to be really great. And although we're opening service in 2025, we should be able to start testing trains by 2022. That means up and down the valley, people are going to be testing 200 mile an hour trains. I ask, we're going to have people coming from all over to see that.
Right.
It's going to be pretty interesting.
Yeah, no, it sounds interesting. Do you think that, when would you see the authority go out for RFP for the private investment?
You know, Jeff made a point that even right now, we're doing design-build, we have private investment at all stages. For the private, there'll be some opportunities for private sector financing, and then opportunities later for private sector investment. So the trains, we could end up with a financing package from the private sector. For the actual writing us the check for the rights to operate the system, that'll probably be sometime in the next decade, but I think there'll be intermediate pieces of this. We're talking about bringing on an operator early on. We hope to have that happen within the next couple of years. So you'll see levels of private sector involvement coming. It's started now, but you know, up to different levels of the system.
Well, I really mean, Dan, I really mean the part about where you said?
Auctioning the rights to operate.
A third of the $64 billion project's going to come from private investment. I assume you meant private financing, somebody's going to pony up the dollars to be a part of the?
I think you're probably looking, I think you're probably looking about seven or eight years down the road for that.
Okay. All right. Well, when you mentioned building the trains, you kind of brought me to the last, my last question is really about the heavy maintenance facility? And just from my perspective, you know, even prior to becoming a council member, and then after becoming a council, council member, Fresno, it seems to me like you guys have procrastinated over and over again on making a decision about the heavy maintenance facility. I mean, and I've heard it's going to be, Steve, it's going to be January, Steve, it's going to be June, Steve, it's going to be January, Steve, it's going to be June. Now, it seems to me like we've really dilly-dallyed long enough that Fresno is no longer even in the driver's seat for that heavy maintenance facility. Our land costs more, it's harder to collect the land here in Fresno. From the other examples, I mean, just recently, I sat on the Transportation Authority, and we had a, we had a huge developer that wanted to go out and grab the land for us, and we didn't even allow the process to happen. So I, my understanding is we're behind Madera and Merced now, and I, I'm somewhat upset, I mean, I know I don't look upset, probably as, as I was expected to, but I'm upset that this carrot and stick thing is now backfired on the city of Fresno.
Let me, let me just assure you that that is not the case. We haven't made a decision yet, but Fresno is very vigorously in the running. No one that I know of thinks that Fresno has lost a step. In fact, I think what you're seeing out of Kern County, where they have created a Kern for HMF facility thing is precisely because they're quite afraid that Fresno is way ahead. We have other communities up and down the valley saying, well, wait a minute, you know, we're not getting a stop, can we get this? It's going to be a, two things, it's going to be a vigorous competition, I'm going to let Jeff talk about this because he's on top of it, and it's a fair point that this has not been clarified. It's a fair point. But that is not to the detriment of Fresno at this point. And I would also say, one of the things that's happening is up and down the valley, people are realizing we have a heavy maintenance facility with a lot of jobs, we have light maintenance facilities, we have control centers, there are going to be jobs that we're going to spread up and down the valley. But Fresno has not lost a step on the heavy maintenance facility at this point. Jeff, you probably?
Sure. One of the things that, when, when we came on, Dan and Mike Rossi were appointed to the board, I came on shortly after, was we're dealing with the reality that there was not a clear sense of how to actually deliver this program. And there was the vision, there was the sense of what the end state was, but how you got from A through B, C, D, E, and so on to get the steps was not clearly laid out. The maintenance facility, I think, in some respects, and it started before, was ahead of itself in some regards, in that there wasn't a clear sense of what the decision-making would be. We've clarified the business model now to where our plan, and it's based on international experience and input, is that the manufacturer who will be using that facility should be the one to build the facility and, and have a role in it. And so the reason we haven't rushed into a site selection is we don't want to get out of whack with, with how that procurement will work. So we completely understand the frustration on some people's part of how long it's taken, but I would just say what we're, what we're looking to do now is really make sure that we do this the right way, and that we, we do it in a way that makes the most sense from an overall business perspective, is the most attractive to the private sector to come in and invest, and gets us the best facility at the end of the day. And I would just echo that any notion that anybody's in first or third or fourth place is just not accurate.
Jeff, that's the way everybody else is talking about the selection of that facility, and it puts us at a, so there is a friendly, and sometimes not so friendly, competition for your attention for that facility. And then when that happens, then people get nervous and people start blaming each other, the blame game begins. For instance, you could hypothetically discount the city of Fresno because some crazy councilman puts a billboard up on 99, right? So we get all, right? But, but what you're telling me today, I mean, so in other words?
That's a hypothetical.
There's a blame game happening behind the scenes, there's a blame game happening behind the scenes, but, but there's also this not, sometimes not so friendly competition that's going on. And I, you know, I, I feel, I'm like all of my council colleagues, we want to see jobs, we had, and I do apologize on behalf of the mayor and the council president, that we had you sit through so much of our budget hearing this morning. We probably shouldn't have done this all on the same day of our 2016 budget.
No apologies necessary, Councilmember. We're happy to be here.
Well, thank you.
We know you have work, you have your work to do, and we understand that.
As, no, it wasn't fun. As you, as you see, I mean, we struggle in our community for every dollar. So I think you're going to have, council here is very interested in the jobs that you bring to the city of Fresno. Some of us believe that those jobs are going to end up providing the greatest high-speed rail project on the, in the world, and others of us believe those jobs are going to end up serving an Amtrak train in the city of Fresno 10 years from now. However, we all love the jobs. Now, I, it just seems to me like Fresno, I mean, Fresno was in early, despite my objections and a couple of other council members and supervisors, there's, there's been people critical of the project, but I think you're, you're big enough to understand and work through that. But now, you guys have changed the route, and the word on the street is, and I hear it from everywhere, and that's why I have to ask, and I have to bring it up a second time and ask again, is Fresno, the fact that we've put this decision off so long, it's, the word on the street is that we have lost that heavy maintenance facility, the, the control of that, or the, so that's what I'm very worried about.
As the Chair of the Authority, I'm answering your question directly, that is not the case. We haven't made a decision yet, but I don't have any sense that, that Fresno has somehow fallen behind. This, this community has been very clear in its desire for the heavy maintenance facility. We hear that very well. I will tell you that Leanne Eager, quite smartly, will show up at our board meetings when the entire Kern County leadership came in and said, hey, you should give it to us. And Ms. Eager stood up afterwards and said, I just want to thank my friends in Kern County for, welcome you to the party. She made it very clear where Fresno still is. And, and Councilmember, let me just say one other thing to you. I appreciated the way you said that, that you hoped that we were big enough. We're adults here. I understand where you've been on this program. I hope you can see that in the way I've tried to engage with you, it's for, with respect for your views and any differences that we have.
Surely.
And this is not something where, even if you go out tomorrow, and I hope you won't, and say, I'm not convinced, I want to, you know, shut this down, that, that we're not going to sit there and play petty political games. And... And when Henry T. Perre was in the Assembly, I sat in his office, I looked at him and I said, I will not trade the heavy maintenance facility for some kind of political advantage. I looked at him, I made that promise to him, I'm repeating it in public to you now. So we will do this in a legitimate, straightforward way. Mr. Morales explained that you're right, this has not gone in accordance with what we've said in the past, there's reasons for that, but those don't translate into some feeling that Fresno has gotten left behind. I think the other thing you can see is, we have really appreciated the work in this community. Your mayor obviously has been a tremendous voice in support of this program. The city structure has worked with us and we with the city to protect your businesses and do whatever we could. Fresno's going to be the center of the world for high-speed rail starting in the United States of America. And we want to continue to have a positive working relationship with this community. And we will respect the fact that there'll be a multiplicity of voices and feelings that people have. But we're adults and we're going to act like adults and we're not going to be petty about things like that. And I appreciate the opportunity to have a very straightforward conversation with
Well, and Mr. Richard, I do as well. And so I want to thank you and Mr. Morales for coming to Fresno and making yourselves available for us, giving us an update. We know that you just, you know, High-Speed Rail since the beginning of the year has done a dramatic change of their game plan, and so it's good to hear about that. So, and I, and I appreciate the respect and it's actually mutual as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Brandal. Member Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I also had just a couple of questions and I think I can, I can get to those right now. Appreciate you being here, thank you both of you for coming. I just had a question on, and this is something that's talked about, and again, I've been, I run in the circles with folks who oppose the project and I've opposed the project as well, but I just had a question about other systems around the world. And I know some of my colleagues have had the opportunity to ride the other systems around the world. How many of them globally operate without continued subsidy by the taxpayer?
Since I have a tendency to give long answers, why don't I let my colleagues start with that and I'll supplement?
The short answer is all of them operate without subsidy. And, but there's a lot of confusion about that for several different reasons. One is that particularly in Europe, they use the term subsidy very differently than we do certainly when talking about this. Subsidy often in their terminology means any public investment, including the capital investment, as opposed to when we talk about a subsidized operation, we're talking about, do your revenues from operation cover your costs?
Correct. And is, I guess, and I guess my question would be, my definition would be, would there be any ongoing transfer of taxpayer money to the authority to run the train?
No. And that's in the law and it's what all of our modeling shows and in fact, all of our planning from the system. And we can't operate until we can operate a segment without a subsidy. And so, for instance, even if we had a fully, fully operational segment between Bakersfield and Fresno, unless we could show that it did not require an operating subsidy, we cannot under the law run service on that line. That's part of the reason we're getting to San Jose is because that's when you can, you can run it. So, no, we, we will not be subsidized, there won't be any ongoing subsidy from the taxpayers or, or anyone else. The revenues of the system will cover its costs as it operates.
And, and that's the same with, so, for example, the, the Amtrak train and the name of it escapes me, the one that goes along the east coast?
Yeah.
The Acela one? The, that, is it run as an independent business unit or is it just?
It actually is, and you know, that's the closest thing we have to high-speed rail.
And they also make enough money at the station, at the fare box, and they do, they
They throw off, they throw off money to subsidize the rest of Amtrak. The Acela service throws off positive operating cash that helps subsidize the rest of Amtrak operations.
So this, you're, and I'm unfamiliar with the business model, and if you did have any, any documents or anything that I could read to understand this better, you're telling me that there, that no high-speed rail system in the world requires government contribution in any country? They all turn a profit?
That's right. Now, what you have though are systems, for instance, in Spain, where you have the same operator running high-speed trains and local commuter trains. Much like the Amtrak system, they'll internally subsidize the short trains with the high-speed trains so that as a system, what you, it's very, it's hard to pick out the high-speed lines, but the high-speed lines cover, several of them, one in France and one in Japan have actually been so successful that they've covered their capital costs.
And paying back some of it.
Paying back their capital costs.
Yeah, and just, if I could just supplement with two things on this. First of all, we, we're happy to get you, there's reports from the, it's called the UIC, which is the French acronym for the International Union of Railroads. They've looked at this. We had to convince ourselves of this. You know, I mentioned Mr. Rossi, who was the, the former Vice Chair of Bank of America. He and I were appointed basically within a couple of days of each other by Governor Brown. And he showed up at the first meeting and everybody said, oh, well, great, we have two new supporters for high-speed rail. He said, I'm not here as a supporter of high-speed rail, I'm here to determine whether I can tell the governor that this system can operate without a subsidy. And he went through all the models and we had two external peer review groups, one just focused on the ridership model, one that is a legislative peer review group, independent, which has never had any hesitancy about telling the legislature, we don't like this, don't fund this. They came back, they testified in front of the legislature, they were asked directly, do you believe that based on the ridership models, they'll operate without a subsidy? They said yes, in 2012, in front of the legislative hearing. Our, our ridership numbers, when I talked about the $20 billion of potential private sector investment, that's because the ridership numbers, which Mr. Rossi scrubbed down so much that he dropped them from 39 million to 29 million a year, then stress tested them three or four different times with arbitrary increases in our cost, et cetera, et cetera, to convince himself and the rest of us that we could meet this hurdle. Those $20 billion numbers is the excess of revenues over costs. And that is why we believe the private sector's out there. We think they believe it too because we had 35 different responses to companies saying, well, not initially, and yeah, cap and trade needs to be stabilized, but yeah, eventually, we see the same vision that you see.
So the money, the money that will be collected by people who pay to ride on the train will exceed the operating cost of the train?
It needs to be at least 100% fare box recovery for the operation, once the capital is expended. And there was a recent LA Times story, and the problem is that mixes in paying back the capital. The Bond Act was very specific. It wanted to make sure that Californians are not on the hook for constant infusion of dollars into this. That's the standard. Once it's built, can it be self-sustaining? And we are very, very confident and it's been confirmed by peer review and others that that will be the case.
I guess my final question, I'm interested in receiving any written materials that you have. What's the number? What, what's the amount that it, that it will take to operate the system every year? Do we know that?
We do, I don't have it in my head.
Right, we do, we can get those for you, but what we've, we have it broken out by segment, by year, and, and it's based on the level of, of operations, how many trains you're running and everything. So we have the, the cost of operations and also the ridership levels and the revenues that are generated and then what the delta is between those. We can provide that for you in full detail.
In our 2016 business plan, and, and the legislation's very specific about what has to be in these business plans, they're submitted to the legislature for its review. Among other things, we'll get you that, but you will see in there a discussion of our business model, which talks about the fact that we're going to rely on the private sector. You will see very discreet discussions of ridership and revenue and of costs. All those numbers are presented in, in a pretty straightforward fashion, and so we will provide that to you.
You're welcome. Member Baines. Thank you, Council President. And first off, I want to just thank council members Brandal and Olivier, I thought you asked great, great questions. I got a chance to scratch a couple off my list, so thank you guys for, for asking good questions. I think it's important that we get this on the record, and again, I don't know that we had the opportunity to do this. So there's no, there's no secret that, that I'm, I feel very differently about the system than both members, Brandal and Olivier. But I think it's still important to ask, what are questions that I don't have answers to quite frankly? And since we have you here, I want to take, take that opportunity. One of the things that I hear a lot about, and I'm going to, I'm going to kind of ask you questions that I get posed with frequently, you know, sometimes I'm tarred and feathered with my friend here, when he wrangles me with a bunch of anti-high-speed rail supporters and they bombard me with questions. And this is one I don't always answer as well. Talk to me about the business plan. So we hear a lot about the modeling for the business plan and the business plan. You touched on it a moment ago with Councilmember Olivier's question and said it was peer review and stress-tested and what have you. And you know, the truth of the matter is, I don't know necessarily what that means from your perspective. And if you could kind of give some insight on that, because I hear people say, I don't trust the business plan or I don't trust the business model. And my comeback is, well, have you read it or do you understand it? And if you could give some insight as to why you feel so confident about the business modeling that you have right now, I think that would help a lot.
You know, Mr. Morales mentioned that we, we came on the scene about five years ago and there are a lot of things we feel very good about having changed. One of the things was the ridership projections. In a year or two before we got there, there were, the High-Speed Rail Authority had put out a single-point ridership projection, said, look at this, we're going to have all these riders. The UC Berkeley Institute of Transportation Studies just eviscerated it, said it was ridiculous. We really didn't want to have people doing that to us. And so we started asking the tough questions. And first of all, you can't make a single-point forecast, you've got to look at high case, medium case, low case. So you look at different cases. What if the population doesn't grow as fast as we say it's going to? Things like that. They're very sophisticated techniques. Of course, this is all projections, we recognize that, it's modeling. But even former critics on the state peer review group, the, the Bond Act said that the legislature will create a independent peer review group of experts. Some are appointed by the legislature, some appointed by the governor, some appointed by the Attorney General, the Controller, they come from all over. And as I said, in the past, they've had no problem sending letters to the legislature saying, this is bogus, this doesn't make sense, and so forth. They now, without endorsing our numbers specifically, have told the legislature, what these folks have developed is state-of-the-art, it's as good as anything around. They've worked with us on the modeling techniques, how you go out and you survey people, how you look at this, what kind of populations you look at and so forth. Then, when I talked about the stress testing, you know, as a banker, Mike Rossi was always looking at the downside risk and kind of like, you know, what if they can't pay me back? So he said, well, okay, so I'm going to take these numbers and I'm going to take our cost estimate numbers, and we've looked around the world and asked people, what is it costing you to operate these high-speed rail systems? What's your maintenance cost? What's your replacement cost? What's your power cost? We built in a model of this is the cost and these are the revenues under different cases. And do the revenues exceed the costs? And they did. And then, at one point, Mike Rossi went back and said to our guys, just arbitrarily drop the revenues 20%, increase the cost 20 or 30%, do we still make it? And we did. So we've brought a skepticism to this, not just cheerleading, because we don't want to be the folks who people will look back on and say, why did they do that? We don't want the governor to have as his legacy, we put this thing in the ground, it didn't work. And frankly, you know, I worked for the governor going back to his first administration. Neither I nor Mike Rossi would have been afraid to stand up and tell Governor Brown or the legislature, can't get there. But we did enough analysis that we convinced ourselves that we could.
Okay, thank you for that. And so it's, it, it sounds as though, what you're saying is the, the peer reviewing, you, you develop the modeling for, and they can't necessarily sign off on the numbers or what have you, but they can say that this modeling is appropriate, this modeling meets our standards as the correct way to model for this system. And I'm, and I'm boiling it down to really layman's terms, just for a guy like me.
That's exactly the case. And that's true on both the ridership side, but also on the, the operations and maintenance side as well, because we have to look at both sides of the equation. Everything we do is extensively peer-reviewed. We have onboard on the ridership side, we have a panel of literally the world's top experts in demand modeling, ridership modeling, who poke and prod and look at the assumptions and, and advise on whether they make sense or whether we should change them. It's been pulled apart, and, and one of the things about, this is not a black box sort of thing, you can, people who know what they're doing can pull apart the pieces and look at the assumptions, look at how it all fits together. That's been done by the federal, the GAO, the Government Accountability Office, spent almost a year looking at, at the modeling and came out and said, you don't have to change anything, after a year's review of what we were doing. And we've been reviewed extensively by others, experts outside. And it's a combination of modeling, survey data that goes in, and, and all those things, population projections, all of those things play into the, into the model, but it's, it's subjected to extensive review and, and everyone who has looked at it, who is an expert in the field, has agreed that this is state-of-the-art.
Right. And these are, and these are experts that are reviewing, reviewing the modeling and the business plan as it, as it fits together?
That's right.
Yeah. And so if someone, for instance, if, because I'm sure I'm going to get this question at some point, where, how, how can a person like me, for instance, and if I wanted to read, you know, some of the peer reviews or see, you know, how this, how the modeling's been stress-tested, is that something that the average person can find and see?
Well, they could probably find it.
Right.
I can, I can tell you, as a person who's below average in understanding this stuff, I probably couldn't understand it.
Sure.
But the fact of the matter is, we have a lot of people, including project critics, who are looking over this. And even, even some of the project opponents up in the Atherton area, Palo Alto and so forth, I mean, they, they send in stuff all the time, they ask questions all the time. And so I guess what I would say is that, to the average person, what I would say is, I know that there's a lot of skepticism of experts these days and God knows, despite our best modeling and everybody thinking it's right, could go sideways. I mean, that's certainly possible. I, I think what I would say to the average person is, look at the process we're following. What we're trying to do here is to not just throw a number up and be a cheerleader, we're trying to go through a process of saying, we're looking at this, we're being careful about it, we're asking questions, we're being skeptical, and then we're going back and saying, well, what if it didn't go that way? How much margin do we have? So that's what I would say to the average citizen. I'm not going to pretend that I could understand it, and so I'm not going to pretend that the average citizen's going to understand Monte Carlo risk analysis, multiple iteration modeling. But somebody does, and we've got those somebodies not only working with us, but also looking over the shoulder of the people who work with us.
And I would just add, there's, there's the very technical, detailed analysis. There's also kind of an eye test element to this too, which is important. It's not the basis for the peer reviewing or anything, but when, when Mr. Richard talked about the 35 different proposals we got expressing interest, these are entities that have invested their own money around the world in infrastructure and high-speed rail, who are interested in the possibility of investing here. And what they've all said is the underlying, big-picture things reinforce the modeling too. Look at the population, look at the distance between cities, the other challenges of transportation, all those other things just help validate the modeling and say, okay, these are the conditions that will make this successful as well.
No, and I appreciate that. There's at least, but I just want you guys to know, there's at least one council member that could probably read and understand the modeling. I did that, I did that partly, partly for his benefit. You know, and I wanted to, to move a little bit, and I'm kind of hanging on Councilmember Olivier's questioning because it really cuts to the heart and soul of some of the, the main issues I hear and the other main issue I hear, like he, he asked, I'm reading this LA Times article from the other day.
You don't want to do that, that's not good.
I know. You know, they write more about high-speed rail than we do, and like he said, we're the center of the universe in high-speed rail. But you know, I'm just going to pick a couple lines out of here that I just, you know, would love your reaction to. You know, on the public record, I'm, I'm very hopeful that Fresnans will come back and watch this, watch this dialogue, because I think it answers a lot of questions or at least provides some, a point of view that maybe they haven't heard. But a lot of the questions still are the same. And so there's, you know, this article goes on essentially saying that none of the projects around the world actually turn a profit, and obviously you, you described that that's, that's not true, and you also provided information where someone could go to see that. But you know, there's a line in here that says, a number of projects around the world have failed financially, others required direct operating failed financially, others required direct operating subsidies, and many more benefit from governmental taxes." The reporter that wrote this, you know, was this just an editorial, or was there some research done with this? Why would they make those claims that seem in direct contrast to what you're saying here?
Well, as a guy who's married to a journalist for 27 years, I'm gonna not make comments about the reporter.
Okay.
Although, I have in the past, as some people know, but here's what he was writing about, so let's just be clear about it. Mr. Morales and I both referred to, we went out and asked the world, "Where are we on this right now?" We like to do this from time to time, kinda get a check from the private sector, not that kind of check, we'd like to get that, but just--
We'll take that kind of check.
A check-in with the private sector, where are we? And people came back with different responses. This one company that was referred to in there, and I remember reading this thing going, "Where did this come from?" They said, you know, "Well, we've checked, and all these systems require a subsidy, based on a 2014 report from this union of railroads that I mentioned before." So, our folks who work with that union, International Union of Railroads, called up and said, "Did you guys do some report in 2014?" They said, "We don't know what this is." So, we went back to that company, and we said, "Where did you get this?" And it became clear that they were mixing in capital cost versus operating cost. And so, then they came back, and they issued a second statement to us saying, "Okay, yeah, we misread what you guys wanted us to answer," and so, we put that up on the website, we put all the responses on our website, and if people hit us with a Public Records Act request, we gave them both sets of responses. But it really was, I think, a misreading of what this company was saying. And, you know, the company basically has said, "No, we understand, when you're talking about operating costs, you're talking about operating costs, not the capital cost." So, that's what got written in the story.
Okay.
And frankly, we thought the story left a misimpression, a confusing misimpression.
Sure, no, listen, I had, you know, doubters sending me this, you know, this article as proof that they've been right all along, you know, and I thought to myself, "Well, I'm glad, I'm glad..." No, it wasn't you, it wasn't you. But I really appreciate you clarifying that, because, you know, I actually had a chance to visit the Spanish RENFAY and tour their system, and they mentioned the Spanish system in here as operating at a deficit, and I said, "Well, wait a minute, I just went through a whole presentation with those folks where it talks exclusively about how they don't operate with a deficit on the operating level."
And some of the other Spanish companies sent me an email right after this article saying, "We don't understand this, because we don't operate with subsidy."
Right.
We've asked the question directly to the Japanese, who built the world's first high-speed rail system, they said, "No." We just needed to convince ourselves that, you know, this has not been the case around the world.
Right, right. Okay, so, you know, I wanna, there's one or two other, I just want to clear up in here, it says that, it's talking about a Fliegerberg noted that his number of systems became insolvent after starting operations, including the English Channel Change Train System, Oslo Airport Train, any reaction to that? Is there any legitimacy to systems becoming insolvent after starting?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Jeff answer this, but first, I want to say one other thing. It's really hard to pronounce his name, because there's a bunch, there's not a lot of vowels, there's a bunch of, you know, Ys and As and all that, but I think it's, I think he pronounces it Flirberg, which is--
Thank you.
--difficult, believe me, I--
I appreciate the correction.
But he, that gentleman who teaches at Oxford has written books about mega-projects, and he is well-known as a person who has studied mega-projects, and studied what goes wrong with mega-projects. Before I ask Jeff to comment on that specific thing, let me just say, as a business entity, we've created a finance and audit committee, Mike Rossi heads it, your own Tom Richards from here is the second member, I think everybody who knows Tom knows what kind of businessperson, business head he has. We have probably the most sophisticated risk-management system in the world, we're constantly assessing our risk of project overruns, impacts on schedule, and so forth. Part of our risk-management function, we reach out, we work with Professor Flirberg, he's very familiar with our program. I'm not gonna say he, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but we've reached out to the world's expert on what goes wrong with mega-projects--
Right.
--to try to avoid falling into some of those traps, and we talk with him all the time. So, I'm not sure that his views were fully reflected in that article, but Jeff--
I can't get into detail on the particulars of those two, but I would say a few things. One, I think you have to be careful in looking at any projects, of making sure you understand the complete picture of what factors are at play, and certainly, as is true in anything, you know, business is, not all restaurants, you know, the failure rate of restaurants is very high, you know, not everything makes sense, and there have been projects of some form or another that maybe shouldn't have been built and didn't make sense, but what you also see, particularly in European circumstances, is government intervention into, like, say, the fare policy, and we see that in France a lot, where the government has said, "We want students to pay some very reduced fare." And so, in that case, the government has said, "Because we're imposing that on you, we're going to pay for that."
Hmm.
So, that shows up as a subsidy, but that was--
Sure.
--an explicit government policy decision driving that, it wasn't, and it altered the business economics, so--
Right.
Again, anytime somebody draws a conclusion, you have to look at all the factors.
Right, and isn't it true, Jeff, some of those projects that were talked about in the article were not high-speed rail projects?
Right, they're not high--
There was a kind of a blending, a smearing of rail projects, not necessarily high-speed rail, which has a different, because it competes against airlines and is intercity, has a different set of economics than your typical regional rail project.
Right, you know, and thank you for that, Dan and Jeff, I certainly appreciate that, I'm gonna leave that article alone, I think you, I just wanted to, because it's so very recent, and because it came up and we had you here, I didn't want to lose the opportunity to at least get some reaction to the article for our citizens, but, you know, I'll tell you that, I meant what I said, Councilmembers Brandau and Olivier, really, in my opinion, asked, you know, questions that I would ask myself on behalf of the public, so that they could hear answers directly from the leadership of the authority, and, you know, the only thing they really didn't cover were the couple questions that I asked, so, I'm gonna conclude my, you know, my thoughts and comments, and kick it over to my colleague, Lee Brand, but again, want to thank you both for spending time to come down here, and I'm gonna echo the sentiment of Councilmember Brandau by saying, "We very much do want the heavy-maintenance facility." And while I appreciate your remarks about Fresno has not lost a step, I'm one that does not leave anything to chance. So, this is a competition, Councilmember Brandau, and we want to win. And there are winners and losers, and there will be winners and losers in this effort, not for any reaction from you all, I'm talking to my colleagues now, but there will be winners and losers in this effort, and we need to do everything we can to position ourselves to win, and not be equal, we want to win. So, that is my feeling, everything I do, I do to win, and I don't want a coin flip. So, anyhow, again, thank you guys for coming, and rest assured that we will be doing everything we can here to win, because we do believe, I do believe, that this is going to be a project that's gonna transform our country, and it's beginning right here, and it means a great deal to us that we have this opportunity, and we don't want to allow this to pass us by. So, thank you both for your time, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Member Beans, next is Member Brand. We'll keep it short.
And I'll try to get my answer short, sir.
It's been about four years since we saw each other last--
Yes, sir.
--Dan. I just want to thank you for a very thorough and candid, you know, response to the questions from my colleague, Mr. Brandau. I see, you know, a lot of potential in this high-speed rail, I share some of the same concerns that others about the overall business model, and it is kinda confusing, but I'm just focused on how it impacts our city, and there's no question that, you know, Fresno will have a substantial benefit from it. The only concern is, it just seems like these timelines just keep getting extended, and extended, and extended, because frankly, I can see the connection with Silicon Valley, and I can see the business potential, you used the one example in Sacramento about, you take a 45-minute drive or ride down from San Jose to Fresno, that would probably take three hours, I can see people commuting back and forth. So, and I know it's not your fault, but there's court challengers, and all the legal aspects, financing, and you did really good response on the financing. I appreciate that you've looked at all the alternatives, like any business would, on doing that. I guess I don't want to keep you here, but I just want to thank you guys for--
We're here at your disposal--
Yeah, for, you know, working in a very adverse climate sometimes, with a lot of challenges, and really answering your critics pretty well. And my hope again is that we, in Fresno, have a maintenance yard, now we've got a downtown station, and we employ a lot of people, not only during construction, but, you know, post-construction. Whether this only ever goes from Fresno or Bakersfield up to San Jose, I don't know, but I think we would benefit a lot from it. Anything you want to add?
Just, first of all, I appreciate those comments, Councilmember, and I'll tell you, I got a call from the governor on Monday, and his question was, "Why is this taking so long?" And, you know, I mean, I was privileged to go on a trade mission with him to China a couple of years ago, the Chinese built 800 miles from Beijing to Shanghai, and they did it in like four or five years. Now, I know some people here in the valley may think that we've been a little difficult in terms of land acquisition and all that, but we do not move people out of the way like they do and just build. We live in a democratic, pluralistic society, people have rights, yeah, it gets a little frustrating, but that's part of living in America where people have rights, and they have the right to exercise those rights, and all those things, the fact of the matter is, I believe that America should be building more infrastructure, I believe that our Congress and our state ought to have long-term mechanisms to do that, I believe we should be bringing the private sector in as much as possible to do that. If we can do that, we can build faster, if we build faster, it's cheaper. But unfortunately, we got the cards that were dealt with, which is, we only had enough money to start a segment, and we're bootstrapping ourselves, and I think we're doing it as intelligently as we can do it, but it sure isn't as fast as we'd like it to go. So, let me just say, I don't know how many issues you and the governor are in agreement on, but you both think that this thing could go faster.
Yeah, I see the problems we deal with here on a much smaller basis, and how much issues we deal with, SEQA, legal, everything we do, it seems like there's a legal challenge from somebody. We had a, you know, massive water infrastructure program we approved a year ago, and that took about three years, but we're in, under construction, there were major challenges, we met them, and we moved on, so, good luck, and again, thank you for--
Thank you, Councilmember.
--your very, very informative workshop.
Thank you, sir.
I would just add, I don't think anybody should be surprised that this is controversial, you know, or difficult, that is the nature of big things, and we talk a lot about the history of that, in this state and around the country, and you look at, you know, arguably the most iconic structure in California, the Golden Gate Bridge, had over 2,000 lawsuits filed against it when it was being planned. Ansel Adams opposed the Golden Gate Bridge for what it would do to the bay. It's hard to imagine that today, you know, the University of California system and the CSU system as it exists was created by the Master Plan for Higher Education, that passed by a single vote in the legislature. You know, think of where we would be as a state without that, had that not been done. The same with the state water system, a single vote in the legislature. I think, I think we believe, it's frankly probably the only way we get through every day in some respects, is that, you know, history will look back, and on this program, much the same way we look back on those investments, and I think, you know, people in Fresno in 20 years and 50 years will find it hard to imagine that there wasn't high-speed rail at some point, and wonder what all the fuss was about.
Thank you.
Thank you, the screen is clear, most of the questions on, for instance, ridership, cap-and-trade funding, government subsidy been answered, but I had a couple of questions.
You gotta punch up quicker?
I forgot.
I'll stop for Ms. Soria.
I just wanted to, I know that a lot of questions were asked, and they were very good questions, I want to, again, thank you guys for taking the time out of your day to come travel to Fresno, and, one, I think dispel some of the myths that are out there to really give us some really good information about what is happening, where we're at, specifically how, the benefits that the city of Fresno and Fresnans are benefiting today, and will benefit, I think, in the long term. I'm a very strong supporter of high-speed rail, I think for my generation, there's a lot of enthusiasm, and we can really see the future of this. I know that I've traveled to Europe, and I've had the privilege to ride some of these high-speed rail trains, I've also have had an opportunity to meet with some of the folks that are interested, and what I find, and I tell some folks, some people that I talk to about the high-speed rail issue, I think sometimes our own community doesn't see the potential, and really the vision that exists here of the great opportunity that this project will bring to us, and it's unfortunate that outsiders, that foreigners, actually see those great opportunities that exist, and so, I'm hoping that as this continues to move forward, our leadership, the leaders here, and the future leaders, really step up to make sure that we are the winners. I concur with what my colleague said, I want to win, I want to make sure that our communities, that our Fresnans are the ones that benefit from those heavy-maintenance facility jobs, that we are truly uplifting our community out of poverty, because I think that that's one of the biggest issues, and I know that this project is already doing some of that, and will continue to do, and can even do more with having the heavy-maintenance facility, also having the construction of actual, a great station. We know that there's gonna be a tremendous benefit from that, and so, I'm excited about the future. I have five, or I will have about six more years on the council if I'm re-elected, so I'm very excited to really see what will happen, and I know that I will ride that train, so, thank you so much for being here. Anything that you guys need, know that, I know that you have a few champions here that are very vocal, I want to thank, the mayor, I think, has been very instrumental in that, I see that as very key, because she has been able to work across party lines to really demonstrate her support for this project, and I think she's been very effective to, working with the Democratic leadership in Sacramento, to know, so that they know that we are truly in support of what this, what this project will bring to our community, so, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Anyone else want to punch up before the president gets a chance? All right, thank you. As I was saying, I just had three quick questions. One of the things I hear is about running the train on existing train tracks, so, why didn't the original plan include a route down existing transportation corridors?
Mr. Council President, actually, the Bond Act requires us to follow existing transportation and utility corridors wherever possible. The 99 is a corridor, the UP and BNSF rail lines are corridors. One of the things is, the UP trains, they run at, you know, 70, 80 miles an hour, this is all about running really fast, what kind of curves do you need, and so, we do try to follow existing corridors as much as possible, but sometimes we can't. And this has really been part of the dilemma that we faced, and the issues that have arisen in Kings County, because we tend to follow the old rail line down until it makes a very sharp left turn heading over towards Visalia, we can't follow that turn with 200 mile-an-hour trains, so it puts us out, you know, in some of the farmland. But we do follow existing corridors as much as possible, we're required to do that, and, you know, there are people who want to know why we didn't go down the I-5, the Bond Act specifically says it needs to connect cities like Bakersfield and Fresno, they're called out. The people who wrote the Bond Act, I think, were really trying to find ways to connect parts of the state that had been left behind, but we are legally required to follow those existing corridors, utility and transportation corridors, as much as feasible.
So, the Central Valley will be honored for a change with connective systems and ways to get our Central Valley into the north and southern sections of our state?
Well, if I can say two quick things about this, you know, I think that there's an additional benefit for high-speed rail that we don't really talk about that much. The fact of the matter is, all of our passenger trains today are running on the tracks that are owned by private railroads. The Amtrak lines, the ACE train, and so forth, they're there on track that's owned either by the Union Pacific or the BNSF. And these systems are popular, as we talked about, we're increasing the frequency. What does that mean? That means there's more competition on those tracks between passenger rail and freight rail. What does that mean? What does that mean? That means agricultural products from the Central Valley often move in and out of this valley by truck, not by train. I've had large agribusiness people in the Southern Valley tell me that they'd gone and begged BNSF for more capacity to come and take their products out, and they were told, "We don't have it." If we can get over some of these hurdles that councilmember Brandau and I were talking about, and we really build this system, think about this. We have a standalone system that will be moving most of the passenger traffic, except for some local stuff, the long-distance passenger traffic, onto dedicated passenger high-speed rail. That will free up freight capacity here in the Central Valley. That has to be good for the economy of the Central Valley to have more freight capacity. So, that's just one of the little benefits. And then the last thing I would say is, I'm a Northern California guy. I came here in 1978. I've been in this state for 38 years. I hadn't spent much time in the valley, but I think the valley has suffered underinvestment. The valley has suffered from people, because agriculture is so critical to the valley, people have tended to overlook some of the other things. And so, frankly, in the legislative debates in 2012, I had to stand up against urban Democrats whom I knew, who were very interested in taking the money away from the valley and having it spent there. And we fought and said, "This is where high-speed rail should start, and this is important to connect this Central Valley with other parts of the state more economically." And we continue to stand and believe that's the right thing to do.
Well, thank you for your advocacy. That's absolutely critical. Appreciate that very much. Another question is, is the system actually 100% electric-powered? And if so, where are you going to get the electricity?
I'm going to let Mr. Morales answer that.
Yes, it is. 100% electric. That's what, how you get to high speed, basically. And we've also made a commitment that it will be 100% renewable energy powering the system. So, as part of that whole plan, the stations, all of our facilities will be zero net energy. So, for instance, the station here in Fresno will be self-sustaining from an energy perspective through a combination of solar panels and the design of it. It'll be lead-platinum, all of our facilities will be. And we're working with the California Energy Commission to ensure that the power supply is available at the prices that we're assuming in order to make it powered, but it will be 100% renewable electric energy.
Beautiful. I've also read that you're way behind on the right-of-way acquisition. Where are we now, and if we are, how can we catch up?
I think we've moved from way behind to behind, so we've made progress. And we've been very clear, because I think it's important for us to be clear about the things that aren't working well, as well as the things that are, that we got off to a slow start on the right-of-way acquisition. But we have been catching up, and Jeff should talk about that.
Right. We, and there are a number of reasons we started out slow. Mr. Brand, I believe, mentioned the lawsuit. That had an impact, no question, because it froze our access to the bond funds. You can't make offers on property unless you have the cash in hand to pay it, and so that had an impact. But as Dan said, we were also a startup organization, and we're working through a state process that handled typically in about two years the amount we're moving through in a month, through the acquisition process. So, we got behind. But the good news is, on Construction Package 1, which is the package here in Fresno, we now have about 2/3 of all the properties, and the ones that are remaining then we'll acquire over the balance of the next year, 18 months or so. But construction is going based on available parcels. We're working on priority parcels so that construction can get going to its maximum level.
And you should just say on the next packages, we're...
Yeah, and on the others, we, right, we, that slow start was really most directly felt on this first construction package, and so on the ones further in the valley, we're further ahead of where we were at this stage of the game. We're using all the lessons learned, obviously, that we have here to make sure we keep on a good pace going forward. And so, it's, but it's a huge amount, and it's a, it'll take some time, but we are making good headway.
Excellent. Another thing I'd heard was that our station downtown will be the first in the country and will be the model for other high-speed train facilities in the rest of the country. And is it true that our downtown station will be a replica of the Grand Central Station in New York City?
Whenever you want.
Only if you want that. But, you know, that is one of the things that I think is an opportunity here. I was just in San Jose, and we have faced some questions in San Jose about whether we come in above grade or below, and some people are saying, "If you're above grade, it looks like kind of a viaduct through the city." And, you know, what we said was, "Look, we can bring in world-class architectural resources to make this an iconic structure." I mean, the San Jose skyline, I'm sure they're very proud of it. I'm not sure I could recognize it compared to other skylines. And so, you know, there is an opportunity for Fresno, for Bakersfield, for others, to have signature stations here. And I think we can do that within, you know, reasonable cost constraints, bringing in the right, and, you know, Jeff and I met with Frank Geary, the great architect down in Los Angeles. He was very interested in helping us with design standards, for example. And so, if we're spending this kind of public money, I think we want to create public spaces, and I'm a big believer that you can do this without busting the bank, that people really feel drawn to and feel very, very proud of. And frankly, in your community, I think we would want to work with you on the design standards and what you want. You should be very much at the table to help drive that design.
Excellent. I also want to thank you for the open, honest, respectful responses to the numerous questions from the council members here, and you did an outstanding job, and really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the public that usually, I'm usually pretty timely about workshops and try to convince them down, but under the theory of full transparency, under the theory of getting everything on the table, so to speak, I thought this would be, the extra time would be well-spent to benefit the public, so they can look at us on TV, listen to us today, and use this as a reference point for any of the questions and myths and responses and newspaper articles that come up. All you got to do is come to this particular location on the C-Mac channel, and you'll get all the information that you folks have provided to us and the good questions that we have. So, I want to thank you very much for your time today, and I want to call Leanne Iger up just for a comment or two. I see her finger waving back there. She's...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
First of all, I just wanted to thank Mr. Richards and Jeff for coming here today. I think it was timely. I think we needed to hear that. And just in closing, I just wanted to say that, having been a lifelong Fresno resident and having been fighting for, those of us who live here in Fresno for a long, long time, that this is the one time that I can remember that we actually got something, that when things happened in Northern California and in Southern California, and we're always standing there going, "Hey, how about us? Hey, how about us?" And it passes us by every single time, that this was the one time, and I think it was five years ago, that the federal government said, "We'll support high-speed rail if it starts in Fresno." And we all went, "What? They're talking about us. We get this." And when we first started this, and Bruce was there at the time, seven years ago, when we first started this, it was all about the maintenance facility, right? It was all about how do we make sure that those 1,500 jobs come here? But as we started looking at this and started looking at what this could actually mean for us, in our lifetime, we would never have a chance like this again, that this would change the way that we are in this state forever, that we'll have that connectivity now, where before we were an island unto ourselves always, right? We're the Central Valley that's not part of the state really, because you can't get there. You can't get there from here. Now, we'll have that chance to be able to go to San Francisco and bring those jobs here. Now, we'll have that chance to connect to Southern California where we never had that before, and say, "When you want to expand," and you can't do that in LA, and you can't do that in Silicon Valley, "You can expand those jobs right here. You can expand those businesses here. We have a way to get them here where we never could before." And when I'm going to the Silicon Valley last month to talk to them about expansion, and they're open to it now, where they never have been before in the history, and they said, "Okay, we get it. We're going to have that connection now." And I have to say that, listening to Dan and Jeff talk about the opportunities that we have here, and they've already started, we're already putting people to work, we're already making sure that when our businesses expand, that they're doing it right here in Fresno, and they're growing, and this is part of what the high-speed rail has been giving to us. So, I can't tell you how important this is for all of us at this time, that we're going to be part of history. When our children and our grandchildren look at what we had the opportunity to do, and we jumped on it and said, "Yes, this is our turn. This is our time," that we're all going to be a part of that, and we're going to be proud that we are a part of that. So, I want to thank you all for allowing them to speak here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, in my concluding remarks here, I made a little bit of a chart, myth, reality, and positive impact on Fresno. So, the first myth is, it's never going to get started. Well, the slide showed that we're well on, excuse me, we're well on our way with this construction. Another myth is, "Stop the train." Well, we know now, we cannot stop the train. It's well on its way, and why would we want to stop something that is not a detriment to Fresno? That I've heard often, "Oh, it's a detriment to Fresno." How can it be a detriment when we have jobs, as we always say, "Jobs, jobs, jobs?" And that's based upon local training from pre-apprenticeships to other job training to facilitate this construction with local people who will live in this community, who reside here, increase our tax base, and help this community grow in a very positive way. Another myth, negative impact on business, with, I think their number was 90% retention. That's pretty impressive. I personally wanted to see that in action, so I took a tour of OK Produce with the Metellian family, and they were ecstatic about the move. Of course, everyone's reluctant at the beginning, but now with the final product, they're booming. They've got more employment, more business, more opportunity. According to one of the sons, it was the best thing that could ever happen to them. Another myth, there's no funding or limited funding. Your explanation, without speculation, was very informative on that item, so I think that's a myth. Public taxpayer operation subsidy, the operation will be subsidized, and I didn't know that the bond law actually required you can't do that. It's very clear, and you articulated it very well. So, that's another myth. No private investment. It's hard to say whether there will or won't be, but based upon your business model, your approach, your explanation, it sounds like it's going to happen. It's going to happen, whether it's foreign or domestic, so to speak. My last note here is jobs. There's criticism that, well, HSR might become an Amtrak. Maybe so. Maybe so. But if it does, we have the benefits of the infrastructure jobs, the infrastructure improvements that we saw on the slides. We have all the jobs and opportunity we can for this community, whether it's high-speed rail or Amtrak. I'm not trying to jinx HSR by any means, but it seems like a win-win to me. So, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done today. Thanks for the directors that are here for other items on the agenda, but this is really, I thought, a perfect opportunity to clear the air and get the facts on the table that we can deal with in a reasonable way on behalf of the city of Fresno. And I join councilmember Baines. I want to win. That maintenance yard, I want to win. And whatever we can do to facilitate that, just let us know. So, thank you again. I appreciate it. Thanks for your patience in being here this afternoon. Thank you. We'll close the workshop, and we'll go back to general administration now. Okay, and the general administration, item 2A, authorize the city manager to execute agreements for water sale and transfer at Public Utilities. Thank you for being patient today, Tommy.
That was entertaining. That was very good.
Very informative, wasn't it?
Yeah.
With our water situation folded into that, my goodness.
Good things happening in Fresno. This agenda item is a request to city council to approve a water sale to the Kern-Telary Water District for a unit price of $500 an acre foot, using water that we've been able to secure from the United States Bureau of Reclamation from Millerton Lake. This year, the official declaration, as we sit here today, is 65%. Overall, watershed yields in south of the delta are at about 65% to 70%. So, 65% for the city of Fresno is 39,000 acre feet. Through the way that the bureau released water this year, we actually have contracts in place to, instead of purchasing 39,000 acre feet, purchase 58,000 acre feet with the way the water was released. The average price of that water to the city of Fresno is $84 an acre foot, recognizing that the city was benefited with the way the water was released, and we purchased it from the bureau. The Kern-Telary Water District requested an opportunity to purchase some of that water that was made available to us. They approached us at a unit price of $500 an acre foot, and we recommend bringing that to council today. At the end of the sale, the unit price of water that the residents of Fresno will pay for the balance remaining is $45 an acre foot, so ratepayers are going to do very well on this. Our proposal is to take the money from this sale and pay down debt that we owe the Bureau of Reclamation for back charges on O and M and operation and maintenance for the Millerton Lake Dan, so available for questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the community that wishes to come forward and address this issue? Now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we have Mr. Brandau, member Brandau. It's your opportunity.
Thank you, council president. And for the shortness of time, I'm just going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by member Brandau, second by member Baines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0 with members Olivier and Soria absent. Thank you, sir. Next is item 2B, approve a one-year agreement with Central Unified School District regarding swim lessons. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. I'm Manuel Melinato, the director of the Fresno Parks Department, and I'm here today to recommend that the city council approve the agreement with the Parks After School Recreation and Community Services Department and the Central Unified School District.
Motion to approve. Let me take it off the public. Anyone in the public wish to address this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, Manuel, that was brilliant. Thank you.
One of the best reports I've ever delivered. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0 with member Olivier absent. Next is item 1I from the consent calendar that was moved to general admin.
Good afternoon. Robert Anderson from the Department of Public Works. What we have before you today is a cooperative agreement between the city of Fresno and the county of Fresno for work to be done on Bullard Avenue between Blackstone and Marks Avenue. The agreement will be for the installation of an overlay and also for some, some work to be done on some loops, and also including some fabric to be installed in the county Generally speaking, this is between Blackstone and Marks, but specifically, it's in three segments between Blackstone and Nantucket, Palm to West, and Sequoia to Marks. After this work is done, or, yeah, right after the work is done, we're planning on going back with some sort of a slurry seal...
Motion to approve.
Hey, Sal, you can't do it on this one.
On the rest of the, the street between those, between Blackstone and Marks, and with that, and my presentation.
Thank you.
The president said I could.
I think it's District 2 as well as the county, and so...
Oh, that's yours? Yeah. Yeah, and I've been working on it for a while, and so have these, so have these guys. Are you going out to the public, or...
Soon as you finish, I will.
Okay.
You done? All right. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on this matter, please come forward. The people in the back, this is the opportunity for you folks as members of our public, our community, you could come up and speak on any item.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, this is the opportunity for that. There's a lot of distraction up here, and it's hard to focus sometimes, but we do our best.
You can.
Seeing none, well, we'll bring you back up here. I think member Kinter, oh, I'm sorry, member Brandau wanted to speak.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you to Scott and the county as well. Did you want to speak today, Stephen, or... All right. Well, thank you very much. It's been a long time coming. We've been working on it for just over a year now, kind of getting it ready to go, and it's probably, looks like timeframe... And it's probably, looks like time framing. We might not be actually doing the work till next year. But it's a process to overhaul a street like Bullard where it goes county, city, county, city, county. So thank you very much for the presentation. So a motion to approve.
And a motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Soria. All those in, oh, excuse me. Member Soria, did you want to comment on this item? Okay. Well, I don't mean to skip you, but you got to punch up, you know, timely manner. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with members Baines and Olivier absent. Okay. That concludes our General Admin calendar, as far as I can tell. Chief of Staff Barfield, did you want to have us do anything in particular with the people that are out there today? You explaining how this government functions? Can you tell us who they are so we can welcome them?
Hi, my name is Maria Mejia, and that's my colleague, Salopadia. And we both work, he works for Central, Midnight Central Committee, and I work for Fresno Pacific University. And this is the GAAP program, the Global Anabaptist Peacemakers. They're here to study for a week immigration and resettlement issues.
Oh, fantastic. Well, welcome to Fresno City Council meeting. And you're welcome to come any Thursday that we're operating, and I'd love to have your participation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for all the great work you do in behalf of our citizens.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Okay, I don't think we have any closed session items today. You still want to speak? Okay. So we'll adjourn the meeting. We would adjourn the meeting in...
We forgot the reports. Two things, unscheduled and reports, number four.
Okay, Council Committee reports. Member Soria.
Well, the only thing that I wanted to report, I know that I was appointed to the school liaison subcommittee. That still hasn't moved forward because I don't think we have all the resolutions approved by the different school boards in the city. So once all of those are finalized, I believe Lee and Oliver are working on those. I'm not sure what the timeline. So that's just my report on the status of that subcommittee. So we have yet to meet because we don't have everyone on board yet.
Hey, is Rob, did, I think Fresno Unified approved it, didn't they?
There was, there has been no report to my office about that.
It was on the consent calendar, that's I, last I checked.
Okay, but no one has notified us that it has happened. And I don't know who they appointed. I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks. Member Brandau.
Council President, you're pretty aware of this one, but I just wanted to report at FCTA, the Transportation Authority, we were able to modify our bylaws that allowed us to take, the city of Fresno, to take in advance on money that would be coming our way so that we could go ahead and begin construction of the Midtown Trail that I think begins in your district but impacts several different communities in our city, connects us.
You know, I wanted to thank you for your hard work in getting that. That was quite a task. And I know you worked with the mayor and our other partners in getting that done. So hats off to you, sir. Fantastic. Would anyone in the public like to comment on the committee, the council boards and commissions that we're doing right now? Seeing none. There is no motion on this. The screen is cleared. Any unscheduled communication? Anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any issue? This is the opportunity to do so. You'll have three minutes. Why don't you give us your name and address? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring them back up here. And I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting. And that would be in the loving memory of the passing of a 20-month-old Rashad Howford Jr. of Fresno, as well as Luigi Fadeli Ruska, our U.S.C.A., who was a prominent figure in the Sanger area, a World War II veteran and a farmer. He will be sorely missed. Thank you all. See you next meeting.